Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, December 4, 2023. Before we rise and say the pledge of allegiance, I just want to again thank you all for joining us tonight. We've got a very full agenda, as you all know, two very big items on our agenda tonight. And so I know everyone's going to be very cooperative and courteous and respectful and polite in both ways. And so we very much appreciate again your cooperation so that we can get through this agenda efficiently and effectively for the betterment of our community. And so I can't promise any fun tonight. I thought the holidays were supposed to be fun and relaxing, but not always the case. And so we look forward to some good discussion tonight, and we very much appreciate all of your input. So with that, if you would all please rise and join the village board in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington? Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Baldino?
Here.
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
Trustee Tanalia?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have four sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is from our village board meeting on November 6, 2023. Are there any changes or passes? Not? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the village board meeting minutes from November 6, 2023.
Second. Motion by Trustee Grassi, seconded by Trustee Tanalia. Any further questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next are our minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from November 13, 2023. Any changes or passes?
Pass.
Passed by Trustee Tanalia. Any other changes or passes? If not, a motion to approve?
I move approval of the committee of the whole minutes from November 13th.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Baldino, seconded by Trustee Labads. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next are minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from November 20, 2023. Any changes or passes? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the committee of the whole minutes from November 20th, 2023. Second.
Motion by Trustee Grassi, seconded by Trustee Labads. Questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And finally, our minutes from the village board meeting from November 20, 2023. Any changes or passes?
Pass.
Passed by Trustee Bertucci. Should you have also passed then for the committee of the whole meeting?
Yes, I've agreed.
Okay, so Becky, you got that?
Yes.
Passed for both committee of the whole meeting and the village board meeting for Trustee Bertucci on November 20. Any other changes or passes?
Move approval of the village board meeting with a date of November 20th, 2023.
Second. Motion by Trustee Schwingback, seconded by Trustee Dunnington. Questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We move on then to the approval of the accounts payable, and I call on Trustee Bertucci.
I'll move approval of the warrant register for the check date November 30th, 2023, in the amount of $1,621,047.
Second. A motion by Trustee Bertucci, seconded by Trustee Baldino. Any questions or comments from the board? We do have a blue card from Melissa Kair on this. Melissa?
On page 47, Thomas Dodge Chrysler Jeep of Highland Incorporated, a vehicle for $253,302. What is that?
Okay.
A Jeep for that much?
Mr. Keen, you have any idea?
I don't offhand because when they're brought in, when they appear on here, there's quite a distance, but we can get that information for Ms. Kair and get that to her.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that, Melissa.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks. Any other comments from the audience on the warrant register? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We have no recognitions or presentations tonight, so we'll move on to public hearings. And we do have a final public hearing on our proposed 2024 budget. And so I do need a motion to go into the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Tanalia, seconded by Trustee Labads. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I would turn it over to our village manager, Randy Recklaus.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very happy to present the 2024 budget tonight. As you all know, the budget was discussed in detail last month over two meetings. We have a very, very brief overview that we're going to provide tonight. And then we have a, we would be recommending approval of the budget at the appropriate time on the agenda. But right now, I'm going to hand things over to Mr. Keeney, our finance director.
Thank you, Randy. One of the big parts of a budget annually is the property tax levy. And for the fifth straight year in a row, we've had a 0% increase in the village's portion of the property tax levy. Now technically, the 2022 levy is $1.6 million less than the original levy. That's because the board back in March passed a tax abatement for $1.6 million. We had a very good year in 2022 financially, and we were able to pass on savings to everyone by having that tax abatement. But in order to have a really relatively level levy each year, it takes a variety of actions. And some of them are financial planning, some are just good financial results. So the board and the village has established a long-range bond and debt schedule, and this really helps keep the levy of that part of the debt levy consistent from year to year. We've also planned for higher pension funding requirements. In prior years, we've had some really good interest earnings through the stock market on our police and fire pensions. And instead of lowering the levy then in the following years, we kept it flat. And then in 2022, it was a very bad year in the stock market. There was losses of about 20%. We, our levy went up, but not as much as it would have gone, so that kind of lowers it a little bit. You don't have the highs and lows of pension funding, which can really affect your levies from year to year. And then we had really good sales and income tax receipts since the end of the pandemic. There's been a lot of demand backlog with goods and services. There's also been inflation that's infected this, which has helped our sales and income taxes. So the combination of all these factors has really allowed us to keep a level property tax increase over the last five years. And I had mentioned the good year in 2022. That also allowed us to eliminate the vehicle stickers and dog tags for 2024 and beyond. So that this last year was the last year for stickers and dog tags. But once again, that was because of some good sales and income taxes. We think that's in the base now, so we can do without the sticker revenue in the future. Now, on that, the next slide is more of a reminder of what the village's portion of the property tax bill is. We're only about 11% of a property tax bill. The school districts are almost 20% or 70% combined. So when we talk about a level property tax or 0% property tax increase, it's only on that 11% of your bill. The rest of it is subject to the other taxing agencies and what they can do during the years, which is different than what the village does. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Recklaus to talk a little bit about the budget itself.
So yeah, I'll let Tom do the nice part in terms of, you know, keeping our revenues down to ease the burden on our taxpayers. But in terms of where the money's going, you can see that expenditures, this is our general fund, which is how we pay for basic government operations, has been relatively flat for the past several years. Now conversely, we've made dramatic increases in the village's investment in infrastructure over the past five years, such as water mains, roads, and sewers. Our capital investment has gone from $10.8 million in 2016 to $26.7 million in the proposed budget. And these are all things that are kind of, you know, more or less permanent improvements in the community. In terms of where our operational money goes, there is obviously a major focus on public safety. 64% of our money goes to the police and fire departments. 20% goes to public works. Again, they're out there maintaining our infrastructure and building it. And the remaining 16 goes to all of the other departments. Like I said, we want to keep this brief. When the appropriate time comes in the agenda, a little bit later, we would be recommending these three motions and are happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Right. Thank you, Tom and Randy, for this very good news. And it's very fortunate and opportunistic that we have so many people from our community here today, tonight, to hear this good news. And so we thank everyone involved in getting us to this point, the final night of approval of our village, annual village budget. And so this is unprecedented, five years in a row of a 0% tax levy for, again, what Mr. Keeney said, our 11.1%. And so just the caveat, you know, you may be experiencing increases from other taxing bodies, but certainly we've tried to do our part to be fiscally responsible, and that's a great credit to the leadership of Mr. Recklaus, Mr. Keeney, and all of our department heads, and everyone trying to do what they can to save our taxpayers as many dollars as possible, of which all nine members of this board are taxpayers as well. And so we very much appreciate that effort. And so with that, any other comments from the village board? We do have one blue card in the audience, and that's from Martin Bauer. And Mr. Bauer knows the drill. Mr. Bauer, are you here?
He's on the other side.
Oh, there he is. Okay. He knows the drill. Just so everybody knows, if you are going to address the board tonight, unless you're presenting a proposal, we do have a three-minute time limit. And so, Mr. Bauer?
Well, thank you very much. I emerged there from the dungeons. This is clearly not the main topic for today, so I'm going to keep it short and brief. Thank you for the good work done on behalf of the residents of Arlington Heights. So thank you for a good, solid budget with a flat tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the board under the public hearing portion of our agenda and specifically regarding the proposed 2024 annual budget? Mr. Moons?
Thank you, President Hayes. You know, I can't keep a, you know, let a good public hearing go to waste anyway. But anyway, what I would also want to say, thank you to the board, to the staff for the hard work they did to keep this at zero this year. As a resident here, that is a tremendous support for us. And with the tax abatement, reducing the fees, that puts money back into our pockets. And I think you will find that when you put money in our pockets, we spend them, and we spend them locally, which then goes back in more sales and income tax. And so it's a virtuous cycle. And I think if we can continue to do this, it would be greatly appreciated. And I'd say let's go for a sixth year in a row.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Moons. Anyone else in the audience on the budget? All right, seeing none, I will come back to the board. Any further comments from the board or from the staff? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion to close the public hearing by Trustee Tanalia, seconded by, who was it? Trustee Schwingback? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then we move on to citizens to be heard. And I think I'm correct, I don't have any blue cards on, from individuals who want to speak on items not on the agenda. All right. Just to make sure, anyone want to address the board on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda to old business. And we do have a number of old business items to report out this evening. And I first go to our assistant village manager, Diana McCula, to make a presentation on a supplemental alcoholic beverage class liquor license ordinance.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Board. So tonight, we're here to talk about a supplemental new liquor license classification, which would allow packaged liquor stores the ability to sell a certain amount of on-premise consumption glasses of liquor. So you will recall that on October 16th, the board held a meeting. At that meeting, we heard from a new business owner that's looking to operate in Arlington Heights. Her name is Janine Durbin, and she's looking to open her business called Bitter and Sweet Cocktails. And this is an on-premise establishment, and currently on-premise establishments are not allowed to have on-premise consumptions, or packaged establishments are not allowed to have on-premise consumptions. So she approached the village wanting to open in Arlington Heights and asked if we could come to some sort of agreement to allow this type of a business concept. At that meeting on October 16th, you also heard from an existing business license holder, Robert Owens. He is owner of a fine wine merchant in downtown Arlington Heights. And he said that for years, many of his customers have come to him asking if he would be able to hold classes for wine consumption as well as champagne consumptions. And due to the classification that he has, it's not something that's permitted in Arlington Heights. So upon review of this type of a classification, the board did give direction to look at drafting a new ordinance. And so we are here before you this evening to talk about drafting that new ordinance. Excuse me. So we are looking at creating an ordinance. We would amend the liquor code to allow educational class liquor classification. So again, this is a limited classification. You have to be a Class B or Class Double B liquor license holder. And you have to, your primary business has to be that of a packaged liquor store. So if you look at this chart here, you'll see that we have 33 Class B and Double B liquor classifications. 13 of those are highlighted in yellow, and those are the ones that are packaged liquor stores. We have five establishments that have both a package and an on-prem consumption license, so they could currently go ahead and offer this. And we have 15 establishments that do sell packaged alcoholic beverages, but that is not their primary business, so they would not be eligible to receive this license. And so if you look at some of the restrictions and requirements, you know, you do have to be a Double B and/or B liquor license holder. You have to be BACID certified. Not more than three servings of alcoholic liquor may be sold or served to any person. It has to be during a ticketed class or workshop on any calendar day. And the hours of operations, we anticipate 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And there has to be a limited amount of food for consumption on premise. We just want the license holder to sell something when they're holding these types of classes. And the annual fee for the B and Double B supplemental is anticipated to be $650. So our recommendation is that the village board approve the ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the municipal code to create a supplemental alcoholic beverage educational class liquor license classification as drafted.
Well, thanks, Diana. I know you have worked very hard on this in conjunction with our village attorneys, Hart Passman and Greg Smith. We appreciate everybody's efforts. I think this draft ordinance is consistent with what we discussed at our last village board meeting, the last time we discussed this, and is certainly acceptable in my mind in terms of creating this supplemental liquor license classification. So with that, I would turn it over to the board. Trustee Tanalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Diana, is there any provision in this ordinance that talks about how often this class can happen on a monthly basis?
It doesn't talk about how often it can happen, but a person can only attend one workshop per day. So if the establishment wanted to offer three classes a day, we're not prohibiting as drafted. If that was something that's interested by the board, we can certainly look at that. But we didn't anticipate regulating how many classes they could have.
Or how many days of the week it could be?
Correct.
Okay.
As long as it's between the hours of 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM, we thought that was fair.
And a class, is there any number of participants in that class that would be considered a class versus just like one person?
No. I mean, it has to be, financially, it's going to cost you to attend the class. You can get up to three drinks as part of that class. So based upon my discussion with both Janine and Robert, they anticipate, you know, setting a certain cost that would allow the three drinks.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this? All right, seeing none. Anyone in the audience want to address the board on this agenda item? I see none. Can we pass the ordinance now, assuming there's no objection?
The ordinance has been prepared in your packet, so you could approve it tonight if you so choose, Mayor.
Okay. What's the will of the board? Trustee Grassi?
I'm willing to move to approve the ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the municipal code to create a supplemental alcoholic beverage educational class liquor license classification as drafted.
Second. A motion by Trustee Grassi. Who is the second? Trustee Schwingback, okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, this is an ordinance, so we need a roll call.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Thanks again, Diana and Hart, for your hard work on this. I think it's a good result. We now move to the report of the committee of the whole meeting from our November 13th, 2023 meeting. And we do have a couple of, well, just one item to report out from that. Well, we've got three budgetary items from a couple of different meetings. And so these next three motions will be all related to the budget that we just discussed. And so the first one is by Trustee Bertucci.
I'll move that the committee of the whole recommend to the board of trustees that the board acknowledge with thanks the proposed budget for the Arlington Heights Memorial Library.
Second. Motion by Trustee Bertucci, seconded by Trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the next motion was by Trustee Grassi from our November 15th meeting.
I move that the committee of the whole recommend to the village board of trustees to authorize staff to prepare the village's and Arlington Heights Memorial Library's 2023 tax levy ordinance reflecting an estimated total tax levy of $52,871,000 or a 0% increase over the 2022 tax levy for the village and library portion of the levy.
Second. A motion by Trustee Grassi, seconded by Trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board or the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the last motion regarding the budget was by Trustee Tanalia from our November 15th meeting.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. I move tonight, as I did then, that the committee of the whole recommend to the village board and trustees that the board approve the proposed 2024 budget as amended through the review process.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Tanalia, seconded by Trustee Labads. Questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Comment?
Go, Trustee Tanalia.
Just to follow up on Mayor Hayes, this is unprecedented. And it's wonderful that you're all here for the projects that you're here to see, but I'm really thankful that you all get to hear this. Five years in a row of 0% tax increase for our little village. And so because of these guys sitting over here and all the work that's done all the time to make this happen, it is unbelievable. It's fantastic. Drive around any other town around here, and I would be, you'd be hard-pressed to find another community that works this hard to keep us all in this kind of good shape. So I hope it gets reported in the newspaper tomorrow and again and again and again. And thanks to Randy and Tom and everybody else for doing such a great job. Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks, Trustee Tanalia. Appreciate it. All right, we would like to completely close out the budget now. And so if I could have a motion to move forward the three legal items, three legal ordinances related to the budget to this time in the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Bertucci, seconded by Trustee Baldino. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we then need motions to approve the three ordinance. So who would like to take the first one? Trustee Bertucci?
I'll move on an ordinance providing for the levy assessment and collection of taxes for the year beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024 for the village of Arlington Heights.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Bertucci, seconded by Trustee Labads. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. Would like to take the next one. Trustee Baldino?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move approval of the ordinance abating taxes levied for the year 2023, heretofore levied to pay principal and interest on $9,530,000, general obligation bonds, Series 2018 of the village of Arlington Heights.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Baldino, seconded by Trustee Dunnington. Questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. And one final ordinance. Who would like to take it? Trustee Grassi?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve an ordinance adopting a budget and appropriations ordinance and amounts set forth therein for the year commencing January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Grassi, seconded by Trustee Tanalia. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. All right, we're rolling. Let's move on then to the last item of old business, which is what many of you are here to talk about tonight, and that's the proposed development at 116-120 West Eastman. The planned unit development or land use variation for multifamily development in the B5 with a conceptual restaurant special use permit and associated variations. So is the petitioner present?
Right here.
Why don't you come forward and just tell us what has happened in the last few weeks?
If you don't mind, I'll have Katie Lambert from OKW.
Please.
Hi, it's nice to see you all again. So I think we left here about a month ago and, you know, really thought hard about some of the comments and critiques that we had received. We decided to focus on a few specific recommendations and come back to you tonight, having incorporated those into the project. Are you guys in charge of, oh, we do have the clicker. Delightful. So this show is really side by side or top and bottom the difference between the proposal from November and the proposal from December. So really, what you're able to see from the streets are two changes. One is that we have, you can see on the lower left, it's maybe in shadow in that view, incorporated some screening to the pool deck. There was some concern about noise that was going to be coming from the pool deck. And so we've incorporated what's really, in essence, a series of cabanas that are fully framed out and blocked by landscaping as well from the street of Highland below. Similarly, on the lower right, one of the comments that we really heard from multiple folks is that they wanted to see more stepping on the St. James facade, the north facade of the building. They felt as though the two tiers that we had incorporated in our previous submission were insufficient. And so we really focused on peeling back the fifth floor in the area that's directly opposite neighbors on St. James, so that that is now one level lower than where it had been. And so on this next slide, we've tried to kind of consolidate a list of really some of the changes that we've made throughout the process. So everything that you see in black on that list includes changes that had been made previous to the redesign that happened before we got approval from plan commission. And then several things in red at the bottom of the list outline our current changes that we've just incorporated. So that includes the additional setback at the fifth floor on the north facade, incorporating the screening at the pool deck, reducing the unit count from 136 to 135. And then that section similarly shows in the light grade a difference between last month's proposal and this month's proposal. So just to kind of quickly flip through to some of the renderings that show a little bit better what we're proposing. This slide is also important. This shows the second floor plan, where you can see, again, these semi-enclosed cabanas that would actually have basically a facade fronting Highland in order to block any sound from the pool deck. Fifth floor is now partially terraced back. So again, previously, the fifth floor came all the way out to a 20-foot setback. Now more than half of the fifth floor is actually 50-foot setback. So again, this shows basically the additional terrace at that fifth floor. And here, you can really see the change that we're proposing along Highland. So the pool deck has actually scooted a little bit further in from Highland. We've incorporated a landscape buffer directly on the street, and then again, a framed wall beyond that to really, you know, protect both sightlines and sound from coming out onto the street. And that shows from the inside. We've added a couple of views. We were really trying to be thoughtful about what we were hearing from the community and the neighbors, and we really wanted to understand for ourselves what the views from Fremont and neighboring streets were going to look like. So this was actually basically a drone photo taken from Fremont looking towards our proposed development. And fortunately, we have technology where you can actually overlay kind of a realistic angle that shows that building. And so as you can see on the right, these are kind of the close-ups of that rendering from Fremont. You would be able to see just kind of the corner of the building poking out from some of those houses. And then lower right shows a view in summer where it would be completely obstructed by the trees. And then similarly on Saint James, this is really showing kind of from the west looking east at the proposed development, the difference in what you see on the left today with the existing building versus our proposed building on the upper right. And lower right shows the summer view of that same building. And these elevations really just reflect all of the changes that we've just gone through.
Questions?
Anything else? All right, I'm going to turn it over to the staff before we come back for questions. And so Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'll just walk through quickly some of the changes. Just want to highlight a couple of other things that weren't mentioned. So the number of units, they did remove three units on that fifth floor on the northwest corner. And then they removed an interior fitness room on the south interior court of the building to pick up two, two units. So they lost one unit in total. Their bedroom count changed from one hundred and fifty-eight to one hundred and fifty-five bedrooms. So it's gone down. The setback on the pool deck was talked about. The number of parking spaces remain the same. But because of the change in unit counts, their actual surplus went up. So the surplus increases over the minimum code requirement from twenty-seven spaces to twenty-nine spaces. And then the request for the variation for tandem parking spaces went down from twenty-three tandem spaces to twenty-one. With these changes, there'll be a few tweaks to the recommendation that I'll walk through in a moment. We did hear, you know, from the board and from the neighborhood concerns about this block and its kind of proximity to the residential neighborhood to the north. And I won't go through my prior presentation and bore everybody. But this is the area to the north, the Hannah Neighborhood. Used to be zoned R-six. Neighborhood came in and petitioned to rezone it to R-three. Staff and plan commission and the board supported that. You know, the neighborhood is really a single-family neighborhood. Lots of the residents there have invested in their homes. So it makes sense to preserve that as the R-three. So we did hear, you know, concerns about not only this property, which, whoops, is is zone B-five when the petitioner acquired the property. And they've invested funds knowing that it's zoned that. But also the property to the west and the property to the east, those are zone B-five. They could potentially redevelop at some point in the future. And we heard concerns from the neighborhood and from the board about that. And then there was some discussion on some one-on-one conversations with village manager about kind of what's called as a red flag ordinance, whether the board wants to consider something like that. We did this for the racetrack property a few years ago when that first went on the market, adopted a red flag ordinance, put everybody on notice that we were going to do some studies and change potential changes to the zoning ordinance. So anybody who's moving forward or considering investing in those properties was aware of that. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. This is in your packet on the agenda, just kind of a summary of, you know, the changes from May of twenty twenty-three to the early November to the current proposal. The main changes are, you know, from the early November to today are highlighted in yellow. And I'll quickly pass through the site plan changes. They were explained by the petitioner. This is the area on the fifth floor. You can see those three units were removed in that northwest corner to stop them the impact on the neighborhood to the north. And this kind of shows, you know, a little bit better graphically, you know, how that was previously the dash line that was considered in early March versus proposed tonight, which is, you know, kind of in the rendered brick facade, four stories on that northwest corner. We did in a meeting with the developer, we looked at the street on Saint James and the some areas that, you know, are not very aesthetically pleasing. So even though this is not in front of the petitioner's property, we did ask them if it's feasible, if they would, during the construction, remove the asphalt in the parkway. This is village-owned right away, we confirmed that. And then install, you know, grass and potentially parkway trees. Again, if feasible, there are four manhole covers there. Public Works has looked at that. These seem to be AT&amp;T-related infrastructure. We have not approached them yet. That will depend on the decision of the board. So we don't know that it's feasible, but hopefully it would be. And that would really help enhance the street scape along this section. So the petitioner has agreed to that change if it is feasible. If the board would approve this, we would then reach out to AT&amp;T and have that dialogue. So talking about that red flag ordinance, this is just not necessarily related to this project. But if the board is interested in considering that, this could be a potential motion to direct staff to prepare, you know, an ordinance for consideration at a future meeting directing the plan commission to hold a public hearing concerning the properties fronting on Saint James immediately adjacent to this property, the one sixteen, one twenty property. And such an ordinance would identify that further study and evaluation of possible zoning, rezoning, overlay zoning, or comprehensive plan changes may be considered for their properties. And that would entail conversations with the neighborhood and also with those property owners. And then after that, you know, bringing something back to the board depending upon how those conversations went. So having said that, the staff department committee continues to recommend approval of this proposal with the modifications that have been made. The plan commission also voted seven to zero in favor of the approval. Highlighted in green are some of the changes based upon the changes that have been made since November sixth. So changing from one hundred and thirty-six units to one hundred and thirty-five. There's a slight modification on the affordable housing fee calculation. It doesn't change the number of units in the building, just a small rounding change in the actual fee calculation. There would also be a change in the allocation of, you know, one and two-bedroom units. That changes slightly, but there would still be seven units included in the building for affordable units within the market rate development. The other change would be that there'd be no more than twenty-one units that would have, or the potential to have at least two spaces. And that ties in with the change in the tandem parking spaces. There was a condition from the plan commission for village staff and the developer to work out the exit from the garage onto Highland. There was an angled exit, and there was a ninety-degree exit. There were continued concerns about the angled exit potentially causing traffic conflicts. And staff recommends a ninety-degree concept, which is in your plans. The developer has agreed to that. And then condition fifteen, the petitioner shall remove the blacktop and restore that parkway that I just described and install parkway trees if it is feasible and determined feasible by the village. And then the other conditions did not change. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Mr. Eklund.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to make a comment too about what the village is voting on tonight from a legal perspective. The applicant purchased this property, made application for approval, as Charles mentioned, under our existing zoning code. The zoning code indicates in detail for every district what appropriate setbacks, building heights, usages, and parking requirements are for that area. And the applicant has a right to build on their property if they do so within the existing code. Generally speaking, the only things that the applicant is asking for is whether or not relief should be provided on three items. Whether or not they can be allowed to not have a business use on the entire first floor. Whether or not a portion of the drive aisle on the lower level impacting six parking spots can be twenty-two and a half feet instead of twenty-four feet. And whether or not twenty-one tandem spaces can be allowed in the, in the private garage. Those are the only items that deviate from village regulations. The matter of whether or not this parcel should or shouldn't be zoned B-five is not what is being discussed tonight. And property owners and applicants, again, have a right to pursue projects under their existing zoning. Staff suggests that saying that one doesn't agree with the current zoning on the site is not a legally valid or defensible reason to vote against it on this item, given the existing zoning. However, as Charles mentioned, it's totally appropriate for the board to direct staff, if you, if you decide to do so, to investigate the zoning of the surrounding area now prior to future proposals in the area.
And just to clarify, that would be a separate ordinance, not part of this?
Correct.
The approval or?
Correct. But there could be, aside from any motion on this item, there could be a separate motion to direct staff to, you know, work on an ordinance for discussion at a later date.
Okay, understand. All right, thank you, staff, and thank you, the petitioners. This, I think this process has been really constructive from day one. And I think it's really resulted in a high-quality project. I am just really blown away by the, the quality of what I'm seeing in these renderings. And I think it's going to be a great addition, not just to the neighborhood, but to the community. And so I'm in support of these modifications and the proposal as now modified. And I very much appreciate your willingness, the petitioner's willingness, to work together with the neighborhood and with the board, taking our suggestions and recommendations as well. And so I, again, very much appreciate your willingness to compromise. And, and I think it's going to be a really outstanding project for this neighborhood and this community. So I do want to see that condition number fifteen with the parkway enhancement, if we can do that. And then also the separate red flag ordinance, I'd like to see that done as well. So further questions or comments from the board? Trustee Schringbeck?
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, as, as you heard when you were here last time, I, I thought the project was a really good project back then. And really appreciate what you guys have done because the way it looks now is even nicer than what it was before. So I really am happy that you guys not only took some suggestions from, from the other trustees, but the neighbors, because it, it looks wonderful. I like what you did with the pool, and I really like what you did with that upper floor. So thank you.
Trustee Grassi.
I, I echo my colleagues here, and I just wanted to make a few comments first. I truly appreciate your wanting to build here in Arlington Heights and choosing Arlington Heights, and especially knowing that you bought the property with the zoning that was currently in place, being willing and open to listen and change what was needed from us here on the board, but especially from who will be your neighbors over there. So I just really want to thank you and let you know how much I appreciate that. And I also want to say I really appreciate the strong neighborhood connections that were witnessed. I, I think that this, this complex is really coming into an amazing neighborhood of people who are very strongly connected, love their historic area and love Arlington Heights. So I, I really do want to just make clear my appreciation to the neighbors there who have really fought to make this fit in as best as it can based on the current zoning requirements. And, and again, then my, my final comment is that as we find out in almost everything we do, change is the only constant in life. And with that in mind, it is how we respond to change that we can do together. And if we do it together, we can come out sometimes with things even better than we thought. And with that in mind, I am definitely in support of, on the other side, looking at the kind of red flag ordinance, especially for those transitional areas in our community. We don't have a whole lot of open space. So when developers want to come here and buy here, I want to make sure that especially those transitional areas between zones can, can best fit and everybody can work together. So I am in support of that separately. But I am in support of, of what you've done based on, on your commitment to try to really hear what we need, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Labads.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming back and for making some changes. As you know, you're in my backyard, so. And I also want to thank all the residents that have come out throughout the process because I do think that, that has helped to improve the project tremendously. Did you ever think of, instead of just taking one level down, but going down one more level, a third?
We've, we explored everything that we could, given the circumstances of having what we need in the envelope financially to make the deal pencil. So big credit to OKW and, and their team for being able to transition some of those units from that upper floor to some of the other areas in the lower floors. So we only lost one unit, which was helpful because I, I have the other flip side to that, which is the business side and having to convince my partners that this change was warranted. And, and the financials still made sense, so.
Okay, thank you for that. And I do want to mention about the, the pool, the cabanas there.
Yeah.
It makes an awful lot of sense. That faces west, so it gives, it would give, assuming this is passed, it will give your residents an opportunity to have some shade. They could still lie by the pool. So I'm not surprised you didn't think of that in the first place. But, you know, good minds, working together, come up with better things. I also want to address staff. I was one who had a one-on-one conversation with manager Reclaus about the, my concerns about not the B-five property where the bank is. As trustee Grassi said eloquently, the only thing constant is change. And that spot might not be a bank forever, especially knowing how changes happen rapidly in the banking world. So I am very much in favor of the red flag ordinance. And I would also like for it to consider not just that property, not just that block, but also to, to continue to, you know, the Ridge Walnut intersection with, with Northwest Highway. Because I think, you know, those are areas that I know have been looked at for various possible projects that, and that really would need to, and I will use the word fit because once especially you get to that intersection, you've got the railroad crossing right there, and that's a concern with making something fit. So I would definitely like to see it not just for the B-five to the west of this property, but also to farther west. So that would be my recommendation for that. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Seeing none, I do have a few blue cards from individuals who want to address the board on this agenda item. Again, you're reminded of the three-minute time limit. And I will call, and we would, I understand we had a lengthy hearing on this a few weeks ago. And so if we could just address the modifications and what's changed since last time, I'd, I'd appreciate it in light of the remaining items on the agenda. And so I'll call Greg Menzies first and then Vivian Menzies.
Hi, everyone. My name's Greg Menzies. I'm a resident that's lived at two twelve West Fremont Street, which is right behind the proposed Eastman project. And I've been a resident for forty-eight years, just three, I don't know if I said that last time, but. And one of the concerns, you know, after hearing all the things that are said, I still think personally that this is too many, too dense and, and, and too high for the neighborhood across the street. And that's, my biggest concern is really the density. And then when you look at, you know, the ordinance going from B-five to residential, it's not a small change because you got people now all the time around at night and then different times while during, when we had it as a B-five, you could hardly even know there was people there before, there were, when there were still businesses involved. So I think the biggest thing for me is that B-five to residential is not a small change. And it's, and it's what you're talking about. And it's not a small change to the neighborhood. I do support that red flag because if that red flag was in place before this started, we might not be, as a resident, in the concerns that we have right now. So I think that's the biggest thing, and I'm, I'm in favor of the red flag if this does get approved. Because that was one of my other concerns, is this would be a precedent for other developers to look at the properties adjacent. So thank you.
Thanks, Greg. And next is Vivian Menzies, and then Tom Gainer.
Hi, Vivian Menzies, two twelve West Fremont. I'm going to change what I was going to say because of the red flag ordinance idea. I think that's a wonderful idea. I wish it had been in place a long time ago. And I would like to see that extended beyond just little, this little strip, but any area where we've got single-family homes adjacent to the central business area or other commercial areas. I think it's just a, a thing that we need to look at with greater sensitivity to the homeowners. Beyond that, I still don't think this project is the right fit. It sounds like a lot of the commissioners are in favor of it due to the changes. But putting a multifamily residential property where it's only been commercial is a huge change. You know, we'll live with it, we'll move on, but it definitely is setting a precedent. So I think that red flag ordinance is just a huge priority. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Vivian. Next is Tom Gainer, and then Scott McKinney.
My greetings, Mayor Hayes and village board. I'm Tom Gainer, two oh eight West Fremont. I want to start out by thanking you for the approval of the downzoning of our Hannah Neighborhood Homes across the street on Saint James. of our Hannah neighborhood homes across the street on St. James and around the corner. Think that's, shows your appreciation for the special nature of this neighborhood. I think it's, uh, really appreciated you guys understand the, the gem that you have here. Um, I was actually hoping, uh, tonight would be a triumphant win-win-win for the village, the developer and the homeowners. And I think we're close, but I don't think we're quite there. So, I was hoping that we'd have some, have some opportunity to further improve. As you're well aware, we've had, the Hannah neighbors have been hugely engaged on this project for well over a year, starting in August of 2022. And I think it's through that collaborative approach that the neighbors have demonstrated with Joe and team, uh, I think has been very, very positive in terms of taking, I think, a okay project, maybe not so okay, into something that I think has been much improved. Uh, so I would recommend that we try to bottle that going forward. I think, uh, we've got a lot of, uh, interest in our community and making this community even better. And I think we need a more collaborative approach rather than the serial approach that we currently have. I don't think that's really working well for us. Uh, the red flag, uh, ordinance, I think, would solve a bunch of this stuff in terms of eliminating surprises, like happened at the last board meeting, where we pretty much got to the twelfth hour and then say, gee, is this a project we really want to do or not? I don't think that's a good sign that we, uh, operate as a village like that. We shouldn't, we should set up the project from day one with a common vision and further build on that vision throughout the program to make it even better. Add more and more details to make it even more viable, rather than get to the end and then go yay, nay. That, that just doesn't feel right as a, as a way to operate. We've had, uh, I think that vision thing is, you know, maybe that's where the red flag ordinance will come in play. Um, we actually did a bit of that visioning with a, a project at the end of Fremont Street, where, with another developer, and we actually had a very collaborative upfront discussion that was going to require some varying, variances and stuff. And there was consensus that that's not the right fit. And I think that, that was a much better way to understand that in the first meeting rather than a year and a half down the road. So, I know I'm lecturing a bit, but we've, we've put a huge amount of effort, as you can probably appreciate, in the neighborhood, where it's trying to make this project everything it can be. We're very proud of the improvements we're made. The stepping back issue along St. James remains our one kind of remaining issue. Taking out the three units helps. We appreciate, you know, the work the Cadian team have done. It's a step in the right direction. Uh, so that's three units. If you could take six, that would be a whole floor. It starts making a huge difference in terms of the perception, what this building looks like from the historic neighborhood. If you take out twelve units, all of a sudden we're at three-story building, multifamily, which is consistent with all the other multifamily homes in our neighborhood. So, if you wanted to come up with, uh, an approach that is consistent with the tenor of the current, uh, approach that we have in the village, you get rid of twelve units, you add two back, so ten, you take ten units out of this thing and all of a sudden it looks and feels like everything else in the neighborhood.
All right, Tom, I may have asked you to finish up before.
Okay, so I will leave that at, I will, uh, um, I just want to say it's important to get this project right. And I do appreciate all the work you guys are doing to make certain that we get the best project we can. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Next is Scott McKinney and then Eileen Devine.
Hello, thank you for your time. Um, Mayor Hayes, you talked about wanting to only address the changes that are being proposed tonight. And I guess I'm surprised by the lack of change, frankly, because of how adamant a number of the board members were in the last meeting about having more significant setback, having a better transition from, um, the building to the neighborhood. And so, I just wanted to know my, like, surprise and kind of shock that, like, we are where we are tonight. Um, and I just wanted to remind you of all of your concerns that you, um, raised last time. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you, Scott. And next is Eileen Devine and then John Lewis.
Hello, everyone, everyone in the room. What a crowd. Um, my name is Eileen Devine. I reside at 201 West Euclid Avenue. I have scratched out a lot of things, so bear with me. The last village meeting ended with Mr. Citron emotionally pleading to the board. Many of us feel the same emotions and passions, but we exhibited the proper decorum, stayed in our seats and let our government continue with the process. Please remember the passion we feel when describing our homes, our history and our largest investment is just like his. I know Compass Point has invested time and money into this project. But are we here to vote on which group has put in more time, effort, money and love into the area? I believe the residents would win hands down. My words to describe this process include defensive, contentious and unheard. We need to understand how and why this process failed Compass Point and the neighborhood. As my old boss used to eloquently say as he pushed his desk chair back, maybe we need to put our common sense thinking caps on. Is the current system working? Residents need and want more representation earlier in the process. I understand we do not have an altermantic form of government, where a member of the board represents a specific area and is privy to the early stages of development. We need to find a better path of communication before a project this large is plopped into the historic area of Arlington. Since the first informal meeting when Eastman was introduced, we've asked questions and received some vague answers. We understand what you're saying, but our hands are tied. It does seem too large a building and dense for your area. We are familiar with the historic neighborhood and value it, but you'll have to bring this up with the next group. Why a multi-use building? Why a restaurant? The Illinois Restaurant Association states sixty percent fail within the first year of operation. Why can't it be a three-story residential building that will fit in the existing neighborhood? I think the answer to all these questions is purely based on profit and money. The changes Compass Point has made are minimal. It still is too large and dense. Please remember the simple words so many of you uttered at the last meeting, the building does not fit. Think about who you are casting a vote for tonight, Compass Point or the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Next is John Lewis and then Jacob, and I can't read your last name, Jacob.
It's Jacob Starr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Village Board, thanks for, uh, hearing our concerns. Once again, I'll be brief. Uh, it's been a very collaborative process. I think a lot of us in the neighborhood share the sentiments that you've expressed, that it has been improving. I'd like to echo Tom Gainer's comments. It's close, we'd like to see a little bit more and we're reliant on the will of the board to do that. With respect to staff, just because you could do something doesn't mean that you should. If they remove six more units, that'll get it down to four stories. If they remove nine, or about seven percent of the total, that'll in effect have a three-story facade adjacent to single-family homes. And the word I would leave is precedent. You know, both looking back to what this board did with the Arlington 425 project, with the residents as long singled, there's three-story townhouses there adjacent to single-family homes. We're asking for the same consideration here. The red flag law is a good start, but that doesn't change what's going on with this particular development. Three stories adjacent to single-family homes is appropriate. And this is the neighborhood where our village got its start. If the will of the board is not sufficient to do that here, when will it ever be? We trust the will of the board. Thank you.
All right, thanks, John. Next is Jacob Starr and then Martin Bauer.
Hello, I'm Jacob Starr. I live at 208 West St. James. I'm on my front porch almost every night. I stare at this building. What's there right now is hideous and needs to be removed. Over the last year, they have met with us several times at the library, other meetings. They've changed the entire look of the outside. They have lowered the density, they have done setbacks, they have buried a garage. They, everything that we've asked for, they have pretty much done. And then people keep on asking for more. So, I think they have done a fantastic job with all of that. And as one of the residents that's directly across, I think it's a great building to be there. The only question I do have is for the staff. You guys want the parking exit to be perpendicular instead of facing Northwest Highway? Is that one of the things I?
All right, Mr. Perkins, can you answer that question?
Yes, it'd be, the exit from the garage would be a ninety-degree exit with a southbound, um, direction. Uh, but the, the design would be a ninety-degree design, but it would be signed and, and everything to turn to the south.
One of the things that we had fought on to avoid traffic going to St. James was to have it angled to make it hard for residents to turn and go north. So, with a ninety, it's not going to be hard anymore. There's five kids that are directly booked on St. James. So, if we cannot make that change and have it angled towards Northwest Highway, then I think this is a great project to go ahead with.
Okay, thank you, Jacob.
Thanks.
Next is Martin Bauer and then Eric Setchi.
Good evening again. I'm here to speak in favor of this development. I am really glad to see the progress that has been made, both in terms of the development itself as well as from what I can gather in the understanding, uh, on the part of the board. Uh, I recognize that every neighborhood will always have concerns. And it also seems like no matter how much concessions there are, it will unfortunately not be enough. But Mayor Hayes, you said it right at the end of the day. In past situations like that, those concerns have shown to be overblown. More importantly, I do think Arlington Heights, we heard it in the budget conversation, really benefits from all the businesses that, uh, we have. We have to benefit it tremendously from the higher density in downtown. Being business-friendly is important to Arlington Heights and to Arlington Heights' future. Trustee Schwingback, you said it very well last time that predictability is important and that when a developer comes in and satisfies pretty much all the requirements according to the zoning laws, they ought to have a means to, uh, develop that property. What we're looking at is really at this point not very different from the remaining development on Arlington 425. I'm sure you understand that there are real similarities. I would ask for you to look at both properties, the same Arlington 425 you approved. I think this one is worthy of approving as well. Uh, there's one house directly across, everything else is diagonally across. It's not very different. I will skip a whole lot of this here, other than to once again say that we really, including all the neighbors in the Hannah, um, neighborhood, have benefited tremendously from the ongoing development. That is a requirement and a necessity for staff as well as the board to continue to, to work on, to continue to bring in new development. Saying that the property has been vacant for a while and, and can remain vacant as was done, I don't think is the appropriate, uh, perspective. I feel that the petitioner has absolutely gone out of his way to work with the village, to work with the neighbors, to address all the concerns that were expressed. I firmly believe that what we are looking at is a very good proposal and I truly urge all of you to support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bauer. Next is, uh, and last is Eric Setchi. I hope I pronounced your name right.
It's close.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Hayes, trustees, uh, thank you for, uh, considering, uh, this petition. I especially want to thank my neighbors, uh, who've been engaged through this process and the community organizing that led to, um, basically an entire redesign of this project from when it was originally proposed. I was not on board with this project. I live directly across the street from it at 200 West St. James Street. Uh, I look out my front window at the, uh, buildings in disrepair every day. I've long hoped, um, that somebody would come in and redevelop them. I did not hope maybe for a seven-story building with no setback, but that's not what we're getting. It's a six-story building with a lot of setbacks. And, yeah, maybe not having headlights in my front window because people keep coming, uh, northbound on Highland would be nice if we could angle that, that parking spot or, uh, parking exit back, um, towards Northwest Highway. I would appreciate that, but we've seen a lot of compromise in this process. The developers have heard us and, um, I would love to see this project built. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Eric. All right, I have no other blue cards. Are there any, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address, to address the board on the Eastman project? All right, saying none, then I'll go back to the board and let me just start off by saying, again, thank you, uh, to all who contributed to bringing us to this point in the process. I think it's unfair to say that the residents have not been heard. I think if anything, they have been heard very well in this process. And it's resulted in a very, very high-quality project. And it's not, um, the board doesn't have to choose between the developer and the residents. I think it's clear that we've, uh, and the developer has, have incorporated the residents into this process so that hopefully it'll be a win-win. You're not getting everything that you want, they're not getting everything that they want. But I think it's going to be ultimately, as I said earlier, a great project for not just your neighborhood, but for the community. And so, those are my comments. Trustee Grassi.
I, I had a couple other question, uh, comments that I just wanted to share that goes into, um, my comments from before, but then also for tonight and, and with, um, uh, my support of this now. It's, it's, this is my first time in this seat on the board and I am a trustee to everyone in our village. And that also includes making decisions that don't put us in legal jeopardy and that also look at our economic needs for the future. And that's where I like the idea of this red flag ordinance for future development so that we can have, especially in transitional areas, we can have more of this collaboration. Because I'm grateful the developer has done this, but not all may would have done it possibly. So, I'm open to that, but right now this decision is really about making sure that developers know when they buy a property here that we have the, the zoning laws in place so that they can do what they want to do. But then also, um, so not only just the legal ways that we can take care of, of all of our residents, but also the economics. So, that's part of these decisions for this current development that are a part of, of my approach to this tonight.
Other comments? Trustee Dannington?
Thank you, Mayor Hayes. First, I just want to say thank you, um, to, um, the developers for the changes that you did make to this property in response to our last meeting. Unfortunately, I don't think that we can do all the changes that the residents are looking for because of the way that it's zoned. I think it's a good idea to look at the red, um, red flag and ordinance in the future. I am in support of this project because I think that, um, it helps with affordability in Arlington Heights. The more apartments that we have will help with, um, making, um, it'll help everyone, um, lowering prices for apartments. Dense housing, dense housing is also good for the environment. And then financially too, these new residents are going to be shopping in our downtown businesses. So, I, I am supportive of this project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Saying, trustee Ballina?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so first of all, let me say that it's nice to hear that I wasn't the only one talking to Randy about red flag ordinances on these properties. It's great to hear. Uh, I agree with many of the comments that have been made. Uh, I think if we have more open discussions on other properties in this area and in the transition, then we can have more productive conversations earlier in the process. As many of you may remember, I was on the fence on this one. I voted no the last time. I think enough changes have been made for me to be in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. If no, trustee Schwingback?
Thank you, Mayor. Charles, just a question on this, um, this exit out of, onto Highland. You know, we've heard tonight ninety degrees versus the, you know, the, the curve. Can, can you just talk a little bit about that? Because that was one of the recommendations that you made. So, if we're gonna... Put a motion and vote on this tonight.
Correct.
What was your reasoning for wanting to go ninety again?
So it was uh one, one option was uh and I'll try to get the site plan, it's probably easier to explain with the plan. Um so this is the first floor plan. Um shown with the ninety degree, you know, your typical intersection, you know, and and the driving turn that you would have coming out of. You know, any of any of the garages and buildings that we have downtown. There was a concept where the driveway was angled. There were concerns from, you know, some in the traffic review of that, that that would. That direct vehicles into the wrong lane on, you know, heading southbound and could create uh potential accidents. There were also concerns about the visibility because you'd be coming out at an angle. And your visibility in the columns would, you know, be impeded impeded versus the ninety degree where you stop at the stop bar. You know, you have a better visibility looking both ways, um because you know Highland is a two-way. Private drive anyway, so it's not like you're coming just into a one-way um southbound uh component. So those were the reasons for recommending ninety degree. The developer has indicated they'll be doing signage, striping, they'll have uh cameras there. They said, I think at the last meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they would have this provision in their lease and that if they had. Um you know, repeat offenders, they would, you know, try to take appropriate action. Um so we, that's the reason for the recommendation to be ninety degrees, just purely from a. Um safety of exiting the garage.
Okay, and I I'm very familiar with our Vale Garage, but the the garage up by North School Park. Is that also ninety degrees?
There there, all of the garages that we have are ninety degree exits, you know, the underground garage, uh which is probably. The most challenging from a visible point, visibility point of view, coming out of the garage, both exits, the exit on the south on Sigmont and the exit on Evergreen. They're all ninety degree, um they have signage, they have, you know, um. Uh warning lights and things of that nature, um but they are all ninety degree uh driveways.
Yeah, and I remember the petitioner mentioning that before that they're gonna be keeping an eye on that, but so really for safety reasons, we wanna keep it at ninety.
Correct, and and they have, you know, from just kind of. To not spend too much time uh uh on this, but you know, they did change the flow of the garage, you know, the uh original plan back in May had. Ingress and egress completely on Highland. Um so they now have the ingress on Eastman and the exit on Highland, so that minimizes, you know, traffic. You know, so you don't have all of the traffic coming in and out of Highland, so just be the exit only.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to address a couple of the neighbors, so I appreciate that.
Trustee Bertucci.
So I I also have a question for Charles in on this respect, so um. I guess my question is, is there any reason why we wouldn't make Highland um one-way south?
Uh we we talked about that, um and every time you make a one-way street, it just pushes traffic. You know, you would then be pushing all of the traffic onto Saint James to come south on Highland at at some point.
Say, why, why would, I mean, if you push that south, anybody. On Saint James who wants, could use it still going south. But where are you pushing traffic into Saint James if you're going south from Saint James?
So there are uh parking spaces on Highland, uh both, you know, um. Ninety-degree parking spaces under the building and also parallel spaces.
Got it.
You also have a an entrance to the bank as well. Um so the bank parking lot, so you'd be pushing all of that traffic that wanted to use Highland to park or. You know, enter the bank from that driveway to Saint James.
Got it. Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Labads.
Thank you. Um I actually have something, another question for the developer, Mister Taylor, um and it has to do with. Should this project be approved tonight? Uh the staging of the. Uh the, you know, buildings, you know, the materials and stuff like that, how are you gonna control where? Where tradespeople park, things, you you know, the neighborhood is pretty tight. And there's not a lot of parking, so could you talk about that please?
I don't have a specific staging plan, but our general contractor will put together a plan that'll be approved by staff. Um everything will have to be um. Flow from Eastman to Northwest Highway, so the likely uh area of loading and unloading for materials will be on Eastman. Um and then parking will be uh coordinated with the villages relates to public pa- uh parking. There's quite a bit of spaces open on um Eastman. And then I'll have a conversation with uh Wintress Bank about using um underutilized uh spaces at their. South end of their parking lot for uh for permitting.
Okay, okay, thanks. And uh Mister Perkins, would you have anything to add to how that process works?
Um yes, prior to issuance of uh any permit for site work, they would have to submit a detailed uh construction staging plan with traffic control plan. Uh where the construction uh workers would park at different peak times, they'll have different. Amounts of la- trade and labor at different times. Um and so they would have to provide that. Hopefully, they can work out some private parking. Uh we have in the past with all the projects that we've had downtown, it has been. Uh a project to manage and we have allowed, you know, construction uh parking in the Vale, uh you know, different garages and things of that nature. And then it's uh just, you know, has to, it's one of those things that has to be monitored. Uh there'd be signs for no, no uh construction traffic on certain residential streets, things like that.
Okay, thank you, cause parking lot S is not as empty as it was even a year ago. Oh, thank you. I appreciate you addressing that.
Anybody else? Alright, trustee Tinalia.
Thanks Mayor Hayes. Um Charles, just really quickly, um in this current zoning. How tall? How tall could a building be? If all the other zoning criteria were followed with setback and density and parking and everything? Well, how tall could the building be?
So the B five district allows as of right up to ninety feet, which is typically, you know, eight plus stories. You know, the floor plate's a bit taller now, and then with density bonuses up to a hundred and forty feet. And density bonuses are for things like, you know, you know, staggered setbacks. Uh parking garages, things of that nature, they would meet those. Um uh density bonus criteria, so they could go up to a hundred and forty feet. The B five also calls for zero lot line, intent for the B five was to have dense development to grow our downtown. Uh we know this site is a little different and with the rezoning, you know, this year of the neighborhood and things have changed a little bit. Um so this story with the ten-foot setback on the first level, twenty-foot setback for levels two through four. And then uh you know, five and six being set back fifty feet, they exceed all of those setback requirements uh from from the B five district.
Yeah, a- and and thank you for that, Charles, because I I I know that this could be. As of right, quite a bit taller, quite a bit larger than what these folks are proposing. I I wanted to make a couple of comments, um. The existing building that's there is horrible. And I think the um the residents who live directly across the street spoke pretty eloquently about that. And it's been that way for quite a while. Man, I've lived here all my life and those buildings have never changed since the day I moved in here. That's just the way it's been and. Not very well maintained and it's not very pretty to look at. What 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 this architect and this owner has put together is a really attractive building. I mean, it's it's really nicely done. And so I commend them, I commend all of the residents for really getting involved. It wouldn't, I shouldn't say it like this. It may not be as wonderful. If for not all of your input on this. It could be someone who came in and asked for a hundred and forty feet. And tried to find a way to park it. And try to make it fit, and that's talk, that's, you know, with a shoehorn. And so I I I think, you know, there's there's an old phrase, you know, uh what you can do and what you can't do versus what you should do and what you shouldn't do. And I think we're leaning much more towards should and shouldn't in this case than can and can't. So I'm. I spoke quite a bit last time this was here about whether it fits or whether it doesn't fit. And the changes they've made recently, I thank you for that. Those are good changes. It's 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 sensitive to those neighbors across the street. I think it's a really nice building. I hope that the traffic can stay out of that neighborhood. And I hope you guys are mindful on your cameras and you get it all taken care of. I wanna see this thing done. It's it's, the south side wins all of the great developments. It's time for the north side of the tracks to get a nice project in here, and I think this is gonna be one of those, so I'm. I'm gonna be in support of this for all the reasons I just mentioned here.
Okay. Mister Passman, in terms of a motion, assuming there's gonna be a motion in the near future. Can we just approve the staff development committee modified recommendation that's before us?
Yes, absolutely Mayor, and and as I know the board knows, but for the benefit of the applicants and the public, what you're really doing tonight would be directing us to draft. To file approval ordinance, uh it can be a a motion to direct that drafting in accordance with the modified recommendation. We would then take all of these items uh and put together an ordinance for your approval in two weeks.
Okay, and that includes that last item fifteen regarding the Parkway uh improvement.
If that's, if that's what the motion is, then yes, it would include that, Mayor.
Okay, alright, um what's the will of the board? Trustee Bertucci.
One, just one more um comment, and Charles, can you put on, and do you have an air- aerial view?
Yes, just one moment. Does uh is that? Is this one good enough?
Yeah, that that'll work, so um I just wanna also um make mention that. Although I I was, wanted more improvement last time. I do feel like the um developer has stepped forward and addressed. That northwest corner in particular, I had said need more setback on the northwest corner. Um and kinda looked you guys eye to eye and I appreciate you guys taking that into consideration, cause I think that is. It's it's not exactly what the neighbor across the street might want, but I certainly think it was a. Good effort to get it as close as possible. The only other thing I wanna make mention of is is. Is let's, as I've also tried to keep my my up my focus also, or at least o- observation that. This building, or this uh development will have three sides of business. And it will have one half of one side that re- the residents that we're talking about, so we're talking about one half of one side. Being um subjected to the resident, and obviously this is not in the middle of the neighborhood, it is on the edge. And I still want as much sensitivity as possible to neighbors anytime, every time. Um but um between the swimming pool situation and the the further setback. It's, it it's gonna be, I I agree with uh trustee Tinalia, it's gonna look much better than the current. Um buildings that are sitting there. And and so um thank you again for listening. I know you put in the time and the effort. Um so I I will also be in favor.
Alright, is there someone who'd like to draft uh to uh make a motion to direct staff to draft the ordinance? Anybody? Trustee Dunnington.
You can, go ahead. Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to draft an ordinance.
To direct staff to draft your.
To direct staff to direct the ordinance um based on the um. Plan commission recommendation. Um to the proposed one sixteen, uh one sixteen to a hundred and twenty West Eastman redevelopment project. With the following zoning actions. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think you need to read the whole thing, but so just including uh condition number fifteen.
Yeah, if it includes, if it includes a modified recommendation, that would include all fifteen items.
Motion by trustee Dunnington, second by trustee Baldino. Further questions or comments from the board or from the audience, seeing none, let's take a roll call on this.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Tinalia?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. Well, uh congratulations, thank you to everybody involved and uh good luck in the construction season, so thank you all. Right, we'll move on then in the agenda.
Oh, nope, nope, nope.
What? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Very important red flag ordinance. I'm trying to move things along.
Too fast.
Alright, who'd like to uh make a motion to um?
I would like to make the mo- I would like to make a motion. To direct staff to prepare a red flag ordinance for consideration at a future meeting, directing the plan commission. To hold a public hearing concerning properties fronting on Saint James Street immediately adjacent to the proposed sixteen. One sixteen, one twenty Eastman redevelopment site and also along Northwest Highway. Towards um the intersection of Northwest Highway and Ridge or Walnut or whatever it is exactly right there. Um and such an ordinance would identify that further study and evaluation of possible zoning, rezoning, overlay zoning. And or comprehensive plan changes may be considered for their properties.
Second.
Alright, motion by trustee Labad, second by trustee Grassi. Any further questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience? What's that?
Jim has a question.
Jim, go ahead.
I I'm a little concerned with this, I have to tell you, I'm, uh this really just speaks to the fact that we're concerned. Um with, as we've just got complete talking about this particular project, now we're gonna put this same. Issue on the owners of that property. And it seems fairly narrow to me. Um if I was the owners of the bank, or if I were the owners of the property next door in the commercial B five zoning, and you were gonna tell me that suddenly you're gonna. Take my, weigh my right to put up a five-story building or whatever it might be, I might be upset by that. So I think we ought to be really careful how this proceeds. And I think that it shouldn't be directed at just this particular property, should be any. B five property that is directly across from R three. Or something so similar to that. I I just think this is too narrow.
Right, well, we can certainly, this, you're just drafting the ordinance, it's gonna come back to us for consideration and deliberation.
That that's correct, and 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 I understand, understand the comment, the the motion is, as as was stated uh by trustee Labad's, and seconded. This would only be for us to come back and draft, and that this also will be on your agenda for adoption. In two weeks, and and even adopting the red flag ordinance, if it's directed and then approved, does not itself change the zoning. It's simply, and I I know the board knows this, but again, for the edification of anyone watching, this would just set formally in motion. The process for possible amendments to the zoning map, comprehensive plan or other affiliated regulations. That would affect development possibilities on the cited properties.
Right, okay. Anything further? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Alright, one no by trustee Tinalia. Anything further on this before I move on? Okay. Alright, thank you all on the Eastman project. We will then move on in the agenda to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the board who wishes to remove an item on the consent agenda? Anybody in the audience who wishes to remove an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, um anyone wish to vote no or pass on any item on the consent agenda? If not, an entertaining motion to approve?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion to approve by trustee Baldino, seconded by trustee Tinalia, roll call.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Tinalia?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. Well, we made it by nine o'clock, we're to new business. The Full Circle Communities slash Grace Terrace. A proposal uh look to be located at fifteen nineteen South Arlington Heights Road. This is for a rezoning and a planned unit development, comprehensive plan amendment and a plat- subdivision and associated variation, so. Uh petitioner is present, if you just introduce yourself and tell us what you're looking to do here.
First of all, thank you so much for having us before you tonight, board. Um my name is Emma O'Connor Brooks, I'm a co-project manager at Full Circle Communities. And I'll let my colleague introduce herself as well.
Hello, good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Denise Reyes with Full Circle Communities, also co-project manager for Grace Terrace. Uh today, we're here to introduce our project. Um it is a twenty-five unit permanent supportive housing development for veterans and persons with disabilities. Uh so tonight, we are here to uh introduce our project, but also introduce ourselves as the owner, operator and developer. Of Grace Terrace. We'll also go through uh the project details, our experience as developers in this type of housing. We also wanna take some time to respond to the community concerns that we've heard through this community process. And what we believe the community benefit is uh with the introduction of Grace Terrace to Arlington Heights. Full Circle is a nonprofit affordable housing developer established in nineteen ninety-nine. We own over sixteen hundred units across twenty-five developments and our developer, our develop- a development portfolio. and our developer, our develop, a development portfolio, excuse me, is ninety-five percent occupied. Uh, this was recently confirmed in an occupancy report, uh, this past November. Properties are located primarily in Chicago or Chicagoland area, but also we have properties in Iowa and Michigan. Uh, we have another four hundred and ninety-two units currently approved and/or under construction. Our mission is to expand access to affordable housing through the preservation and development of housing, uh, thoughtful design, the provision of targeted services, supportive services to our tenants. And we achieve that by dedicating seventy-five percent of the economics to the services, uh, going back, uh, to the building for our clients. And we do wanna, um, just highlight that Full Circle isn't just the developer. We will be the long-term owner and property manager of this facility. And as such, we are committed to the success of the development and in being good neighbors in Arlington Heights. Full Circle is an award-winning nationally recognized developer, owner, and property manager in all types of, uh, housing. We've received awards at the corporate level. We recently received the Innovation Catalyst Award from the Corporation for Supportive Housing at the Supportive Housing Awards. And recently received the, uh, Illinois Housing Development Authority Award for the twenty twenty-three Supportive Housing Developer. Many of our projects have also received award recognition for, um, our, our developments, uh, some of which we will touch on a little bit later in the presentation, but we wanted to walk you through, when we walk you through our, our experience. We are here today, we're here today after being approached by the North Northwest Suburban Task Force on, uh, Supportive Housing, more commonly, uh, known as the Housing Task Force. They are a, uh, pro- nonprofit, all volunteer advocacy organization with approximately a hundred and forty members committed to bringing housing opportunities to persons with disabilities in the northwest suburbs. Um, the task force, uh, approached us about the need for permanent supportive housing in Arlington Heights for persons with disabilities. And this is after the task force, uh, helped to successfully bring Hart's Place to Arlington Heights, which is the first permanent supportive housing development that opened back in twenty nineteen. Um, and currently, Hart's Place is fully leased and has an extensive waitlist, which demonstrates the need for this type of housing in Arlington Heights. Um, this is also true in other PSH housing in the area where there are long waitlists. Um, these properties include Myers Place in Mount Prospect, Phil Haven in Wheeling, and Midtown Crossing in Des Plaines. Um, the Village also identifies affordable housing as a need in the community as, as is shown in the consolidated plan, where affordable housing is listed as priority number one. Um, and also through the, uh, Inclusionary Housing, uh, ordinance. So just to go over our, uh, project timeline, uh, we've been working on our design, securing our funding, and working through the zoning process. After which, we were, we, we continue to work through our permitting. We will have our financial closing in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, at which point we plan on starting construction immediately. We expect a twelve-month construction period, after which we will transition to our in-house property managers to start leasing in twenty twenty-five. Uh, we've been working on our zoning, uh, since May and have followed, uh, the community process as outlined to us by the Village staff, as shown on the slide. All of these meetings have been public and posted on the Village website. A notification was given for specific meetings such as, uh, the neighborhood meeting and the Plan Commission as directed by staff. Uh, notification was sent out to, uh, tax owners as required. Uh, we posted, uh, signage and sent out letters, which were approved by the Village staff before sending them out. Uh, we were required to send an affidavit to the Village before the Plan Commission hearing, showing that we completed this notification that included, uh, images, pictures. The letters that went out, uh, went out to ninety-five households, uh, both for the neighborhood meeting as well as the Plan Commission. Um, we were required to send out notification letters to neighbors within a two hundred and fifty-foot radius of, uh, the property line, uh, but we went, uh, above and beyond that and mailed out letters to neighbors within, uh, thousand square feet of the property line. Um, and these letters were presented to staff and approved. Uh, we posted three signs on the property, um, two weeks prior to, uh, the Plan Commission that was held in, uh, October, and these signs were located on Arlington Heights um, and on the other two, um, corners of the lot. And I'm gonna have Emma walk us through our project details.
Thanks Denise. Um, so just to point out our site location, we are located at fifteen nineteen to sixteen twenty-five South Arlington Heights Road. We consider this to be a very high opportunity area because it's when, within a half a mile of, uh, many amenities such as local parks, grocery stores, restaurants, health clinics, and pharmacies. Um, and Arlington Heights Road also features sidewalks, which makes it very pedestrian-friendly. Uh, transit is also close by, there's a Pace Bus Route two oh eight at Golf in Arlington Heights Road, which is about an eight-minute travel distance, uh, from our property for a walking distance. And this bus connects to metro stations as well as CTA stops. Uh, Pace also offers on-demand services to people with disabilities, and one of Pace's on-demand service zones is located across the street from our property. And this provides reservation-based shared ride services within Arlington Heights and Rolling Meadows. So just to orient you on our site, um, to the north of us is a vacant lot, and to the south of us is an existing memory care facility, which also has institutional zoning. And to the east and west of us are single-family residential, uh, homes. Further south of us is the intersection of Golf Road and South Arlington Heights Road, which, as I'm sure you know, is a busy commercial corridor. And our building is strategically positioned to be located between the site access points, one of which is existing and aligns with Pickwick Road, and one is a proposed curb cut that aligns with Emerson Street. So, some of our site data, we're located on about three point nine three acres, and we're proposing twenty-five units with forty-one parking stalls, including eight accessible stalls. Um, since the parking is at the rear of the building, the lobby and outdoor recreation spaces are also located at the rear of the property. Uh, but as you can see from our landscape plan, we've worked closely with staff to develop an extensive landscape buffer along the east property line in addition to a six-foot-tall privacy fence. Um, so this is a site section looking north, uh, but just to back up a bit, um, as I mentioned before, we are providing generous setbacks and an extensive landscape buffer to accommodate privacy for the single-family homes to the east of us, as well as consideration of privacy of our residents. The rear of the building to the east property line ranges from ninety-five feet to a hundred and twenty-five, or to a hundred and twenty-three foot setback, and that's because that east property line angles. Um, the front of the building is also setback ninety feet from the street. Uh, this site section is facing north and is showing the south facade, which is where the building is closest to our property line. And I just wanna highlight some dimensions here, that, um, at this point, it's ninety-five foot six inches with a thirty-one foot landscape buffer. Um, and this is in addition to the rear neighbor, to the west, uh, property line, which is approximately thirty-two foot six inches. So the total distance between building to building is about a hundred and twenty-eight feet, which exceeds distances between single-family homes, including family homes that are across the street from each other. And as you can see from the sightlines, which are shown from the approximate location of the second-story window of our rear neighbor, those sightlines will be largely obscured by existing and proposed trees along that east property line. Um, so similarly, this is just a site section on the opposite side of the property. This is where we're furthest from the east line, so we're about a hundred and twenty-three feet away from the property line. Um, and just similarly wanna point out that a lot of the views into our building, uh, will be obscured by the landscaping. So here's a southeast rendering showing the entrance of our building. Uh, just wanna point out some property features. We will be an elevator-served building, and doors and hallways will accommodate a wider turning radius for wheelchairs and motorized transports. Uh, we're also Enterprise Green Community certified and include energy-efficient features and Energy Star appliances. As mentioned previously, because the parking is located at the rear, the entrance is also located at the rear, which is what you're seeing here, along with our community, community patio. Um, some of our building and onsite amenities include a community room, a computer lab, laundry, tenant's storage space, community garden, onsite property management, and onsite service offices. And this is just showing the northwest rendering, which would be if you were driving south, down South Arlington Heights Road. And I just wanna point out here that, uh, many of the trees are transparent so that you can see the building in this rendering, but the reality is that the existing and proposed trees would obscure the view much more than what is shown here.
And then going into a little bit, sorry, going into our, uh, our unit mix. Uh, as mentioned, this is a twenty-five unit facility. Uh, we will have, uh, twenty-one bedrooms and five two-bedrooms. Uh, the square footage, uh, for the one-bedroom is approximately, uh, six hundred and sixty, uh, square feet on average, the smallest being six hundred and fifty-four square feet. And for the two-bedrooms, average, uh, eight hundred square feet, the smallest being seven hundred and eighty-one square feet. And, uh, this meets or exceeds the Village Code requirements for all unit sizes. Uh, the property will also have accessible features in the ADA units, uh, that go above and beyond code. These include lower counter heights, shallow shelves, roll-under sinks and prep spaces, and rocker switchers and outlets. Um, and some of the bathrooms, uh, will have roll-in showers. Uh, in regards to our project financing, uh, this is being financed majoritally by, uh, Illinois Housing Development Authority through their Permanent Supportive Housing Program, um, which covers the lion's share of our funding. Uh, other sources include, uh, state and private grants, a private loan, and all of the project financing has been committed. Grace Terrace is a hundred percent permanently affordable, um, for permanent supportive housing. Um, it is independent living and not transitional, uh, tenants will have leases. Uh, supportive meaning, uh, there are services available, but the tenants are not required to use the services as part of their tenancy. One hundred percent of the units in this building will have rental assistance that will be covered by the Housing Authority of Cook County, uh, project-based vouchers. Um, and this project, uh, is targeting, uh, persons with disabilities and veterans uh, at an AMI level of thirty and fifty percent. And just to give you a little bit of context of what that means, uh, a thirty percent AMI income is twenty-three thousand dollars annually for an individual and twenty-six thousand as a couple. For a fifty percent AMI, it is thirty-eight thousand as an individual and forty-four thousand as a couple. Alright, we wanted to provide you information regarding our, uh, an overview of our tenant selection plan. Uh, so, before the project, uh, finishes construction, we'll open an interest list for people interested in living at this property. Um, this interest list will then be marketed locally, and we will work with local veteran organizations, um, and other organizations that similarly work with persons with disabilities to get referrals. And that includes the Village of Arlington Heights, uh, Health Department as requested during our housing commission. Um, we'll also be working with local organizations like the Local VA, Volunteers of America, Heartland Alliance, and Partners in Community Buildings. And we'll also work closely with the task force, um, in getting referrals. Because of our, because our tenants will be receiving housing vouchers, we'll pass this interest list over to the Housing Authority of Cook County, who will then use the interest list to develop a site-based list for the property and verify the qualifications such as income, uh, disability, or veteran status. Um, a disability is required as part of tenancy at this property, um, and we, and will be verified as part of the tenant's selection process. Uh, veterans will have a preference at Grace Terrace, which means that if they were to apply, they would move up, um, on the waitlist. And once the site-based list is developed, it is then given to our, uh, property management team, who does a rigorous screening process that includes criminal background checks, credit background checks, and verification of income. And our screening process applies to all the adults who will be residing in the units, not just the head of the household. And, um, as discussed in, uh, previous, uh, commissions and at the early board review, while we can't implement a local preference, although we plan to market, uh, locally, um, across our portfolio, many residents of our properties already have a connection to the community, uh, prior to tenancy. Um, we conducted a focus group across our properties, and residents often mention going to school or growing up in the area along, um, growing up in areas where they have connections to, uh, local, like, churches, uh, community, and businesses. Um, and that supportive and affordable housing provides an opportunity to stay connected, uh, to familiar neighborhoods and nearby families. So, we will abide by all federal and fair housing guidelines as it relates to defining a disability. Um, disability is defined by the Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, which is a legal definition, but the most common understanding and simplest, simplest version of that definition is an individual with a disability is a person who has a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities. So, Grace Terrace will be a disability-neutral, uh, property. Um, and going through fair housing laws along with, uh, American with Disabilities Act, we cannot, nor do we want to discriminate against any specific disability, uh, that is protected under these federal laws. Therefore, disability-neutral means that we aren't selecting in or selecting out any specific disabilities over another. And then we wanted to reiterate, um, that, uh, while this is called permanent supportive housing, this does not mean that it is an assisted living facility or twenty-four-hour care. Uh, Grace Terrace is for persons with disabilities who can live independently in a community that could benefit for, from some supportive services. Um, and our supportive services are, again, optional and not a requirement, uh, for tenancy. Um, just to walk you through our property management and staff plan, there will be three regular staff members on-site, including a property manager that will maintain regular, sorry, let me pull this back, uh, regular business hours, which are approximately nine AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, we'll also have a part-time maintenance staff that will share with other properties and will be on-site as needed. And then we'll have a service provider that will work the equivalent of a forty-hour work week, but their hours are sometimes flexible because they might need to meet with tenants at night or host events on the weekends, so their hours aren't quite as regular as the property manager. So just to tell you a little bit about our services, Full Circle partners with a service provider to deliver on-site services at all of our developments. As mentioned, we invest seventy-five percent of developer fees and ongoing cash flow back into providing services to resi- to residents, and we conduct annual resident surveys to ensure services reflect residents' needs and goals. At Grace Terrace, case managers will work with residents to identify their service needs and goals, but some examples might include, include asset building such as job training, case management to help residents retain housing, access benefits and other entitlements assistance, socialization and community building among the residents such as planning holiday parties and events or starting a community garden, and health and wellness goals such as connecting residents to healthcare resources and activity of daily living services. Uh, we have numerous examples across our PSH or integrated PSH portfolio where residents with complex backgrounds not only achieve stability, but, and have their basic needs, needs met, but also contribute to the culture of the property through volunteerism and leadership. We take a blended management approach at Full Circle, which basically means that we have a collaborative, team-based approach to working with residents. Blended management requires a distinct but complementary role for ownership, property management, and supportive services. It is critical that these distinct roles develop common goals, language, and procedures through blended management to provide the best outcomes for our residents and the property. Our communication expectations for blended management are intentionally robust so that staff can proactively resolve any issues on-site and make sure residents' needs are being met. So as you can see outlined here, we have daily contact, weekly, and monthly check-ins to make sure that communication is happening effectively across our properties. Just to give you a quick overview of some of our house rules that might be relevant to this audience, um, this is not an exhaustive list, but we do have community standards of conduct to ensure that-
to ensure that we're able to maintain a pleasant, safe, and comfortable environment for residents and surrounding neighbors. Quiet hours are between eleven PM and seven AM, and all residents must not exceed any excessive noise levels at any hour of the day. Uh, visitors and guests are welcome as long as they abide by property rules, and unauthorized persons are not permitted in the building. Entryways and sidewalks are kept, are to be kept free of all obstacles, debris, or other items that may create an unsightly appearance. There is no public consumption of alcohol. There are zero sex offenders allowed on the property, zero drug use or possession allowed on property, including marijuana and medical marijuana because we fee, we, we receive federal funding, and there are zero weapons and firearms allowed on the property. Just to walk you through, quickly through our building security plan, our management office is strategically located to have sightlines into the entry vestibule, the lobby and elevators, and the community room. The security camera layout will be designed to provide comprehensive internal and external surveillance, and is monitored by management staff and can be accessed remotely twenty-four-seven. The primary objective of the security system is to deter potential security threats, prevent lease violations, and restrict access to unauthorized individuals. This system ensures that not only residents and authorized personnel can access the site, but also maintain a secure and well-regulated environment throughout the property. I also just want to note that key fob access will only be on the main entry door and the community room doors, which both have sightlines from the property management office. All other doors will be locked and only accessible by staff. There's also a twenty-four-seven tenant hotline where tenants can reach management staff after hours in case of emergency. I also just want to point out that we have a proactive management, um, response at all of our properties, which includes historically developing positive relationships with emergency services during the development and operations of a property, particularly with representatives from their community policing and or crisis response divisions. Properties that we have acquired have actually seen a significant drop in emergency response due to our proactive management, including the frequent events that we host to invite the community and local police departments to interact with our residents in positive ways. An example of one of this events is, uh, photographed here, and this was a barbecue and talent show where we invited police department at our apartments, uh, Village Brook Apartments located in Carroll Stream. We are the long-term, as Denise mentioned, we are the long-term property manager and owner of our properties, and it is important to us reputationally to resolve issues as they come up. We want to be a good neighbor and a good member of this community. And this is just pointing out, uh, Police Chief Testimonial after a Coffee with Chief event was held at our Creekview, uh, Apartments in Richmond, Illinois. So I'll just quickly read his comment here. "I believe the Creekview community is an excellent addition to the Village of Richmond. The Village of Richmond Police Department prides itself on the close working relationship we have with our residents and communities, and I am pleased to see that Creekview similar place, similarly places such a high value of importance on this as well."
Thank you. Uh, so, wanted to, uh, talk through our, uh, development experience. Um, our development team for Grace Terrace is ourselves as the developer, owner, and operator of the building. Our architect on record is Portigan Clark and Associates. Our general contractor, uh, will be Weiss Builders, and our civil engineer is Cage Civil Engineering. Um, all of these partners have experience in affordable housing developments, and we've all worked with them individually in the past. And this exact team is currently completing an affordable housing project in Carroll Stream, Illinois. So to demonstrate our development experience, we'd like to highlight a permanent supportive housing development in our portfolio that is in operation. Uh, this is Pearl Street Commons in McHenry, uh, that opened in twenty eighteen. And like Grace Terrace, this is a twenty-five unit permanent supportive housing development for veterans and persons with disabilities. Uh, it has a universally designed, uh, does, it is universally designed, uh, with one- and two-bedroom apartments, uh, in service provision, offering onsite case management and advocacy. Uh, this project is also financed in a very similar way using IDA's, uh, PSH program. Um, and similar to other projects of its type, this building is fully leased and has an extensive waitlist. Um, the city of McHenry was so happy with this project that they've invited us to come back, uh, and develop more housing in an adjacent lot. Um, and because Grace Terrace is a, a proposed project, we wanted to show you com- a comparable project um, that will have similar amenities and finishes as to what is being proposed at Grace Terrace. Um, so here are some, uh, interior shots, uh, highlighting, uh, these spaces, uh, within Pearl Street Commons. Um, as mentioned, uh, in a previous slide, we conduct annual service, uh, annual surveys at our properties. Um, and Full Circle conducted our survey at Pearl Street, uh, this past September. And regarding the property, residents stated, uh, that they like the interior and use the common spaces often, especially the community room. Um, in regards to resident community, residents reported that there is a strong sense of community at Pearl Street. Uh, residents also look out for one another and are eagle, eager to help each other. Um, and this is evidenced in the way that they speak about one another. They say things like, "We're like family here." Um, and with the number of the resident-led activities, um, that they take upon themselves to initiate, uh, projects at the, at the building. In regards to satisfaction, a hundred percent of the residents agreed that living at Pearl Street Commons improved their quality of life. Uh, they get along well with other Pearl Street Common residences, residents, and they rely on each other as neighbors. Um, in regards to the services at Pearl, a hundred percent of the residents, uh, use, who use the services said that their service provider makes them feel less alone, uh, has helped them, uh, access community services. And after Pearl Street was placed in service, we received a couple of testimonials from the residents that moved in. I wanted to highlight two of those testimonials from a resident at Pearl Street. Pearl Street has provided safe and affordable, stable housing. "I have met many people in the building where I have developed friendships and a safe community. I want to thank those who have made this possible. It has changed my life in so many ways." And from a resident at Pearl Street, "The staff have made Pearl Street Commons a great place to live. They have always made this community a fantastic place of sharing and caring for all. Thank you Pearl Street Commons for all you have done for me, a homeless veteran with nowhere to go, now a veteran at ease in a place that I am proud to call home." And we wanted to present this slide as further evidence of our experience specifically in this type of housing. Um, but our developments are actively, uh, responding to communities that we serve. Some have a focus on veterans and persons with disabilities, while others are focused on serving families or serving seniors. Um, so we don't have a cookie-cutter development, um, but when we do commit to a project mission, um, and to serve a specific population, we deliver. So here are a few examples of the most similar properties in comparison, uh, to our mission here at Grace Terrace. Pearl Street Commons being the first, located in McHenry, Illinois. This is a twenty-five unit building, a hundred percent permanent supportive housing, uh, targeted to veterans and persons with disabilities. And all twenty-five units, uh, are occupied by either a qualifying veteran or a person with disability. Uh, Pearl Street was awarded twenty-twenty Audrey Nelson, uh, Community Development Award by the National Community Development Association. The next project is Fifty-One Fifty Northwest Highway, which is, uh, located in the Jefferson Park neighborhood in Chicago, Illinois. Uh, it was built as, uh, intentionally integrated community-serving veterans, persons with disabilities, and families. But this was not designed as a hundred percent permanent affordable, permanently supportive housing. Um, ten of the units are specifically set aside for veterans that were referred by, uh, the Jesse Brown VA, and all ten of those units are occupied by VA referrals. Additionally, uh, thirty-five of the units are occupied by either a veteran or a person with disability or both. Uh, and Fifty-One Fifty was awarded the twenty-twenty-three Richard H. Dreehouse Nonprofit Development Award from the Chicago Neighborhood Development Awards. The next project is, uh, Torrance Place, which is located in Lansing. Uh, Torrance Place was also built as an intentionally integrated community-serving veterans, persons with disabilities, and small households. Was not designed as a hundred percent permanent supportive housing. Uh, but thirty-one of the units are filled by veterans and or persons with disabilities. And the project was recently featured on Veterans Day by the, by the Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago. The last project listed is Fifteenth Street, which is located in Dubuque, Iowa. Um, at Fifteenth Street, we have seven units that have been set aside specifically for veterans, and all seven of those units are filled with qualified veterans. And at Fifteenth Street, forty-two percent of the units are filled with veterans, persons with disabilities, or both. And as you can see in the last column, you know, we've create, uh, communities where veterans and persons with disabilities are intentionally targeted, but we've gone above and beyond our targeted goals.
I know we've taken up quite a bit of your time, so I'm going to very quickly talk through, uh, responding to some resident concerns that we've heard. Uh, so just to point out, we did have a traffic study done. Uh, they confirmed Grace Terrace will be a low-traffic generator, and also as noted in the staff report, uh, the institutional district typically is a lower-traffic generator than the office transitional district. Um, also, this was noted during the plan commission by staff. We are requesting a parking variance for less parking, uh, and we feel that this is because parking utilization will be very low at this property. Task Force has done parking counts themselves at other local PSH developments, and found that none of them fully utilize their parking. And as noted in the staff report, we have a similar ratio to Hart's Place for our parking count, and there have been no issues there. The traffic study also confirmed that our parking count is adequate. Uh, just to walk through some of the design decisions around why the parking lot is located at the rear and south of the building. Uh, we originally had a scheme where it was located in front of the building, but we worked closely with staff to land on the final orientation and location of parking at the property. Part of the decision-making involved is the fact that a fire access lane would be needed on the east side regardless. Um, so it made sense to also locate parking there to minimize the amount of stormwater runoff. And there were also concerns expressed about parking being an eyesore along the South Arlington Heights Road corridor. We originally had all of the parking on the east side, but moved a significant portion to the south side to be able to increase the landscape buffer, as you can see here. Um, as previously mentioned, or sorry, it wasn't previously mentioned, um, there's a low parking utilization count at Pearl Street Commons. There's only nine cars on the property. So I've highlighted in this orange box where those nine cars would theoretically, theoretically be parked, since this is such a similar, um, property and demographic. Uh, the building is oriented on the property to maximize setbacks. It's really centrally located on the property. Um, I've already noted our rear setbacks earlier in our site sections, but, um, I just wanted to also note that we were required to have a ninety-foot front setback to align with the memory care facility to the south. Um, and this slide is just to point out our relationship to the neighborhood. It's very likely that all pedestrian traffic will use the sidewalk along South Arlington Heights Road on our side of the property, and will likely travel south to Golf Road where there's a lot of amenities. I just wanted to point out, um, that while we are proposing a three-story building, there is a precedent for three-story buildings in this neighborhood. Just to the southwest of us is Park Place, which is a three-story condominium building. And I believe there is a proposed multifamily project being proposed at the International Plaza, which currently is a four-story proposal. So, just wanted to point out some precedences in the neighborhood. This is a very technical plan that I won't get too deep into, but there have been concerns expressed about light spillover into neighboring properties. And this is just to confirm that we'll work with staff and all inspectors to ensure that our lighting levels meet the required code. And this is a photo of Pearl Street Commons taken at night to show the ambient lighting from the interior of the building. This is taken from about eighty feet away, which is significantly closer than any of our neighbors will be to our property. And just also want to point out that all of the units will be provided with window blinds, and our residents are just as interested in their privacy as the neighbors are in theirs. This is just a quick diagram showing that for the existing site drainage, there is no stormwater management plan, and the water just flows with the natural grade to the site to the east. Our proposed water management plan makes sure that no water will be flowing onto any other properties, and all of the water will be flowing into Arlington Heights right-of-way. And just want to also point out that this is a dry bottom detention pond, meaning that it has to filter out within ninety-two hours and will not have, um, standing water in it. It's meant for an a hundred-year flood.
There were also concerns expressed, uh, regarding the property taxes. Uh, while Full Circle is a nonprofit organization, we pay property taxes across all of our portfolio. Uh, Grace Terrace is estimated to pay, uh, fifty thousand dollars annually in property taxes. Um, and based on our experience, we expect, uh, to have few or no children living at Grace Terrace. Uh, therefore, the development will not be a tax burden on the village as the majority of the taxes, uh, will go into the school system. Um, as mentioned before, uh, we will contribute seventy-five percent of the economics, uh, back to the building for resident services. There is also, uh, concerns regarding, uh, property values. Studies conducted by the Journal of Housing Economics, uh, Redfin and Trulia have shown that the introduction of affordable housing developments have no significant negative impact on property values. And this is also, uh, shown to be true across our portfolio where values have continued to go up, uh, for the surrounding properties. And, uh, data analysis conducted of home sales within a one-mile radius of Hart's Place, the other PSH project in Arlington Heights, uh, showed that the average, uh, sale price for a single-family home was three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars before the construction of Hart's Place, and is currently an average of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars today. So, we wanted to close our presentation, um, highlighting some of the community benefits we believe will be brought by, uh, this project. Grace Terrace, uh, will create long-term stability for persons with disabilities and veterans. Uh, the project aligns with the village's consolidated plan. Uh, specifically, it's Priority One for Affordable Housing, providing housing stability for persons with disabilities, veterans, um, which is an identified vulnerable population within that plan. It also aligns with the Village of Arlington Heights twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five strategic, uh, priorities, specifically number six, uh, to continue to embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, uh, to create a sense of belonging in the community and village governments, and Priority Number Nine, to seek, maintain, and expand attainable housing within the community. Um, the project also, uh, speaks to sustainability goals. Uh, we will be, uh, Enterprise Green, Green Communities certified and intend to use, uh, Energy Star appliances. And, uh, regarding the economic investment, we will be developing a longstanding, uh, vacant lot. Uh, and the development will be contributing an increased amount of property taxes to the village than it currently is. And the investment of the thirteen million dollars, uh, that we'll use to create this project um, is coming from sources that have already committed these funds for this type of housing. And if it's not used here, it will be used elsewhere. Um, and so with that, uh, we'd like to say that we at Full Circle are very proud of the work that we do. And as the owner, operator of this building, uh, we will be a part of the community, uh, for the long term and want to be a positive force and a good neighbor. And with that, we say thank you for your time and consideration.
Right, well, thank you for the very detailed presentation. I think perhaps the most detailed, uh, petitioner presentation that I've heard in thirty-two years. I, we very much appreciate it though, because I think it answered some of our questions and hopefully addressed some of the concerns of the neighborhood. And so, uh, thank you for that presentation. Now for another detailed presentation, Mr. Perkins.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Alright, so I'd like to walk through the actual zoning actions that are being requested, because this is a zoning petition. Uh so the requested action is for a preliminary plat of subdivision, uh to subdivide the property into two lots. An amendment to the comprehensive plan to change the classification from offices only to the institutional classification. And then rezoning of Lot One from Office Transitional into that Institutional Zoning District. And then a plan unit development for the twenty-five unit uh supportive housing development on Lot One. They are seeking three variations. The first is to the lot width for the Lot Two, which is currently zoned OT. And when it's subdivided off, it would have eighty-foot frontage on Arlington Heights Road when a hundred-foot frontage is required. The second variation would be for uh ten-space parking variation to only provide forty-one parking spaces instead of fifty-one. There is a condition in the recommendation that would require additional parking up to village code should parking become a problem. There's plenty of space on the site where they could provide those ten spaces now and not seek that variation. Um but it probably doesn't make sense, given the usability of parking at Hart's Place and other examples. And then thirdly, um a variation to emit a loading zone, a ten-foot by thirty-five-foot loading zone. Again, that could be provided on-site. It would just be more pavement. And for just the small number of units, twenty-five units, it's not really necessary. Um these aerials kind of show the property along Arlington Heights Road. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the history of the corridor, because I think that's important. Um so starting off, on the left is the existing zoning, so uh you can see it highlighted. It's Office Transitional. It was zoned that way and has been off and on since nineteen eighty-seven. To the south is the Institutional Memory Care Facility. And then on the on the right-hand side, you can see the comprehensive plan. That uh that kind of uh brownie color, it's hard to tell from this uh graphic, but it it is representative of Office Transitional along that corridor. The green to the south, again, is the institutional use. So um there have been four projects that have been approved on these properties. Uh in nineteen eighty-seven, the first property was on just two of the parcels. Um uh just the north two parcels of what we're talking about tonight. Uh that was approved uh with uh rezoning from uh R-one at the time to OT. Um just over eleven thousand square foot building and seventy-two parking spaces. So much more dense, much more traffic than what we're talking about tonight. In two thousand and one, so that that first one from nineteen eighty-seven was not built. Uh in two thousand and one, uh different office development was proposed on more property. Not just the property that we're talking about tonight, but also on the memory care property. This was a uh six-building, two stories, each building, up to twenty-nine feet in height, about ninety square feet. Of uh square footage in two phases, first phase with a hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces. And the second phase with a hundred and ninety-five parking spaces. Again, uh much more traffic that was proposed, that was approved. It was never built. In two thousand and five, that same developer then came back with a different proposal. Uh for the most part on these properties, but they did not include uh this one parcel here. Um that was part of the five-acre parcel to the south, yet to be developed, uh that's part of that memory care facility. This project also was approved by the village, um two buildings, twenty-two thousand square feet and just over twelve thousand square feet. Uh the buildings are twenty-nine feet in tall uh in height, and again, uh hundred and forty-five parking spaces. Uh that building was not built either. Uh then in two thousand and thirteen, uh the memory care facility uh uh was originally called Autumn Leaves. Uh came through rezoned from Office Transitional to Institutional. And the memory care facility was built. At that time, we required that there be a shared driveway uh in this area to allow for potential development to the north. And then in two thousand sixteen, there was another medical uh office building proposal, medical and general office. Um that was approved uh for the properties i- in question that we're talking about. Uh and that was for about a twenty-six thousand square foot uh development. The this one was a single-story building, about nineteen feet in height to the midpoint of the pitch roof. And with a hundred and thirty-nine spaces, parking spaces. Then in two thousand and eighteen, the village adopted the South Arlington Heights Road Corridor Plan, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. And then in twenty twenty, we had COVID and the office market pretty much collapsed. Uh the South Arlington Heights Road, south of Central, uh the office vacancy right now, according to CoStar, is twenty-two point six percent vacant. So that's three hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet of vacant office space, south of Central Road towards I ninety. So the reason I walked through that is because uh this property, it, you know, I'm not saying it would never develop as office. But I think, you know, we've, it's it's been approved four times for office and hasn't been developed as office, even in peak office market. Office market is, you know, very flat, um may be a a tough sell to get office on this site. So if it's not office, what would be the appropriate use? Institutional, we have institutional zoning to the to the south, very low density. It could be a residential use, could be an R-five or an R-six. R-six is a lot more dense, up to fifty feet in height, uh would allow a lot more units. Kind of development we see on the fringe of downtown, probably wouldn't recommend that in this corridor. But R-five um would probably be the next uh potential uh rezoning if it isn't zoned institutional. And also, for the property to the north, we have had a recent interest for some kind of townhouse development, which would be an R-five-type development. R-five would allow up to thirty-five feet in height. And at the bottom of this slide, you can see the subject property. This is just a mathematical calculation, how many units you could get on the site. Doesn't mean it could be site planned for that, once you get driveways and uh and things of that nature and stormwater detention. But that's the maximum that could be allowed. Uh same with the property to the north under the R-five, you could get fifty-three units. So even the R-five is a lot more dense than what we're talking about uh from density and traffic point of view. Um so we took their site plan, superimposed it on the aerial, and then just kind of illustrated to the north if it were R-five. Um studying up the site with some cross-access points. Uh we did ask the developer Full Circle to redo their site plan to align the driveway with Emerson. Uh early on, their plan was a lot closer to the east, and we had them shift the building further west to provide uh for a larger landscape uh buffer. So the South Arlington Heights Road Corridor Plan, as I mentioned, was approved in two thousand and eighteen. Uh talks about a two-story limit for Office Transitional. Obviously, this is three stories, so it exceeds that, doesn't comply with that. Um it uh calls for ex- ex- extensive landscape buffer along the east, uh and I'll talk about that. They are providing that. Talks for about cross-access easements to the north and the south, those are being provided for. And then the types of uses that were talked about were medical, professional offices, and institutional uses such as care facilities. So it is consistent with that from a use point of view. Uh there's been a little bit of discussion on the process. There's a long, lengthy process. This is an exhibit that's been on our website. And we updated every every step of the way so that the public can follow along. Um have been public notice requirements, the three signs uh put on the property. The legal uh letter that has been sent out by the developer to the surrounding property owners. And then in addition, the village is required legally to uh post notice in the local uh media with a legal notice. And then also, we've uh had a page on our website, a project page, where residents can sign up. Every time there's a new meeting, uh they can uh they would get a notice through an e-blast. And this is on the right-hand side, an example of that project page. On the left, I think the petitioner talked through, you know, many of the hearings, and these are the hearing dates and meeting dates of the different commissions and committees that met on this. I'm not going to go through all of the project characteristics, but I do want to touch on the landscaping and tree preservation. There are a lot of trees on the site. Not all of them are good quality trees. There's a lot of buckthorn. Uh but there will be a hundred and sixteen trees that are removed uh from the property for grading and other purposes. And there'll be approximately two hundred and fifty-five new trees planted on the site and twenty-two. Uh reasonable or good quality trees would be preserved on the east property line. In addition, there are seven, sixty-seven evergreens that will be planted along the east property line. And we've requested that they be eight-foot at the time of planting, instead of the minimum uh six-foot uh required at the time of planting. There would also be a fence along the east and uh kind of north, southeast property lines. Um it is compatible with the village's inclusory uh housing regulations. Uh for the most part, with the South Arlington Heights Road, with the exception of the two stories, they're proposing three stories. The OT OT District calls for a maximum height of thirty feet. The proposal is thirty-five point nine feet, so it's five point nine feet taller. And then the board's strategic priorities that were referenced earlier. With respect to other affordable housing developments uh that are in the community, uh this map illustrates where those are. Um so starting at the top, uh we have Hart's Place and Timber Court. Uh those are uh Hart's Place is a um a similar development to this. Timber Court are affordable uh rental units in a market-rate rental development now. Crescent Place on Round Road, that's the purple dot, that's a forty-unit affordable development that recently opened. Um then uh uh west of the racetrack is a private development that includes nine affordable units. Um that is now built and constructed. Downtown, there are three buildings, Park View, uh Cedar Village, and uh Getkey House. Those are all in, concentrated in the downtown area. And then towards the south, you can see uh the gray dock for Grace Terrace, and then east on Golf Road is Linden Place. We did not include the proposed or pending projects, um because they haven't been built yet. But the one tonight would add another seven units downtown. Arlington Four Twenty-Five would add sixteen units downtown. The five uh South Douglas by Mariano's would add five or six units. Uh the Gateway Project, if that's approved down by the tollway, would add thirty units. And then the Urban Street Development, just south of this site, uh their proposal is a thirty-seven unit senior, age-restricted. Um affordable uh building just south of the property. Uh the Police Department did reach out to a number of other um police departments in the area. Uh that are comparable buildings, some uh built by Full Circle, some not. And they requested three years of data on calls for service. They do caution and want to stress that, you know, every town calculates and collects data differently. So a call for service in one town may not be a call for service in another town. Um but, you know, in the um, you know, mer- merit of full disclosure, we're going to provide all the information that was provided. So on the top here is Pearl Street and McHenry. Uh they have uh the past three years, on average, two-point-one-three, two-point-one-eight rather, calls per unit per year. Um Hart's Place in Arlington Heights, one-point-eight-one calls per unit per year. Um then uh they received data from facilities in Dubuque, and then Myers Place in Mount Prospect. Myers Place is a another uh permanent supportive housing uh development, a few more units uh than what's proposed here. And uh again, you can see the calls uh per unit per year are in the one-point-four-six to one-point-six-nine range. Um then the last two that were received was uh one in Elgin, uh comparable calls per unit, one-point-five. And then Phil Haven in Wheeling, this one's uh quite a bit higher. They have some uh supportive housing, and then they have, it's it's not quite the same development, so it's not comparing apples and apples. Uh because they have different uh types of units there. But did want to share that with you, and uh we'll happen to answer any questions. Um this shows the plat of subdivision. Uh the hatched area is the um potential uh cul-de-sac. And dedication, there's a a dead-end uh street right now, and it doesn't meet our requirements for emergency services. It would be kind of an offset cul-de-sac. Um the uh variation for lot width is uh eighty feet at this point. Although the depth of the lot at this point is a hundred and one feet. So uh the petitioner could re-subdivide or shift that line south, have the driveway sha- uh straddle that um subdivision line. And then they wouldn't need that variation. Um just wanting to talk about, you know, positioning of buildings on the property and and why it makes sense to have the building in in position the way it is. So uh with the memory care facility, their building's setback, you know, hun- little over a hundred feet. They do have parking in the front. It's underutilized. Anyone who's gone by there only sees, you know, just a a couple of cars that are parked in there. Um and then the proposed building has a ninety-foot setback. Uh to put parking in the front and a drive-al, you'd actually have to shift the building a little further east. So uh we were trying not to have that building shifted further east than it was. Um and then uh the setbacks that the petitioner described. Uh this is the area just highlighted where the loading area would typically be. Uh that driveway could be widened to provide a loading area, but again, there's uh just a few units. Uh they do have an internal, internal uh, you know, refuse area inside the building. And um other access from from that driveway just to the north. Uh this is the two thousand and sixteen office plan. I just wanted to show this to show, you know, what was approved in two thousand and sixteen. Um the one that I described, so it's a, this one was a single-story building, much bigger footprint, taking a much more of the property. Um closer to the properties to the east, you know, forty-two, thirty-five, fifty-two feet at their uh corner points. And then eighty, setback eighty s- eighty-six feet on the Arlington Heights Road frontage. But again, you can see, you know, so much more parking and much more intense uh site plan than what's proposed. Uh this is their um landscape plan that I'd mentioned. Uh there'll be sixty-seven evergreens along the eastern property line. At its closest point, and the south is setback twenty feet, and uh on the north as much as forty feet. I'll skip over some of the utility plans. This is their full landscape plan. There will be a six-foot fence uh along the east, uh along this section of the um, around the detention area and down along in this section as well. Uh we looked at uh parking and uh believe that, you know, the parking variation makes sense. There's not a lot of parking in these kind of, you know, developments, and the Hart's Place example that's in Arlington Heights were not aware of any parking issues with their parking lot. So having said that, uh there was a recommendation that the staff development committee made uh to the plan commission in support of the requested variations with a number of conditions. Uh I'll just talk through a few of them, and the highlighted ones are uh changes from the staff uh report that initially went to plan commission, and these were changes that we discussed at the request of Full Circle. So in item three, talking about uh the deed restricted, uh you, that it's deed restricted. Um they indicated that was a problem for them for their lender and their financing. In reality, if the board were to approve this, the ordinance gets recorded in uh Cook County. Uh and that is going to show up on on the title, so the perpetuity requirement of that provision still remains as proposed. Uh the affordable housing uh requirements from the village are actually three units, although they're providing all twenty-five as affordable. Uh the second change deals with uh on um some of the uh onsite staffing requirements. Um these were similar to what was required of Hart's Place. Uh the Full Circle uh folks requested item C be changed. Um to be not so specific in hours, so that, you know, if they needed to be working an evening a week or on a Saturday morning. Then they had that flexibility, uh but the caseworkers would be provided and that they would provide those hours of operation. Uh that they would be on-site for our review. Um there is a requirement for some upsizing of some additional landscaping. Um that we felt didn't meet our requirements. There's a requirement for the Lot Two to enter into an estoppel agreement that they would not not object to a special assessment if the cul-de-sac were to be installed at a future date. Um the uh, there are, uh there's also a condition that, you know, if parking does become a problem, that they would provide additional parking up to uh the requirements needed for uh the minimum requirements of F I code. And then there are some conditions relative to cross-access uh for access to the property to the north. Um and I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Perkins. Mr. Reckless, did you have some comments?
I I think uh Mr. Passman had one more comment.
Okay.
Uh thank, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager Reckless. Uh just in terms of the vote that's required for this, and I'll make the board aware. Um under state law, when a variation does not receive a positive vote of the hearing body. In our case, the Plan Commission, that triggers a two-thirds vote requirement of the trustees. Uh so that that then I want to emphasize, it only applies to the variations that are uh that are being presented to you for consideration. Normally, as the board knows, for any zoning relief, uh a vote of of a majority of the board, five of all nine of you, would be sufficient to to pass it. Uh for this item, a- and not so much for tonight, but but if and when there's a final ordinance that's directed and then placed before you at a future meeting. The variations require six out of the eight trustees, and the mayor would not be allowed to cast a vote under Illinois law. So I wanted to make you aware of that, that special voting requirement that's been triggered for this application.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Passman. And just to clarify, uh although I might not be allowed to vote, I can still participate in the discussion.
A- absolutely, and again, that tonight, we're not considering the final ordinance. If if we ever consider it, that will be at a subsequent meeting. This vote applies to the actual. This vote applies to the actual and final approval of variations. Uh but you can absolutely participate as you normally would, Mayor, you remain the presiding officer. And you do still get to vote with the normal majority rule for all the other relief that's being requested before you tonight.
Right, but okay, if the uh final recommendation tonight, if there is one, includes variations, I would not be allowed to vote on that.
On the variations, that's correct.
Right, okay. All right, well, uh coming back to the board then for questions and comments before we go to the audience. We've received a a large number of emails on this a- as you might expect, and so. I very much appreciate everybody's input, we do factor it in very much to our decision-making process. Uh I did respond to some, I admittedly, I did not respond to all. But just rest assured that I did read all of the emails that I received on this and I know the the board, I'm sure, has done the same. I know uh all my colleagues are very diligent in their duties and uh I trust them that they've. They've prepared very uh strenuously to uh consider this proposal here this evening. And so uh I just wanted to make sure that all of the audience members are aware that we did receive your emails. We s- we received your input and we do consider that and factor that in to our decision-making process. Just to address one thing that I did receive in at least one email was a question as to our motive. As to why we would even consider a proposal like this, and it's really clear. In terms of my mind, why we would consider something like this, and that's because of the dire need for uh housing. Supportive housing for individuals with disabilities and especially for veterans. And so uh yeah, this is a dire need, it's consistent with our strategic priorities, which we just set last year. And so uh we're we're uh, we take this very seriously in a number of different respects and. Especially because it it uh would help solve, wouldn't uh go all the way, but it would at least put another dent. In that dire need, that critical need for housing for individuals such as these. And so that's really our motive, there's no monetary motive involved, it's great to fill a vacant space. But that's really not our primary objective in e- in even considering this proposal here this evening, so I ma- wanted to make that very clear as well. You know, we do have a history, as Mister Perkins pointed out, of. Providing affordable housing developments within our community. Other communities don't do that, and so we're very proud of our reputation for doing that. I approved, I was on the board that approved the Hart's Place development, it's about a half a mile from my house. Uh up on the north side of town and that's that's um been a very good development. And it's a high-quality development, and then we just went to the grand opening, number of the board members and I went to the grand opening for Crescent Place. Which is really very similar in terms of its its geographic location, on a major thoroughfare, but adjacent to residential. And that's a very, very high-quality development and I don't anticipate any problems with the neighborhood in that area, so. This is consistent with what we've done in the past, uh it's consistent with it, our strategic priorities. But that doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna approve it, that the question then is, is it, is this an appropriate location? For this development, and so that's really what I think uh the board is considering here this evening. I the the need is, I think, without question. And so really, the the only question in my mind is, is this an appropriate location for an uh development such as this? So I just wanted to uh make those initial comments, I did have one question for the developer before I turn it over to the board. Uh and as a veteran myself, it was uh concerning to me when I heard. Uh a response to a question by one of the Plan Commissioners. And so is Mister Wilmouth uh with us tonight, Mister Wilmouth? One question that I had, uh which concerned me, and you said in response to uh a question about veteran status. That you do not verify discharge status. And so that concerns me greatly because uh people can receive dishonorable discharges. And under both federal and state law, that would no longer qualify them as a veteran. And so I'm hoping that you're gonna follow federal and state law and ensure that any veteran who would be. Uh vetted and perhaps uh become a resident of this development. Uh has received something other than a dishonorable discharge, so can you verify that?
Yes, uh to clarify, we would follow the law and ensure that when we are doing third-party verifications. That that veteran status is verified, I was simply trying to clarify that we do not exclusively limit to honorable discharge. That there are multiple discharge statuses and that we follow the law.
Yeah, there there are, and people may not, may or may not know this, but uh there are a certain categories of discharges. But someone who receives a dishonorable discharge is not considered a veteran under. Federal or state law and would not be qualified to live in this development, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, and the concern that that you would have for that is that they might, because they received a dishonorable discharge. They may have committed a crime under uh the Uniform Code of Military Justice. And which might not be picked up in a criminal record check for a civilian. So we wouldn't want somebody living in this development who's received a dishonorable discharge or may have committed a crime in the military.
I do not disagree.
Okay, thank you, just wanna clarify that. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the board for questions or comments, Trustee Shringback.
Good, Mayor. Charles, nice presentation, I don't think I have any questions for you, did a good job. Um I guess all my questions go to the petitioner. Um and I and I'll bounce around a little bit. The property management, you know, you you mentioned Monday to Friday, you talked a little bit about flexibility. But before I ask the one question, what what what's really the, do you see the purpose? Of having that property management onsite during those hours?
Um so the role of property management at all Full Circle properties is to uh collect rents and enforce the lease. So the role of property management in our blended management model is really to act as sort of the. Oversight and the stick, if you will, to the rest of the property's carrot. So for our uh for our properties, property management's primary goal is of course to build relationships with and to understand. Uh what is going on with the residents, but it's to ensure that the lease is being obliged and honored, that is quite enjoyment for all the residents. Um that rent is being paid on time. Uh and then to make sure that the building is kept in a decent, safe, sanitary, uh up to our standards way. And that is generally a nine-to-five position, again, we have after-hours service calls for maintenance or things of that nature. And we do have twenty-four-hour uh building camera security.
So on the uh on the lease agreements, uh maybe on a capacity question that I have before I go back to property management. On the one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, what what is the capacity that you're gonna allow in each one of those situations?
Uh we follow a a slightly modified version of a HUD recommendation, HUD's recommendation is two per bedroom plus one. We actually generally draw the line at two people per bedroom. So in theory, there could be two people per one-bedroom and four people per two-bedroom. As I explained at the Plan Commission, uh the similar building to this Pearl Street Commons actually has twenty-eight residents in twenty-five units. Uh and I think one of those is a child, so.
So are you in a two-bedroom unit, uh uh could you have, or uh would you allow three people?
Yes, we would allow up to four people in a two-bedroom.
In the, in the one-bedroom?
No, no, we would not.
Okay, so and then the two-bedroom, you'd allow four?
We would allow up to four, and generally, our two-bedrooms are being occupied either by a person with a disability who has need for extra space. And has requested a reasonable accommodation, or has a live-in care attendant or something of that nature. Or again, is a family member who is disabled in a a family that does not all have a disability.
Okay, and then you 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 mentioned the key fob getting in and out of the building. So during off-hours, I know you said you had cameras set up. During those off-hour hours, Saturdays and Sundays, what really stops people from. Coming in and out of that building where the residents allow them to come in?
Again, residents are allowed to have guests, this is independent living, so residents would be allowed to have guests. The guests are held to the same uh quiet enjoyment standards as the residents. If there's any disruption in that, then it is the residence lease that is jeopardized. Uh and so to a certain extent, it is the residents helping to police themselves and ensure that they get to maintain their quality of life and this benefit. It is also true that because we have multiple service providers, both under contract with us and who might be working directly with the residents. That there is additional service coverage and service provider oversight at hours outside of regular business hours.
So theoretically, somebody could come in on a Friday evening after you guys leave. And stay the weekend.
Yeah, if they were invited uh as a guest of a resident and the resident wanted to have them stay over, that would not violate our house rules as far as I'm aware.
Okay. You you had a a comment in in your presentation that talked about uh no consumption of alcohol. Was the intention that the residents were also, that that they can't consume alcohol?
That's in public spaces.
Okay, okay.
This is.
In their rooms, they.
Correct.
Certainly do that, okay. The. I I'm very familiar, just so the residents know this, I I'm extremely familiar with this neighborhood. Um I I often use Belmont Avenue, I I live very close to Belmont Avenue. Just a little north of this area and very often go down Council Trail Road. Um I, the only thing I've never done is gone down those dead-end streets. Um but I've certainly gone down South Belmont. So when I, I've gone over there a couple of times and spent about a half hour one time and an hour another time. Just walking that neighborhood and in regards to the landscaping you're putting in, I mean, a a lot of. The neighbors' concerns were, you know, an attractive area. Certainly, the landscaping that you guys are doing is phenomenal compared to what's there now. You you walk into those areas now and it's, you know. Bushes and ratty trees and the property is is just chock-full of that, so. I I really like the landscaping that you're gonna do and that fencing material that you're gonna have. On the back of that property facing the residents, I I tried looking in all the literature, but what is that fencing material going to be made out of?
Um I'll, if my architect corrects me if I'm mistaken, but I believe it's a PVC wood appearance material.
Yeah, and and it looked like the landscaping that you were gonna be putting in back there was gonna eventually, if not at the start. But eventually grow much higher than that fence.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's already, it's at planting, it will be higher than the fence, as Daph mentioned. They're requiring we go above code and plant eight-foot trees, so it'll be above the fence to begin with, but it will mature to be a much higher height.
Yeah, and it it, you know, I think the landscaping's wonderful, it not not that it's a concern of yours, but even when you go a little bit further. South and you look at what's been done over by the memory care facility. That landscaping that is really on the backside where those neighbors are seen. It is a lot better than what's currently on your property, so I I'm, you know, I'm hoping people look at that landscaping and say. Wow, this is really gonna improve what I have to look at every single day. One of my my other, I I guess, a a disappointment. And I certainly understand the legalities of all this with with the funding that you're going after. But we sit here as a board, and I've sat here for the last five years, and listen to our residents talk about. Housing like this, affordable housing, housing for our veterans. It it's, I guess for me, it's disappointing that we can't earmark this for Arlington Heights residents. And I understand why you can't, but that that that's a little disappointing for me to hear that. Because we've got so many of our own residents that get to a point where they have to move out of their house. And they can't afford to pay their taxes and they can't afford the upkeep and they're they're hoping that we have more of this. And and yet, there's no priority for them, so I I understand the law. But it's just disappointing that we can't earmark it for for folks that that currently live here. Those are all my questions, I I, like I said, I walked that neighborhood a couple of times and. And even when you go back into the cul-de-sacs, I I read through all the emails from from all the residents. And I I I tried to put myself in in the residents' shoes. Um I know one of the comments that I heard over and over again um by the residents that lived in that neighborhood. Was the close proximity that you guys are gonna be to their homes. And a lot of the comments was, you know, people from your facility are gonna be able to look out those windows. Into their houses. And I can honestly say, from my o- my own perspective, my neighbors living next door to me. Have a better chance of looking into my home than this particular property, which is a hundred feet away. So I uh that that was nice to see that a- in a couple of those homes. It was the sides of their house, not the front of their homes, so. Uh but I but I did take that very seriously and just so the neighbors know, I. I spent a lot of time walking over there today uh in last week, looking at this project and. And going into the back of of your area just to see what that was gonna look like, so.
And if I can just respond to the local preference, I completely understand the disappointment and we are bound by law. But as we've stated through focus groups and working with the task force, we've found that by local, marketing locally. We really do find a lot of members of the community that wanna live in the community and wanna be connected to their family. Or friends or businesses or churches in the area, so we find that almost all our properties, that majority of the residents are from the community.
Okay. And probably my last question, just so I understand this, and I wanna pull up that that map, Charles, but um. This area here, you had talked about that cul-de-sac in the back of the property. That that's gonna be, is that over by um, I guess, the end of Haven Street?
Uh it's the end of Emerson Street.
Okay. It it is 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 Emerson Street in itself, is that gonna be widened at all? Going from Emerson to Belmont?
Uh not at this point, uh right now, we're just getting the uh right-of-way dedicated. Uh and it, you know, wouldn't be a a full standard cul-de-sac, as you can see here. On this area, there's a little section of Emerson, um that's, you know, kind of unimproved or it doesn't meet our current requirements. So that'd be um kind of an offset cul-de-sac, it wouldn't be a normal cul-de-sac, it would be offset to the north. And that would only be done at some future date, uh we don't have any timeframe for that. We're just getting the dedication and then the estoppel agreement on that lot, so they would not object to paying their fair share at some point in the future.
Okay, okay, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Trustee Downington?
Thank you. Um first, I wanna thank the Housing Task Force for bringing Full Circle to Arlington Heights. And then Full Circle for this project. Um I um I'm, I was really glad that you shared the summary of rules for tenants. Um because I think that based on some of the emails that we received, there was a lot of misinformation about who would be living. Um at the property and I've I've found that the rules for people to live there are much stricter than. Living in any apartment complex, um for example, like if you use drugs, you cannot. You would be evicted, um and that would include marijuana, which is legal, but in this case, it's not allowed at your property. Um so thanks for going over that. Um I really like the location because I think that it gives really good access to public transportation. The grocery stores, parks, the pharmacy, shopping. Um I think it makes sense to be changed to the um I zoning, um because it is a lot dense than if it was office. Um so I think this seems like a safe, effectively-staffed, low-population facility that's really desperately needed. Um so, thank you.
Trustee Bali?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the very detailed presentation, it was very informative.
As Mayor said, I think that the need for this facility is very well demonstrated. And I wanted to focus on, because again, we read a lot of emails, read a lot of materials, and there were a lot of concerns that were raised. And you touched on it already, which was great, but I wanted to talk about the parking lot because there was some concern about where the parking lot was located. And I just wanted to reaffirm for the record that you moved the parking lot to the back based on staff recommendations and based on requirements from the fire department. Okay, so the parking lot is where it is because of the village side of things, not necessarily where you wanted to put it. Okay, thank you. Randy, I very much appreciate the effort that was put into the calls for service. But for me, I think it missed what I was trying to get at a little bit. I know others asked for that information, and we got a lot of emails concerned about potential crime in the area. My question was, how do these facilities, like Hertz Place or some of these other facilities, compare to other regular apartment complexes? Okay, so, you know, I know that we just pulled these out because they're similar, but we wanna look at, I wanted to look at, what does this compare to other properties that are high-density multifamily? Do we have any idea what that looks like?
We don't have good comprehensive data on that, unfortunately. What, you know, what we can say is that this type of use generates more calls for service than an office transitional use would.
Correct.
Or certainly more than a vacant piece of property does. But in terms of comparing it to other multifamily, I think it would probably, the closest we can tell you is it depends. There are probably multifamily in town that generate less calls for service per unit, and there are probably ones that generate more. But without having that data, I can't say for certain.
Right, okay. Another one of the concerns that came out in the materials that we were given was a concern that the village is giving up control of the property because of where the funding is coming from. I don't, I don't understand where that concern comes from because of where your funding is coming from, you're under requirements for selection of tenants. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. We are under a 30-year obligation from our financing to ensure that we operate this as affordable housing to people with incomes at or below 50%.
Right, okay. Does the village normally have any input into the management of tenants like that?
No.
Okay. So the village is still going to have control for building life safety, for the health department, police, all that stuff? The village still has control of this property as much as we have any other property in the village?
Absolutely. And again, as Charles mentioned, there's a, because of the zoning requirement, there is a zoning requirement that they serve this population that runs with the title.
Right.
So that's something that regardless of who owns it, if Full Circle were to, you know, be sold or sell the property, they still would have to adhere that unless someone came back for relief for the, you know, with the village board in a future day.
Right, okay. And then one of the other concerns that I noticed that stuck out in my mind, and you touched on it a little bit in your presentation, was the ratings that you had had online. And there seemed to be a bit of a disconnect with what we were being told via email and what you showed in the presentation. So very quickly, can you just elaborate on your ratings? Just to clarify that point for me.
Yes, we are a gold-rated participant in GuideStar, and we have four out of four ratings on Charity Navigator. I don't know where any other information has come from to that contrary.
Okay, that seems clear enough to me. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Trustee Bertruchet?
Thank you, Mayor. We could use this site plan, because my question is going, I'm gonna go back to that building being what I would somewhat concerned about turned around. I know I looked at the plan commission minutes and Commissioner Ennis was also asking a lot of questions on that. So help me understa-, I mean, I get that you wanted some of the parking moved for, but why can we not have parking in the front? What's the issue with not having parking in the front and why can't that entrance be in the front?
I mean, it could. You could have parking in the front. You'd probably need a drive aisle in the rear as well for fire circulation. So you'd have more impervious surface. You'd have less green space. And the building would shift a little bit further east because of the module of the drive aisle and parking. If you move that to the front, then the building would have to, you know, shift to the east.
Sure. But do you have a sense of by how much?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. So in some respects, if, you know, if the, if it looks like the will of the board, so to speak, is going in the direction of in favor, say, or whatever, I'd almost be interested in hearing what would be the lesser of two evils, so to speak, for some of those residents in the back? Would they rather see the entrance and the parking in the back? Or would they rather have not as much of that entrance lighting, parking in the back, reverse the building, but just have the building have to shift a little bit further east to accommodate the parking in the front and the more of the lighting in the front? So that is feasible, right? And maybe that's something that some of the residents could address if, you know, if they would, you know, have a preference towards parking in the front versus parking in the back. And I'm sure you have a comment, but it just, the only reason why I addressed the staff was because somebody pointed the fact that it's, they're the ones that wanted the building reversed.
And you know, what I was gonna say, Trustee Bertucci, is again, you could work this a lot of different ways and we felt that if you move the property to the east, it will infringe on that landscape buffer. So it's kind of a balancing act between how much landscaping you have to buffer the property versus the proximity, the lighting and the orientation. And so there's no right or wrong answer. These are all trade-offs and, you know, I'll be quiet and let other people talk.
Okay, so, but we don't, we don't know for sure by how much?
Correct.
No, the other challenge would be the entrance, so that southern entrance, there's a left turn lane and a right turn out of the site. And, you know, you have to have enough depth for stacking of that before somebody could, you know, come into the site and turn left to get into a driveway on, you know, the front side of the building. So it's not, you know, not quite as easy that, you know, the site to the south has more of a throat. So you come in, you turn right immediately and you're not impeding any vehicles coming into the site. So that's the challenge with getting a driveway right in the front there.
Okay, so if, if for some reason a lot of the other concerns, you know, were some, you know, were explained here and, you know, the residents were still hanging their hat on the orientation of the building and the parking and everything being back there, although I do see that extensive landscaping and the little bit of a drop-off, which also gets kind of a barrier from anybody kinda. But I, I just wanna be sure that it is possible that that could be an option to reverse the orientation.
Sure, yeah, yeah, that would be possible. You'd have to, they'd have to redesign the building if you had entrance on the front because they'd probably still want, you know, any assembly component in the back of the building. So they'd have to, you know, redesign the first floor of the building. You know, I think what they've tried to do here is have their main entrance with their main office from a security point of view. And then you've got the community room, and then you've got the outdoor area that's walk-off from that community room or on that northeast corner of the building. Probably wouldn't make sense to have those spaces on the Arlington Heights roadside. So it would entail some redesign. You know, how that would lay out on the site, it's hard to say. You know, their first concept, you know, showed actually the building a little bit further back and less landscaping. We had them shift it further west. So, you know, we haven't seen a concept like that at this point. But there are some other examples where a building that does, you know, have its back to the street. And one that comes to mind is a three-story building, the new building that was built at the Lutheran Home on Kennicott. So the back of the home face, back of that building, that three-story building faces Kennicott. And on the inside, you know, with the court for the rest of the development is where their entrance is. But the back is on, you know, facing the street. So it's not completely out of the norm. You know, so there are examples like that.
Well, and I understand what you're saying. I understand where Luther Village, the reason why that is because that is incorporated into a much bigger project. So dare I say that I'm not convinced that that's a good comparison, but... So, okay, so I would just be, go ahead. I'm gonna give, you guys go ahead now.
I just wanted to clarify, it would be approximately 40 feet that we would need to shift the building closer to the neighbors to the east in order to reconfigure the parking and the drive aisles the way that you're describing.
Okay, so then instead of-
Instead of 90 feet set back at the closest, we'd be at 50 feet set back at the closest.
But then you'd have the lighting and the parking, I mean, you still have lighting.
You'd still have lighting on the back of the building and a drive aisle on the back of the building.
Sure, sure.
Which might still conflict with the landscaping.
But you'd have the entrance and the parking in the front on the Arlington Heights side, so to speak.
Correct.
And I know we're not necessarily voting today on that orientation, so to speak, as much as we're voting on other aspects of the project. But that's a fair statement. So we could approve this, but we could put a condition where that needs to be, if that became a will of the board. I'm not saying that everybody else would agree with what I'm suggesting.
I was gonna say, if that's something that the board wanted to pursue, they would have to update their design. And I think we probably would wanna withhold approval on that component because that would be a significant change if that's something the board wanted to do.
And just one other note, just to really underscore how similar this is to our Pearl Street Commons project. That only has nine cars. So I know we've heard ourselves a lot of concern about this from the community of like car doors slamming and people coming in and out. It's really a limited use of cars. So I just wanted to underscore that, to just point out that with the landscaping buffer and the very low utilization, I highly doubt that it will be a disturbance to the neighbors to the east.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I have, Mayor.
Trustee Shirley?
So I just wanna reiterate what Trustee Bertucci just said. I think it's backwards. I think you want your parking lot and your entrance on the front of the building, not the back of the building. And, you know, I don't know how much the shift is. I think people are guessing tonight how much the shift of the building is gonna be, but-
Our architect actually came up and did a study. So that's where that is.
Okay, fine. But I'm just saying that I don't know why you would put your activity at the back of the building when the most sensitive neighbors are back there. It doesn't really ring true to me. And I've had occasion to go to Hertz Place and pick people up there and, you know, there's people that congregate out in front of that entrance. That's where the smokers go. And so I just think that those are preferred, and you can't stop them from doing that. Those are preferred on the front of the building facing Arlington Heights Road, which is a much less sensitive neighbor, the traffic on Arlington Heights Road. So I also, I'm not saying that Trustee Bertucci said that, but I just think it's backwards. And I really wouldn't support it if it's not turned around because I just, I don't understand how we end up with the back of a building facing the street. It's odd to me. But then another thing, Charles, if you can go back, there was something on zoning of the property. I think it was in the zoning options that you went through that talked about the maximum heights. And there was one where it was like two stories maximum. I can't remember exactly what that was. Do you remember, Charles?
The comparison of the districts or?
I don't know if it was this one. I don't think it was this table, but there was one.
Talking about the south corridor plan had a-
Yeah, I think that was it.
I think it was one of the proposals that showed 30 feet for a two-story home versus our 35-foot-nine. Not two-story home, two-story office transitional.
Was this the exhibit that you were referring to? This talks about two-story?
Where does it say that? Oh, yeah, go back, Charles.
Go back to that.
So up to two floors, what was that referring to? Key development standards, vacant office land? And so I'm just curious, is it, so is there restriction under this vacant office land zoning for up to two floors maximum height?
Yes, the south Arlington Heights Road corridor, you know, plan, it's just a guide, but talks about two stories in height, the office transitional zoning allows-
So it's different than a zoning requirement, right?
Correct.
Because what I'm getting at is, is it possible that somebody who owns a single-family home to the east thought that the max that could be developed there was two floors?
Well, the OT zoning, the maximum is two floors.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, we spent a lot of time tonight talking about what people thought when they bought a property, what they were allowed to do or what their neighbors were allowed to do. And I'm just saying that, you know, it's possible that people didn't think that what would be developed there would be any taller than two floors and we're at three floors now, which could be objectionable.
That is one of the issues that's been raised.
Just pointing that out. And then I also just wanted to reiterate, kind of on the calls for service, that's just police and/or fire, correct, Randy?
Those are, those are fire, police calls, but a lot of police calls, they're going in support of the fire department.
Okay, okay. Just because it seems high, 1.8 per unit.
We did some analysis later in the afternoon. I can break down that a little bit better. So of the ones at Hertz Place, because those are the only ones we have our own ratio for, 16% of those were non-criminal complaints, so things like a well-being check. So I haven't heard from Grandma in a couple of days. Can you go check on her? Possum in the window, lost wallet, lost car keys, front gate leftover, 16%. 49% of those were helping out the fire department or some other medical-related call. 19% were responding to the report of criminal activity. And 16% were vehicular issues, like there's a truck parked here that doesn't belong or a car that isn't one of ours parked there.
Okay, so that kinda puts it in perspective because these folks at Hertz Place potentially would have more issues, medical issues than other folks if they have challenges, right?
You could, you could say that.
Okay.
One could assume.
Okay.
I just wanna note that Hertz Place is, we did not develop or property manage that project. So just wanna note that Pearl Street Commons is more-
You know what? Hertz Place is beautiful. And it's well-managed. I'm not finding fault. I'm just telling you kind of my observations about what the reality is of kind of what I observed when I was there. The folks are awesome and I don't have a problem with that. And I would expect the same thing here, but I just think that functionally, it's getting to that issue of the front of the building being turned around in my head. So that's all it is. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Labads?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and thank you, Charles. Also, I also wanna thank all the residents who wrote both sides of the story or the proposal. I tried to respond at least a thank you. They were between this project and the Eastman project. And especially over a two-day period, including a workday, it was, I tried to keep up. But just know that, as Mayor Hayes said earlier, that we, I know I for one read every single email that was sent for and against the proposal. I just have a few questions. Are this furnished apartments or do they, no, I see his head shake.
No, correct. This is independent living. Residents will sign a lease, but they are not furnished units.
Okay. Are they ever, is this type of housing ever furnished?
That would be more akin to assisted living. Again, this is independent living, similar to multifamily. The difference being that we are providing additional services and we are targeting and restricting units specifically for persons with disabilities and veterans. But these are persons with disabilities and veterans who have the ability to live independently with care services as provided by their own care attendants or our onsite staff. Now, their care attendants or onsite staff might help people identify furniture to furnish a unit, but we are not providing furnished units.
Okay, because given that, you know, they're low income, I, you know, was concerned about their ability to afford to furnish their own apartments. So hopefully that maybe, maybe not necessarily assistance, but at least some references to ways to affordably furnish an apartment like that. I was very glad that you sent the terrorists or the- Um, I was very glad that you sent the terrace uh or the the um house rules document to us. Um, I read through that. It is very, very detailed, as trustee Dunnington pointed out. And um uh much more so than an apartment. And certainly, if you lived in a single-family home. You have no control over who might buy the house next door to you. So, but one of the concerns I had is you sit there and go through it. I mean, you you know how people are with the the, you know, the rules that you get when you you go online and. And you're supposed to agree to giving your firstborn child away and all this other stuff. Um, before you get to, before you can even go forward in on a website. So do you sit there and go through it with them? Because I would think that to be given this many-page document of a lot of, you know, close print. Could be somewhat overwhelming.
Yes, we do. We have uh pre, we have pre-application and uh post-application processing. Interviews and meetings with residents where we walk them through all of the paperwork that they're gonna be signing. We show them the house rules. The lease requirements, all of that. Their case manager is invited to participate if they don't have a case manager. And if they want to partner with the group that we are bringing on site, that case manager can also be available. And then we have periodic check-ins with the residents, primarily on the services side, but also the property manager, again, reinforcing sort of what the. Obligations are under the lease and the house rules. Just a reminder, you know, this is, hey, we we heard that uh you were having a party. That's great. But let's remember, we need to keep the, at about ten o'clock, you're gonna need to start letting people out or have the, you know, noise turned down or what have you. So.
Okay, do they re-sign uh when they uh up their lease?
Yes, all leases have to be for a minimum of six months. We do one-year leases. And then uh at leading into about month nine of that lease renewal or of that lease, we will start on the renewal process, both with us. And with Cook County Housing Authority to make sure that they are continually qualified for the vouchers.
I think I didn't ask my question exactly right. I noticed that they have to sign off on the house rules. So when they renew their lease, do they again sign off on the house rules?
No, they renew the lease and the only time they have to re-sign for the house rules is if the house rules change. And we have to provide residents a thirty-day notice of any changes to the house rules.
Okay, okay, and you?
And yeah, sorry, I just wanna backtrack to the furniture question. I was just reminded by the task force that they do provide support in helping tenants get furniture. And I'm sure they can speak to that more during public comment section.
Okay, thanks. And I am aware that they do, and I know that they have care packages and things that they they graciously uh provide. For residents in support of housing. Um, I also thought it was kind of weird to have. The back of the building uh parallel Arlington Heights Road. Um, but actually, when I looked at it on a bigger screen than my iPad on the aerial view. It kind of clicked and I could see that by having the entrance and the parking lot on the east side. It actually provides a buffer, an additional buffer to the single-family homes to the to the east. So so I I am, I'm o- I'm okay with that. And I know you worked very hard with the design commission. To make it more um palatable, if you will, uh and more attractive. Given that there was not going to be a front door and an entranceway there. And I think I also saw note that. Um, although the the landscaping didn't really show, um, it was kinda like lightly shaded. On that side that there would still be considerable landscaping to soften the building.
Yeah, that's right. It's it's a rendering to really show the building. Um, so that's why the trees are really transparent. You can barely see their outlines. But they will be there.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And like I said, um, it kinda dawned on me, this this sort of makes sense. Um, I was supportive during early review of the change of zoning to um institutional, and I continue to be supportive. And and I think this um does seem like a good project, definitely a great need in the community and the whole area. Thank you.
Trustee Tanali.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Um, so I could echo virtually everything that has been said here tonight, so I'm only gonna cover a couple. Twenty-five units, pretty small project and fairly not super impactful. As compared to what might go there, right? We've seen drawings, there've been projects approved that are quite a bit more intense. The third third story is a little bit concerning uh over the second story, so that's a question mark for me. Um, but the use is so important. I mean, I want to help you get this approved, okay? I feel like we need to have a handful of more projects like this in our community, okay? But I'm gonna suggest that what a couple of trustees have said here tonight are weighing heavy on me. And that has to do with this parking lot. I don't know truly. I'm an architect, you probably know that, okay? I don't know which way I would go on this design-wise. Would the parking lot want to be on the rear or in the front? If it were a traditional building with traditional tendency, I definitely would want it in the front because I, it would be a lot more traffic. I concur with your report that it would be very minimal traffic back there. But it doesn't really change my thought that if I had no traffic, it would be better. Just a fire truck that would go through there in an emergency, and that's it. That to me sounds better. If I could keep the buffer of landscape, that wedge, that really, really dense wedge of landscaping that we're talking about. Intact and and have a slightly closer building and only a twenty-four-foot-wide. Fire truck aisle and and the and all of the parking and all the activity and the in and out and leaving the building to go to work every day and so on. All happens on the other side away from those handful of single-family homes back there. Something tells me that might be more attractive. Something tells me that might be more appealing for the project all the way around. And while I know our fire department needs that access for that twenty-four-foot-wide drive aisle around there. It doesn't need sixty feet of asphalt as your drawing shows here. When you have a twenty-four-foot drive aisle and parking on the side, parking that side, that's sixty feet of asphalt. So getting rid of eighteen and eighteen, thirty-six feet of asphalt and moving the building a little bit closer to the east. And putting all the rest of that out in the front, it to me would definitely be worth looking at. So my perspective is, when you ask for a zoning variation. And and Hart, you might wanna help me out with this. There are a few rules that you can't, you can't do. It can't be self-created hardship. It can't be financially motivated. And it can't have a negative impact on the neighborhood. I don't know if there's more, but I think those are the three main. Topics of what a zoning variation can't do. Am I correct?
Those are certainly core concepts of variations under Illinois law and our village code.
So when we look at projects, all projects, we have to look at those legal terms. Are we having a negative impact on these, this this neighborhood by virtue of these variations that we might offer? Are they self-created, self-imposed, and are they financially motivated? I suspect you're not financially motivated by any of these. But I would wanna make sure that the other, you know, perspectives on this are covered clearly. So we're all protected. And I would wanna look at it. Um, other than that. I think the only issue that I would suggest is a lot of folks here in this room are is is fear, fear of the unknown. It's fear of what if, you know? What what if it's really a scary place? It's not gonna be a scary place. But I think a lot of folks are afraid that it might be. There's a lot of folks here that are gonna say it's a wonderful place and we need places like this. And we do, we truly do. So how do we make this less scary, less impactful on the neighborhood? How do we make it more palatable? And maybe, maybe just a little bit of flipping and a little bit of adjusting. Could get us a little closer there. Not unlike what happened on the project earlier tonight. You folks weren't here for the other hearings, but things were done. And it actually became a little bit less invasive to the neighborhood. And those weren't for zoning variations. This is actually zoning variations. So I would suggest we think about that a little bit.
I appreciate that. And I just wanna clarify, my understanding is that the variations are not explicitly touching on where the parking lot is. In relation to the building. It's primarily around the number of units or the number of parking spaces. Um, the loading berth. And the width of the overall lot that we are subdividing out to uh convey. And and all of which is to say, I just wanted to clarify that my understanding is that while we are seeking variances.
You're seeking a PUD.
Correct.
Plan, unit development, that has an underlying zoning zoning on it, underlying zoning on it. And these variations are part of that zoning that is the underlying zoning. So it all works together. And when we look about at a project, it it, you know, we take all these things into consideration.
Correct, and I agree. And we'll be happy to, you know, i- if the decision is for us to go back and work with staff on on what this might look like in that. Uh, alternate way, we will. We've been uh thankful to work with staff on getting us to the point that we're at today.
I'm not demanding it. I'm not saying that my thought is the absolute right thought. I'm just saying in my head, if I was working on this project. I'd be struggling with this. And I'd wanna see what it looked like on paper.
Yeah.
To make sure that the decision that is here and and finally built is the right one.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful to have our architect come and talk to the history of the orientation. No, I agree. I just.
I just wanted to share my thoughts. There's a load of people here that came here tonight to get educated and wanna be heard. I've heard enough and that's fine. Thank you.
Trustee Grassi.
I have a few um comments and maybe a couple of questions, but um I I wanted to just um begin by. Thanking you for the presentations. I have received many emails. I've talked to people. I've visited with people. And many of the concerns that were addressed in the presentations were concerns I heard from residents. So I'm really looking forward to hearing the voices of the residents who initially had concerns and how they feel about some of the presentations. So I look forward to that. Um, uh, one of my questions was, one one of the concerns I heard often was about. The the privacy concerns, about being able to see into homes, about light. And I saw that there was the six-foot fence with the required eight-foot tree, and I had a couple of questions about that. Is there, is that pretty standard? Is there, are there ways to go higher? Will the trees grow higher than eight feet or are they the trees that are only eight feet?
Yeah, the trees will grow higher than eight feet. I would have to ask my architect their full maturity. Yeah, I think twenty-five feet, seventy-five. Oh, seventy, I'll let you say thirty. Um, it'll vary, the height of, um, the trees will mature at different heights depending on the variety. But for example, the American arbor vida can grow to sixty feet. We've got pine, balsam. Um, they're they're gonna get into the, you know, forty-five, fifty, sixty-foot range in general.
Ma'am, can you give us your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Therese Thompson. I'm with Corgan Clark, the architects.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So it sounds like there's quite a variety of different trees with, that will provide additional screening and privacy for people.
That's correct. They'll be eight feet minimum at the time they're planted.
Okay, um, the the third story I also heard was a concern about fitting into the area. And it was really interesting to me. I was actually up in our northern part of Arlington Heights for work today in a residential area. And I was amazed at how many homes I saw that appeared to be three stories or more in the middle of ranches. So, you know, I think that our our villages is definitely, um, we have a lot of interesting sort of of places where there could be varying heights. And and so based on on how this uh is set in here and how it seemed that the privacy was being addressed. That's not as much a concern for me. Um, I I must say, I I am very supportive and understand the deep need. For this kind of of housing in our communities, and I'm grateful that you are, you want Arlington Heights for this. Uh, the service calls, even though they might vary and might be in in facilities that aren't uh similar, don't concern me. Um, as a hospice chaplain, I meet many people and know many people who live in facilities similar to this in our areas. Um, so that doesn't concern me. Many times the nine-one-one calls can be for assist. It might, i- if you looked at my street. There might be a whole lot of nine-one-one calls for some of the animal issues we had with cats and rabbits and things. And that might add a number of of service calls just for for my home and others near me. So that doesn't concern me as much, especially because of of. Um, just some of the the needs with disabilities and and such too. Uh, that's not a concern for me. Um, and and I just wanted to comment on concerns. I I appreciate that no public alcohol is allowed outside or in the public places. And I know there was a comment just about concerns with smoking. And 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 when I run in the mornings in the community, I see people in their residential homes. Smoking on the driveway, smoking on their porch. So that's just part of, I think, how life is for people who smoke. They're just usually not allowed to smoke inside many places anymore. Um, I, couple other questions here. Um, I I'm not as concerned now with the parking in the back. After after this conversation. What concerns me more if we move the parking is that the building would be closer to the residents. And from the concerns I initially heard from those in the area, it sounded like that wouldn't be something they would want. The concern was more with ensuring that they had privacy. And not issues with the lights and safety. And so that brings my question. As if if this is approved and goes through, and if there are issues with lights, if there are issues with privacy, if there are issues from the residents. In how things are going, how can this be um dealt with in a way that benefits everybody?
Um, I think the best answer is uh sort of. Long-term owner-operator, we are here for a minimum of thirty years. Our goal is in perpetuity. And what all of that means is if there's a neighbor who is complaining about light, and even if we're meeting the requirements as spelled out under the code. We'll certainly work with that neighbor to see if there's additional screening that we can put up, if there's some way that we can uh find a way to lens. Or cover a portion of that light while still maintaining adequate lighting throughout the site as required by code. Um, we intend to be, we are long-term good neighbors. Uh, we will, of course, always comply with the code. But happy to, once built, see what else might be necessary.
Okay, thank you. And I think, you know, as I said, I'm looking forward to hearing from the residents if some of the presentations ease some of their concerns. Um, and and I I do agree with trustee Tanali. I I, you know, as I mentioned before earlier, and especially in in the work that I do and in my own life too. I know that change is is, can be scary and difficult. And and just trying to figure out what this looks like and how we can figure things out is is what we do, hopefully, that makes our community the great community it is. Uh, I I just wanna quickly mention, I I, one of my um favorite lines from a uh. A song is a Willie Nelson song. It's um, it's uh, the world is getting smaller and everyone in it belongs. And I think that speaks to our focus on on having more affordable housing for all of our people. And finding a way that we all belong together in this wonderful community of Arlington Heights. So I look forward to hearing from the residents too. Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we covered everybody on the board. Let me just add my two cents on the flip-flop of the parking lot. I I kinda like the design the way it is for the, all the reasons that have been stated. Uh, it's consistent with the memory care facility. There's very few cars that appear there. I drive by it often and rare, very rarely see cars out there. So um, I would not want to see the building move closer to the residents on the east side. And I think there's gonna be very few disruptions from lights and slamming doors and things like that. So I kinda like the design the way it is. So that's just my two cents. Now, we've got, I've got forty blue cards here. Uh, I'm not good at math. That's why I became a lawyer. And so, um, but that's two hours if everyone has three minutes. So I'm perfectly willing to stay till one, one-thirty to have a decision tonight. Uh, but, you know, we have options. Right, let me just talk to the village manager. We used to have, have to make a motion to go past eleven o'clock. We don't do that anymore.
Correct.
But um, I just wanted to, just to see what the will of the board is and the staff, uh, what are our options?
Well, you know, the 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 board can table the issue and continue it to a date certain. Um, you can uh direct, i- if if the will of the board is to look at a different design. You can direct staff to work with the petitioner to work on a different design and and move forward. There's a lot of different routes that we can go. You know, or obviously we can, we can continue to discuss the matter until the board decides that ti- time is up.
Okay, well, any thoughts? I'm perfectly willing to go forward. Trustee Tanali.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, mayor, but I am not. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, mayor, but I am not, I, I am not excited about the idea of staying here till one-thirty or two in the morning. I have a, a, I have a world to live by at home and at work, and I suggest most of us in this room do as well. What I would think might be better is a date certain to reconvene. And before any action is done, I would hate to put these folks through a lot of gymnastics without the advantage of hearing from everyone who wants to be heard. So I would not suggest spending any money on anything until we get that, to that point. But I, I, I would rather not do this over the next two hours at eleven o'clock. How are we all going to be thinking straight at one o'clock in the morning? That's my thought.
Well, that's why I asked the question. So I, any other thoughts? Trustee Labadz.
I guess my one concern is if we do adjourn to another date, that, you know, all these people have come out and they want to say their piece. So I realize it's very late and I'm not thrilled to stay until one in the morning. But probably even if I went home now, I wouldn't fall asleep till one in the morning. So, you know, I, I mean, I just would hate to have people feel like they aren't heard if they can't come back. And so, and it would just so happen, this happened to be on it and night that we had another very big project with a lot of, you know, people coming out for that too.
Now, what I would do if we move forward, I would encourage people not to take all of the three minutes. So we've got a lot of people on one side and the other. You can just say, I support the, the development or I oppose the development for the reasons that Mr. Smith just said or whatever. So we could certainly, you know, try to expedite it, you could try to expedite it and help us out in that regard so that we could hear from everybody this evening. So, any other, trustee Grassi?
I actually have been awake since two-thirty yesterday morning because of work. But I am willing to stay out of just being able to hear voices and to go forward with what we're able to tonight.
Okay, anybody else trusty swing back?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. And, and, and I, I know I love hearing from residents, but when, when, in, in cases like this, when we do hear from residents, it's a tremendous amount of redundancy where you, you come up to the podium and you say the exact same thing that, that the other neighbor or another resident said. So I, I would agree, if we can keep it limited and, and if it's the exact same thing you want to say, I, I would agree. Just say you agree with it and let's move on and see if we can get through all forty-five.
Okay, trustee Baldina?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. We're here, we're committed, we want to hear from the residents, whatever their opinion is, let's go.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's the consensus, and so let's move forward. And with those caveats that hopefully we'll, we'll all work together. We do want to hear you and we're not going to restrict anybody if they want to take the full three minutes. But please try to keep your comments brief and, and concise and we'll try to move forward as quickly as possible. So again, I'm going to call the individual who's on, who's at the podium and then the individual on deck. So Kim Lawson is first.
Thank you. I'm a resident of three oh four South Mitchell. We've lived there for about twenty-five years. In addition to that, I'm an attorney and I work in affordable housing, community development. Full Circle happens to be one of our clients. So I just wanted to speak to the credibility of them as an organization, what they have done and the fact that they are called upon time and time again by other governmental agencies in the state and in the communities to come in and help organizations that are struggling. They are one of the top-notch developers, owners, operators in this field. And I think as a community, we'd be very lucky to have them as a partner. Thank you.
Okay, nice job, Kim. And next is Hugh, Hugh Brady and then Dave Dupree.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for giving everyone the opportunity to speak. As he said, my name is Hugh Brady. I am the co-president of the Housing Task Force, the community group that initiated this project several years ago and has been working since then to make it happen. We are an all-volunteer nonprofit, no offices, no staff, made up of parents and family members of people living with mental health challenges and other disabilities. Our members live across the north and northwest suburbs. Three of our board members and fourteen of our other members actually live in Arlington Heights. The need for this type of permanent supportive housing is great, no disputes that. The question is where? Should there be more in Arlington Heights? Village Planning said yes. The proposal is in line with the village's current consolidated housing plan. And where top priority is to create housing for veterans and people living with disabilities. It also means the goals for the village's current, it also meets the goals for the village's current strategic priorities by creating affordable housing for people with disabilities. So where in Arlington Heights should a building for people with disabilities and veterans with disabilities go? Our task force in Arlington Heights Faith in Action, a group of representatives from area churches, began looking for a site shortly after, shortly after Hart's Place opened. There was not a whole lot of vacant land left in Arlington Heights that was appropriate for this type of a project. We were only able, able to locate three parcels that were for sale and that were large enough for an apartment of this type. One of them was where a church on Gulf Road now sits. The church was looking to sell part of their lot to a project that would provide a public good. But the available part of their lot was oddly shaped. The architects from Full Circle Communities tried to position the building on the lot and it just wouldn't fit. There were just too many twists and turns on the lot. Another site we looked at was at the corner of Crescent and Rand. The site was large enough, but was also fairly expensive. And while Full Circle, Full Circle Communities were looking at funding possibilities and seeing if there was a way to make it affordable, the Housing Trust Group beat us to it and began the process to build Crescent Place. We also looked at the site under consideration tonight. There was a for-sale sign on it, on the lot, and the Faith in Action team reached out to the owner. He actually came to a Faith in Action meeting and when we explained our goals to him, he liked the idea and our mission. He said he'd be willing to sell it to such a project and we put him in touch with Full Circle. And so here we are. The village plan calls for the creation of apartment buildings like Grace Terrace. But if the village wants to make those plans reality, Grace Terrace must go forward. Otherwise, the village plans will just sit on a shelf gathering dust. To those who approach the project, I say, if not now, when? If not where? If not here, where? Based on the work we have done, there is no other where. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Hugh. Next is Dave Dupree and then Dan Wertz.
Hello, I'm Dave Dupree, as you said, thirty-five plus year, resident in Arlington Heights, first-time commenter on a project. I'm still waiting for my thousand-foot notice. I live, from what I could tell, Google Maps to the property, a thousand feet. I never received a notice. Again, I'm very upset about notice on this. It seems like it slipped right through, no notice in the paper and the legal section. So we have to go to Arlington, you know, Herald and read the legal every week to kind of see what's coming up. No publicity, so that's another issue. But again, is this a HUD-supported, permanent-supported housing? The C O C?
Yeah, you, you're going to have to, sir, you're going to have to direct the questions to me.
Is this a HUD-supported, what they call P S H, permanent-supported supportive housing?
All right. Why don't you finish your, finish your comments and then we'll get the question answered.
What that is, the H, that's, you know, the, the Federal Register five thirty, five seventy-eight thirty-seven. The HUD has rules for these, what they call continuum of care. And within that, there's different categories of housing. One of them is permanent supportive housing. And per the HUD rules, it's only for homeless with disabilities or child with an adult with disabilities. There's nothing about veterans, from what I see, any preference for them. It's only for people with disabilities, from what I can see in the regulations anyway. And so that's a question. And not, and if it is for disability, not all the units are built for disability. Again, per the write-up from the developer, I think what, there is only four or six, I forget, single-digit that are fully dis- built for disabled. And then the others are partly or can be adapted. So if this is for fully disabled people, it doesn't seem like it's designed for disabled people. And again, per zoning, unlike Eastman, this was not zoned for this. Eastman was zoned for a building. This was zoned for two-story, thirty-foot, as we understand it. And now it's totally thirty, you know, a three-story building. If you look from here down to Gulf Road, everything, single-family, one-story building. Yeah, a couple of two-story, you got Northwest Metal Craft, you know, a few two-story buildings. There's no three-story buildings. And all of a sudden, there's only be one three-story building in this whole area that again, was never zoned for. The people that bought these houses nearby, as you've shown, the zoning was for, at the most, two stories. And now you're making the exception for three-story. Who says that? You can't do that anywhere else in the village. And that certainly can upset people.
Okay, miss, I'm going to have to ask you to finish your comments. You passed for three minutes. Okay, thanks a lot. Do you have an answer to the HUD question? Real quick?
Yeah, this is not a HUD C O C, permanent supportive housing funded deal. This is a permanent supportive housing deal as funded by Ida's P S H grant program, which allows for preferences for veterans and persons with disabilities as we've identified.
Okay, thank you. Next is Dan Wertz and then Karina Santa Maria.
Hello, I'm Dan Wertz and I'm a resident of Arlington Heights and I live at thirty-five, thirty-four fifty-one North Carriageway Drive, near Dundee Road. I've been a member of the Faith in Action group and the housing group here for almost ten years. And I've been very concerned about the shortage of supportive housing in our area. And to name the, or indicate a situation, I've got a friend of mine that travels forty miles to get to a location where he has a family member down in the south end of Chicago. I've got a family relationship that's got another kid that's up in, just near, outside of Milwaukee, which is some sixty miles away. And that's an indication of how things are short here in this area for supportive housing. Last point I want to make is on your parking location up here. I, I live in a forty-unit condo building. I'm the condo board president. And our condo building, the back end of the building is up against Carriageway Drive, which is a fairly well-traveled road. And it would look something like that situation up there. And when you turn into our parking lot, if you, if the building, if the parking was on the street side of the building, you'd be turning in and you'd have about maybe a car length to turn in. And then you're going to stop and then you're going to figure out where you're going to park in the parking space. Whereas the way it's set up now, you can turn in and travel all the way back and not back up traffic that's coming in behind you. When you're on a busy street like that, turning either some of the north end or the south end, it gets a little hectic. So I think leaving the building the way it is is a good point. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan. Next is Karina and then Rosemary Walter.
Hi, good evening, I'm Karina Santa Maria, twenty-three sixty-two East Bradshaw Court. I'm here tonight to express my wholehearted support for Grace Terrace Permanent Supportive Housing Project. And in light of the recent opposition, I think it's very crucial that we, as a community, come together to ensure the success of this very much needed initiative. As many of you know, I'm also the executive director of Shelter Inc. And I'm not unfamiliar to meetings such as this and asking for variances as well. And I have worked with Full Circle since twenty-twenty on this project and have, and with their leadership, and I've been in full support of it since then. One of the housing criteria for youth who, or for young adults who may need housing also represents our youth who are aging out of foster care or youth experiencing homelessness once they become twenty-one or may need more supportive housing. So our, our young adults would also benefit from this in, here in Arlington Heights. Going through this in two thousand and twenty-one, one, many of the many comments that were made, oh. I'll be quick. You know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of the many same comments that I heard in two thousand and twenty-one. And I think a lot of that was due to the fear of the unknown or not knowing, as trustee Tanalia had said. And I, now that we've been there since two thousand and twenty-one, I can tell you that a lot of our neighbors have reached out to say that living next door to Shelter Inc. in one of our housing facilities is something that they're very proud of. And have even had dinner delivered to us and are just really happy to be one of our neighbors. And I think that this is going to be very similar to that. So I am here to say, please support it and vote yes.
All right, thanks, Karina. Next is Rosemary Walter and then Keith Moons. Okay, we'll pass Rosemary and then Keith Moons and then David Kastic.
Thank you, thank you, President Hayes. I would rec, I would highly encourage the board to vote in favor of this project here. And as was said earlier, that Full Circle Communities is a top-notch management firm. And, you know, I, I think the initial concern about crime either Hart's Place has not happened as we expected. And supportive housing has been successful in Arlington Heights before. So we put all those three together and we desperate need of supporting housing in Arlington Heights. I would highly recommend that you vote for, for this project. I do have one clarification I'd like to ask for. If you could please explain what the voting procedure is again for tonight? And where, you know, where is that cited and how is the vote to be taken on that?
All right, all right, Mr. Passman, real quick?
Sure, happy to. Ultimately, if, I'm not necessarily tonight, but ultimately for the final formal vote on the grant of relief for this project, if one is taken of the board ultimately gets to that point. There is a state law that provides that when a variation does not receive a positive recommendation from the hearing body, in our case, that would be the planning commission, then the variation can only be approved by the village board by a two-thirds vote of the trustees only. And so because we have a board that consists of eight trustees, two-thirds of that amount is, it's, it's five in chains, we round up to six.
And it's be tonight, then?
No, it does not have, it is when the final vote on any ordinance that grants the approval.
So we're looking for five? Yes.
Six.
Six.
When on, on.
Tonight?
It, it, there is no ordinance tonight. So that, that, that six out of eight rule will not apply tonight, no matter how long we're here. But, but ultimately, as, 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 as many here know, and, 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 and the board knows, zoning approvals have to be granted by ordinance. That ordinance has not been prepared for this evening. If and when that ordinance is prepared for a final informal vote. If there are variations included within that ordinance, because those variations were not recommended for approval by our planning commission, therefore, those variations can only be approved by a vote of six of the eight trustees. And the mayor would not be authorized under state law to cast the sixth vote himself.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, next is David Kastic and then Susie Piesacki.
Hi. I'm against this project. I don't think it's the right area for it. Everything along that area is one-story. The parking, it's like the building was, is a building that they just put in there. They're trying to design it to make it fit. The parking's on the wrong side. You're going to come down Arlington Heights Road, look at the back of the building. On your other zoning things, you had where the building next door was eighty-six feet clear and it was plenty of parking for a hundred forty stalls or something. So why does this have to go back another sixty feet? Makes no sense to me. I hope that you would vote against it. And how do you vet the veterans that they get this? If you looked at their thing that they had out, it was a very small percentage, seven percent, twelve percent? That's not majority of the building being for veterans. I'm all for giving the veterans whatever they need, but I don't think this is doing that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Susie Piesacki and then Linda Waysey.
Hi, good evening. This is my first time doing anything like this, so I hope I fit in the three minutes. So hi, I'm Susie, thank you so much for hearing me. Yeah, so I'm a, a member of the Housing Task Force Board. And I'm also, I live in permanent supportive housing in Mount Prospect. I'm living in, I'm a person with a disability and it's an invisible disability. As a person with a disability, that includes people with mental illness. And I live with depression, anxiety and PTSD among other things, so. But yeah, you know, people with mental illness are people first, you know, people with any disability are people first. And I'm so thankful and I have a better quality of life, I have independence and autonomy because of living in permanent supportive housing. So I am very thankful for that. I ask that people keep open minds and open hearts because it keeps my hope alive to have independence in permanent supportive housing. So I hope that you do approve it. A lot of people, there's some people here tonight that are against having the support that you, that many of you have voiced that you give support for this. That many of you have voiced that you give support for this um, Grace Terrace. Uh, people fear what they don't know, um, but mental illness doesn't discriminate, disabilities don't discriminate, it can happen to anybody. But um, you know, people, you know, just I, I try to remind people be careful. Who you hate because it might end up being someone you know, but um, yeah, I guess. You know, I don't know, I just have to say things like life is short, we're only here for a little while, so be the difference and make a difference in your leadership roles. You have the opportunity here to not just seriously consider voting for Grace Terrace to happen, but to actually. Demonstrate your integrity and be the difference and make it happen. So um, I don't know, I have about a minute left. Um, I just, I just wanna say that, you know, by making permanent supportive housing happen. You, you can help make recovery not just possible, but probable with medication, treatment and therapy. Um, you know, all these things combined along with something as great, as um, as amazing as permanent supportive housing. It helps create, it, it helps bring an intangible of hope into the lives of people with mental illness. And with disabilities, physical, mental, being a vet, recovery, all sorts of wonderful things can happen. And you, you create a opportunity, it's just amazing, amazing possibilities, so. Um, I just hope you will vote yes for Grace, Grace Terrace and make this happen, so um. I just guess, uh, yeah, I just wanna share that.
All right, thanks Suzie.
Thank you.
Next is Linda Wacey and then Kim Hogan.
Hi, um, I'm the Chair of the Arlington Heights Faith in Action Supportive Housing Team. And it's made up of leaders of many churches in Arlington Heights. Um, Saint James Catholic Church, First United Methodist Church, Saint John United Church of Christ. Congregational United Church of Christ, Christian Church of Arlington Heights, First Presbyterian Church of Arlington Heights. Southminster Presbyterian Church with the support of the Lutheran Church of the Cross where the neighborhood meeting was. Um, we are all working for permanent supportive housing for veterans. There is strong faith-based support for this type of group. And there are people in the audience who uh, attend those churches. And if you're here and can stand up uh, or raise your hand, that would be great. There's some of you here. Thank you. Um, I'd like to remind the mayor and the trustees that Full Circle Communities and many of us here. Came before you to ask you whether you would support another building. To be the future home for people um, who have mental and physical disabilities with a preference for veterans. And you collectively said yes. Full Circle Communities then started the design building, purchasing the land. And now we come before you to ask you to vote yes for Grace Terrace. So we're counting on your yes vote. Thank you.
All right, thanks Linda. Next is Kim Hogan and then Joe Gioli.
Good evening, Mayor and uh, Village Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity. I'll keep it short. Um, I'm here in full support of um, Grace Terrace. I live uh, not too far away. About a mile away, maybe in Tom's neighborhood. Uh, I also have some experience uh, working with homeless folks, both through my church, First Presbyterian in Arlington Heights. Um, through our PADS program where we provide um, a nice lodging and food for homeless, our homeless population. A lot of them are vets and a lot of them have disabilities, the invisible disability, uh, many have invisible disabilities. Um, that aren't all that obvious. Um, there's a huge need. I'm not gonna repeat all the reasons why we need um, this um. Uh, development. I think uh, it's a great use for our huge vacant lot and I have. After hearing the um, presentation tonight um, from Full Circle, I have all the confidence in the world. They're experienced, um, they have thought of every contingency possible and I think this would be a great asset to our community. So I encourage you to vote yes.
Right, thank you. Next is Joe Gioli and then Phyllis Gioli.
I'm no for this uh, project. I think it's too high for the neighborhood. And I think those other projects didn't go because they had to put caissons in because the ground wouldn't hold them. There's too heavy for the, the ground for a three-story building, so they had to put a caisson in, so that's why they scratched them. And uh, I think we could find a better spot. For this, maybe a little farther down the road where the hotels are. There's some vacant lands over there, they're ripping stuff down. And uh, I think would fit in better over there where there's taller buildings. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. And then Phyllis and then Robin Paul.
Thank you. Um, I'm a little concerned about the house rules. Now, they said if they disobey the rule that their lease is broken and they need to move out. Due to parties, drinking, uh, alcohol or drugs and such items like this. How many chances do they get before their? Their leases up?
Yeah, would you finish your comments and then we'll have somebody answer the question?
Also, I am concerned that when I did move in, it was zoned for one-story building all the way across. Now we got a three-story building, doesn't look right in that community. That was my two comments.
Okay, thank you. Can you answer that question, you guys?
Yeah, briefly, a lease violation of house rule, uh, a violation of house rules or lease that doesn't involve non-payment of rent would be a thirty-day notice. We would meet with the resident, give them that thirty-day notice, would also meet with their case manager. There would be a first chance opportunity, assuming it wasn't an egregious action. Uh, to show that they had understood that behavior was inappropriate and to curb that behavior. Obviously, if it was a more egregious violation of the rules, then uh, we would seek that eviction.
Okay, thank you. Next is Robin Paul and then Rebecca McClany. If I got the last name right. Is Robin still here? I don't see Robin, so how about Rebecca? Rebecca is, is gone as well. I know Brian's still here. Come on, Brian, Brian Harrison. And then Lori Granari.
I'm in, I'm in favor of this uh, project because um. People with disabilities need a place to live. Um, I live at two fifteen West Minot. I've lived there since two thousand seventeen and it's a great, um. Or greater aspect to the community and. That's all.
All right, thanks, Brian. And next Lori and then uh, is Lori still? There she is. And then Kendall, I think it's Schaefer.
Sorry, I'm just a little stiff. Sitting here for a while. Okay, my name is Lori Granari. I live at two-two-seven South Vale. Um, the other co-president of the Housing Task Force. Um, I initially got involved with that Housing Task Force because I was looking for housing for my son. Who was, uh, developed schizophrenia after he graduated high school. Um, the, the, he, we applied at Myers Place, which is the first building that the Housing Task Force helped to create. And at that time, everything was done in person and you had to be the first hundred in line in order to even get your application in. Um, I know you all know there's a great need, but I can tell you personally, there's a great need. Um, and so, yeah, what I, my experience is, is that myself and other parents on the task force, there's a lot of families. Looking for places for their kids to live. And you know, these are families in Arlington Heights, in our community. You know, not everybody on the Housing Task Force lives in Arlington Heights, but they all live in the north northwest suburbs. And we don't wanna drive into Chicago in order to see our kids. Um, and the other, the last thing I would say is. One of the great things that we do is from the Housing Task Force is to provide move-in baskets for all the new residents. And uh, Full Circle isn't gonna have um, furniture provided, so. We are looking forward to being able to help residents in any way they need. Any way that we can help provide what, what they need in order to have their first-time apartment. Thank you.
All right, thanks Lori. And then Kendall, I think it's Schaefer. Did I get that right?
Correct.
And, and then Michaela Schute.
Um, hi, I'm Kendall Schaefer. I live at uh, fifteen thirty-six South Douglas Avenue. I am here from an opposing standpoint um, for the location. It has nothing to do with what we would like to do to help people, but it's the location. And there are five of us from the opposing side that would like to defer our time or hand off our time. To somebody here that is representing us tonight and he did fill out um, a slip. Um, this is Matthew. Yeah. Is it okay if Matthew comes up and represents our, us as a neighborhood?
Yeah, well, why don't you go ahead, Matthew, go ahead.
Yeah, if, if, he will, he will eliminate a number of us having to come up here, so thank you.
I like, I like to hear that. All right. Well, you still only got three minutes, though.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Trustees. Um, I am here to try and streamline some of this. Um, but I represent roughly two dozen of the households that live in the area.
Wait, now just the correction, you're an attorney?
I am an attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I started my law practice in Arlington Heights, so I have very close ties to the community as well. Um, we've heard a lot of buzzwords tonight. Um, you're gonna hear veterans, people with disabilities, providing needed services. Um. Not-for-profit. Uh, but there hasn't necessarily been a, a lot to support that. Recognize that based on what's been presented at this hearing and others, this is a thirteen million dollar project, which equates to five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for. Per unit. There is not anyone doing work on this project related to Arlington Heights. That's a concern. Um, for five hundred and twenty thousand dollars per unit, they're getting six hundred and sixty square feet to eight hundred square feet. They have no food within less than a ten-minute walk for the disabled. There is no access to the front of the building for fire trucks. Um, which has been brought up in zoning as a safety concern that they have no way to do with fires at the front of the building as opposed to the back. Um, closest transportation and medicine is also a ten-minute walk away for the disabled. What most of the trustees addressed is, is this the proper spot? We take people with special needs with low income and the only opportunity they have is through rideshare that's across the street. Which again costs money that they don't have and that's why they're there. Um. There are numerous issues with it being three-story with the lights going in the back. All of that affecting everything and there's no reason for it. It's also the noise that happens because as they've put in their prospectuses. The only entrance and exit for the building is through that front door, which is in the back closest to the neighbors. So even the people who are being dropped off, every car is going past those doors and those neighbors. Uh, there was an issue about the ratings. Yes, there was a non-for-profit rating that was showing at the last hearing for uh, planning. But they were at fifty-eight percent. In the two weeks since then, they've been able to update whatever their membership was with that webpage to get to ninety-eight percent. That's very concerning. There are discrepancies between what they have told you today. What they have presented in the tenant selection plan, which is what they are bound by, by the Illinois Housing. Um, Development Authority, which provides for that you can actually use marijuana. In the documents they presented. They only do background checks on the head of household when they do this. Um, home visits are not required, so the way that they're enforcing security is by their increased access to the people. Is actually something they're telling Illinois Housing they're not gonna do. Um, convictions are only for a certain amount of years. It is only certain sexual uh, registry people that are banned for all of this. We saw numbers about the property values in this where they said there was, uh, it went from three hundred and forty to three hundred and eighty. Which is an eleven percent increase in the area over five years. If you can show me any house that the assessor hasn't increased by over eleven percent in the five years, I'd be shocked. Right now, this is big business. Other towns are dealing with it. They tried to turn the Wyndham and Glenview into apartments where they were turning hotel rooms into. Studio apartments. The people we're trying to help deserve better. There's concern in all this, one, because the rules don't disagree with the obligations that they have with the Illinois. Um, Housing Development Authority and I think we need to have those flushed out before anything happens because I don't know what controls. But right now, dealing with this is trying to put a square peg in a round hole. They said the building doesn't fit, it doesn't match, there's too many issues with the lines. And now we're trying to change everything to get this one project in. And my fear is because of the buzzwords, because we're dealing with people with disabilities and who are poor and the like. We're gonna do the wrong thing for the right reasons. And that I don't think is something anyone should be doing. There's a better place for this. There's many more things that need to be flushed out. There's many things that are contradictory that need to be. Cleared up because before we do what will be tied to this property in perpetuity for at least thirty years. Could be that they can use drugs. And the rules don't apply because the contracts they signed say that I, it's a prevails over everything else. But we need to know that now because right now all we have is documents from someone who's about to make a lot of money on a thirteen million dollar project. And I don't question their motives at all, but when there's that much money involved, I do think it needs to be looked into. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is Michaela Schute and then Tam Bucheni.
Um, I'm gonna try to be brief. Um, so first off, I wanted to clarify, I've sent you guys emails. And um, you are pretty much aware where I stand, but I wanted to make sure that is clarified. We do not oppose helping veterans and disabled people. We are just opposing the location. That is one thing that I wanted clarified. First of, I, I came from a third-world country. My family, who are both veterans, by the way, came here to find a safe haven. So I would be one of the last people along with my neighbors, so actually I have had the privilege of building relationships with. We would be the last people to oppose helping. I was born and raised Catholic. I went to Catholic boarding school, so if we're gonna go with faith. We're gonna go with veterans, I had all that. The reason why I'm actually against this for this location, not because of fear, because I had experienced it. In helping a disabled family member. I personally took the application to help the disabled family member. I went to the facility. The, basically the manager there did not want to get in the elevator with the guy. So he had to tell me, Michelle, let's go take the stairs. And I was surprised. We, I was ready to tell my family members, sign the lease, I've seen the facility. Really, the lease is just, these are the rules, sign it. This is the lease. You verify that you're disabled, you're this and that. That's basically what it was and that's a facility in Niles. Now, before I had left, he stopped me and said, Michelle, you seem to be a nice person. And you, you, the person that you're helping seemed to be a nice person because I videoed, I videoed them. He said, do not move here. That floor had two former drug dealers. Who he will not confirm nor deny that is still dealing drugs. Now, that's the reason why I'm opposed to it, being in that location because of the fact that this is a single-family. Surrounded by single-family homes. No matter where you place the parking lot, no matter whi- which area. There's a home in front of it. So we would be, we're facing the back right now. So if you turn it around, we're gonna be facing the parking lot. Now, if you put it where the proposed parking lot location is, it's gonna be the neighbors. So no matter where you put it, it will be still disrupting all the neighbors, which is um. A single-family home. And I wanted to address one last thing. Charity Navigator, you had mentioned that you are not aware where that rating came from because you're four-star. First off, that was during the planning committee, I brought that up, that it was a one-star. I sent that email. Now, I remembered and I believe the um, that meeting was recorded, correct? The, the planning commission?
There's minutes for that meeting.
The minute, okay. So I believe in my recollection, Joshua's response when one of the commissioner asked him, why was the rating low? He had said, it just means um, because we, I don't do, we don't do fundraisers. That's just the, the reason why, but I don't really know what Charity Navigator is. And as this attorney had um, said earlier, I mean, really, they corrected it, which is fine. I would have been fine if he had disclosed that, but just saying, I, I, that didn't sit well with me when he said, I don't know where that came from. Nonetheless, that is where I stand. Our stand is not to not help people. Our goal is always to help people, but just not at that location. My late parents, once again, who were veterans, had taught me that. You cannot light one's candle by extinguishing another. Which means us, the single-family homes in that neighborhood, we will, it's our candles that are being extinguished. Because we will be left to deal with the aftermath of a HUD-funded facility, no, no matter how we dress it up. No, no matter how we dress it up, how we build the facade, how we, how we build the architecture, it will still be a hard-funded facility. I've been in one.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. And then Dam Bucheni and then oh, I can't, it looks like Sarah, Sarah, from one thirty-one East Emerson Street. Is Dam not here anymore? Okay, how about Sarah from one thirty-one East Emerson? I'm not, can't, I'm not sure how to pronounce her last name.
She's, she's one, one of the people, we're married.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be coming up next.
Okay.
Wanted to give her three minutes to our attorney since he's here today.
Alright.
Unless you wanna hear her.
No, so you, yeah, that was already. Wait, no, 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 no. No, I thought you were, I thought you were, I thought you've already spoken for all five people. Right, so you're gonna have to speak.
Those twelve people, I'm not, I'm not in it, so I wanted to speak for me.
No, no, no.
Okay, anyway, I'll speak, I'm living one thirty-one East Emerson Street, so like, if you guys build a three-story building, everybody gonna looking at my house twenty-four hours. So great. I moved fourteen times. I finally bought a house in Arlington Heights to be close to my mother-in-law, who is elderly. And then I thought, my husband, if you move one more time, I'm divorcing you. So it's gonna be my forever house. And then tw- three-story buildings will be looking at my house every single day. I, I don't feel safe. And then as my neighbor said, it's not about, I have a compassion. My, um, I'm, um, I don't know how to, sorry, I'm really emotional. Okay, so it's not like I don't wanna help, but location of the place. Because all our neighbors are affected, three-story building will be looking at all our neighbors. And I don't feel safe to be, uh, and then, and then Emerson Street is so narrow, even a garbage truck cannot come in. I mean, you guys know how narrow the, uh, Emerson Street is. So we are dealing with every day, one car comes in, the other car cannot go out.
Right, that has nothing to do with this development.
I, I, I'm, so what I'm saying is that it's already, um, how to say, like, it's neighbor, it's gonna create a lot of problems with the traffic and safety. So as other neighbors say, maybe we could find a better location. Other location a little bit further from, um, neighborhood. It's only hundred feet. If you guys change all the like parking lot, whatever, it's gonna be forty feet. Great. If you want, I'll give you a two hundred dollar deduction. You can buy my house. I'll move to your house. Because I wanna be forever home. I moved fourteen times in twenty-five years marriage. No more moving. I love Arlington Heights. And then we ha- we own two houses. We pay for property tax over forty thousand. I can tell you which address we live in. We pay over forty thousand. I don't deserve this. Uh, you guys have to take care of Arlington Heights citizens first. I'm not saying, don't have a compassion, just find a better location. You guys ca- you guys can be wiser than that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Linda Dustin and then Jim Thompson.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen feet, so twenty feet would be at the door. If you looked at that property line, twenty feet away from the parking, uh, from the edge of the, um, uh, property line to the neighbors, twenty feet. Too close, absolutely. Um, I did send you an email and, um, had planned, I wasn't sure if you had, you know, um, I'm just gonna read it. My husband and I have lived in our home in Arlington Heights for forty years. We love it and have worked long and hard to pay the taxes and maintain our property to the high standards of our neighborhood. I am most definitely concerned with the possibility of the neighborhood's property values decreasing with the proposed full circle project on Arlington Heights Road. I strongly disagree with placing low-income housing of any kind, minimal feat from homes that are valued at six hundred thousand to over a million dollars. This lot is absolutely the wrong one to build the structure on as presented. It is too high at three stories and would look so out of place on that stretch of road. In my opinion, the design of the building needs revision as it reminds me personally of an institution rather than an apartment complex. I believe Arlington Heights has a reputation of outstanding building design, and I would like that to continue. I know you are aware of the concerns being voiced of lighting being a nuisance to, uh, to the immediate neighbor homes, privacy issues and water overflow and retention. These are extremely important issues to study and be accurate with your decision. I am not totally clear about changing the zoning from commercial to institutional. But it seems that if this happens, um, this, and this project goes forward, our city, our city could ultimately lose control over the land. That's actually kind of a question that somebody, uh, brought up, so I think you must have re- read my email. Um, it would, um, uh, why would this be good for the city? And I think I wanted to say also that when we know that this, this, a project is being funded federal, with federal money, um, you know, I, 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 I don't see how Arlington Heights keeps control of that. It would seem to me that it hasn't ever been zoned institutional in the past for some very good reason. I also worry that if this lot number one zoning is changed, that lot number two is next. Would that mean another building like one proposed being built? U S board members know more about the potential tenants of the building and how their lifestyles could affect the neighborhood without relisting them. Again, is this the piece of land in Arlington Heights that's the best choice, or should the project find another property? I recall boards in the past concerned with and wanting a beautiful and welcoming entrance to our city. If visitors exit the highway to travel north on Arlington Heights Road, they would pass by this development minutes into their drive. Of course, they would notice this oversized building that doesn't fit in with its surroundings. There is no doubt in my mind that the traffic situation on Arlington Heights Road from golf to noise would become even more of a nightmare, especially during rush hour traveling.
Linda, could you finish your, your comments, please?
Um, my last one would be a question, and that would be, has there actually been a traffic study done um, to put in traffic signals there? Um, these people living there would not be able to walk across the street. They'd have to go all the way down to a light, uh, you know, um, to golf or, uh, up to, what is that? Um, off the top of my head, I can't remember. But, um, I would like to know if there's gonna be anything like that because now you have twenty-five more apartments, um,
Okay, thanks, Linda.
Busy street.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
Next is Jim Thompson and then Mayor Shah.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, thank you. Uh, I spent all thirty-two years of my life in this village. I was spent a term on the Environmental Commission. I care deeply about this community. And this property of discussion is right out my kitchen window, so it directly affects me. I'm not a plant from a different community or a different part of town with a yes badge. It actually affects me. The fact that this project cannot take place unless the village changes the zoning to institutional, right there tells you it's wrong. We are a residential community. Also, a place with government funding always brings crime. They tug at your heartstrings, same veterans or disabilities, but we know what that is. We don't want that to turn into the red roof in. That's what we're concerned about. So even if you believe this concept is right, it's not the right location. That's what we, our issue, the location. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Jim. Next is Mayor Shah and then Zidank, Zidankro Gervanovic.
Good evening. It's Mayor Shah. I live at the three oh nine East Heaven Street. First of all, I appreciate you guys staying back and, uh, listening to us. I'm so glad that I'm able to say good evening to you instead of good morning in about ten minutes. Believe me, the past three and a half hours that we have sat here without being able to speak, you are in a much better place than us. We had to hold on to what we had to speak, but again, thank you for the opportunity. One point I would mention is, like others said, we are not against compassion. I'm against this project. That is, that is the word I'm giving. Not against compassion, it's a good cause, doesn't fit there. Aesthetically, it doesn't fit there. Lack of transparency. I found out that you have all good intentions, but the, but the work of posting the signs was delegated to a project manager where there's a conflict of interest. So the bare minimum was done, and that's why a lot of us here, who are just of, you know, within a hundred feet, did not get the flyers. And I would, I would hope that the enthusiasm and the motivation that you show during election time, where the flyers get posted every intersection, every front yard, and even get to our mailboxes, would have shown, you'd, you'd have shown that same motivation to, to make sure that a communication happens to, to the neighbors. Again, I don't doubt your intentions. Waken Lot not been sold, understood? Does it have to be this? Can it be a retail? Maybe a just a strip mall? Can it be something else other than a three, three-story building? It doesn't fit there. Data, you know, I, I saw a lot of survey. Data is very funny. Depending on who's funding that survey and what attributes they choose to create that survey, you can really twist it the way you want. So I saw some, some surveys today, but has a third-party audit been done where the property value, the percent of residents, affluent residents, high-income residents who leave when something like this happens? And the crime rate has been really studied independently? Because there are ethical issues. People will not fund it. Disability and criminal record are not mutually ex- exclusive. So I want to make sure that when we are giving preferences to veterans and disables, disabled people, we are not discounting the criminal check. And one of the check I saw, you know, in a form was, will reject anything happened within three years, but may reject if a conviction was within ten years. And I would, I would request you to consider looking into that. And then just a clear roles and responsibilities and ownership as to who's going to be maintaining and monitoring all the requirements of who stays here, if at all this goes through, is kind of, you know, identified ahead of time. Yeah, last, but nonetheless, I would have appreciated that, you know, in the interest of almost hundred plus of us who had been here, just like you guys, the agenda would have been shifted, or agenda would have been split into, into a way that we did not have to do all this, including yourself. So this is just a feedback. But thank you for listening and appreciate your attention.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is, um, Mr. Gervanovic. Three hundred East Emerson Street. Okay, what's?
Thank you for your time. Um, I just wanna say, um, I'm concerned about, uh, that empty lot there. And also our street is end, and also that parking lot is facing the street. At some point, you will just cut through and an emergency and cars and everything, everything will, will go on that parking lot from that side. It, I'm in construction so long, and I guarantee you, I respect you all, and thank you very much. But that will happen. Exactly what I'm saying now. Mark my word. Thank you.
Okay, next is, uh, Mrs. Gervanovic. And you're gonna have to give us your first name and then, um, Selena Miko.
My name is Smilka Gervanovic.
Smilka, okay.
That was my husband. He's very emotional. But what he's trying to say, we live in three hundred East Emerson. We have fourth house from that block. And we just started building addition to that house. Um, so my concern was that somebody mentioned that there might be forty-plus parking spots in the back later on built with access to Emerson Street for, uh, emergency cars. Right now, the street is not wide enough, no sidewalks, no drainage, just small, narrow street. But eventually, it could become, uh, access to the back of that building, which makes it a lo- uh, becoming larger traffic, uh, less safety for the kids. Our kids play on that street, hockey, they ride bikes, they play basketball in their yards. So is that going to be safety, uh, problem for all our residents on that street? Uh, that's one, one point. Second point is, I saw a table, statistic table, that says veterans in some building, only two percent, uh, resident. Um, some are ten percent, seventeen percent, but everything else is other disability. And then other doesn't say what is it? But we all here appreciate that we're building something for veterans. But we only have two, ten and seventeen percent of veterans in these buildings. So, uh, other than building also being too tall. Uh, and the, and the last point, uh, this is gonna be very short. Uh, last point is that, um, we talked about disabled people in this building, but they are so away from any bus stops. I cannot make it to any bus stops from my, uh, uh, place in ten minutes. And they're, they will be even further away from Golf Street to get to bus stop. And I, I appreciate that people with, in wheelchair are coming to vote for this, but they would be the ones too far away from anything. Uh, no pharmacy, grocery store. Yes, there are for me. I drive to it, even if I, if I have to, it takes me to cross the street several minutes because I can't get to, uh, because of the traffic being so busy. They would have to go, uh, to, uh, nearest stoplight to get across. I think that's it, and thank you for listening.
Alright, thanks, Smilka. Next is Selena Miko and then Arlen Ghul.
My name is Selena Miko. Uh, probably many of you just hear it on the, uh, email we were sending to you. Uh, so many people are ta- talk, talking about the problems, uh, so I'm not gonna repeat everything because we wrote to you about everything. So what I wanna ask, I'm just asking all of you, vote no. And then, uh, few more things, uh, about this road, it has to be under, around the, the, the building, whatever your, way you have to put it, it's gonna be around. Uh, facility in, uh, McHenry doesn't have it, road on the back. It does building finish here, few yards, and it's, and it's fence. Nobody is care about the road on this side. So I don't know why this is so important. Um, can be on the front and on the back, maybe we can just make beautiful garden for those people. I don't know. Uh, and moving this building to the, uh, more to east, I don't know, it's, uh, I'm not the builder or somebody like that, but it's, uh, for me, it's not necessary. It can stay like it is. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Alright, take your time.
Because, uh, it's, um, you have decide about it, uh, and, uh, I'm living there for thirty-four years. And then, uh, I was always thinking that something, gotta build something over there because I remember those single-family houses what were there. I remember them. I, I knew those people who were living there for short time. The longest time, I, I knew there's, uh, uh, snow sculpture, uh, Mr. Wolf was living just across, uh, you know, our house toward the Arlington Heights. But it's easy to tell, say for you, just build this house, uh, this, this, this project for this there. Because it's nobody, it's just building on your backyard something giant when you are small. And then, uh, I was mentioned before on some, on some, uh, meeting that Arlington Heights Road is much higher than our, than our house. So we are gonna have on the backyard, uh, not only three-story building, it's gonna be on four-story building because we are much lower. So it's not gonna be that way. So nobody is gonna build it on your yard, so it's got easier to, for you to decide. And, uh, all those people who are here voting, uh, voting, does support the project with the sign yes. I don't know, is anybody from our area, from this neighborhood?
Selena, Selena, you're gonna have to finish your comments, but you have to direct your comments. Selena, Selena, you're gonna have to finish your comments, but you have to direct your comments.
But I don't see those people, if it's somebody here, how far they are from this project. And, you know, and what Michelle was talking about, uh, we are not against. So what I wanna say, just asking you vote no, vote no, and then just, you are gonna ruin us, uh, us over there, because it's, um, everything what we have, this, this house, and we were living and working for it so long, we were building this house by ourselves.
All right, thanks, Selena.
It's, uh, it's this what I'm asking for, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Arlen Gould, and then Mark Marshall.
Little stiff, little stiff walking out there. Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. I've lived in Arlington Heights about thirty-eight years. My interest in mental health and disabilities goes back to my time as a teacher in Chicago, but more importantly, as a staff member for Governor Dick Ogilvy. You may remember, he's one of the governors who did not go to jail in Illinois, and I'm proud that I worked for him. But more, but on top of the list was that, as he left office, there was a plan to build facilities like this all across Illinois as they closed the warehouses. Because they knew individuals with mental health issues and disabilities needed a place to live. Those were never built. We've identified the demand is there and the need is there today. But I'm here to tell you, living in northern Arlington Heights, five minutes from Hart's Place, and five minutes from, uh, um,
Crescent Place.
Crescent Place and, and Phil Haven. There is no issues. There are no crime issues. There is nobody walking the streets endangering our children and my grandchildren. And fairness to you, counselor, if half the things that you just mentioned were true, none of these programs would have been built ever in Illinois. And a ten-minute walk to go get your groceries is probably a good thing for most of us. But there's no crime issues near any of the other facilities. There's no crime issues in those facilities. And even more important than that, I was just notified today, uh, by Zillow that the value of my house continues to go up. We've been in it, we've had three houses in Arlington Heights, this is our third, we love Arlington Heights. And the value is up fifty percent over when we bought it, which is about when, uh, Hart's Place opened. So there's no issue with declining values of homes. There's no issue with crime on the streets, but it's a need that we must meet. And has been said tonight, if not now, when? And if we don't do it here, where? And the fact of the matter is that that strip of land is gonna sit vacant for many years because nobody's building office buildings anytime soon. And the owner of that property has a right to sell that property. So I appreciate the board's interest, I appreciate all of your comments, I appreciate all, all of your thoughtfulness. And I know that you know, that you heard the same complaints when Hart's Place was discussed, and even before that, when Mayor One Bozier Place was discussed. So the issues have not changed, the concerns of neighbors have not changed. But the reality is, we know now that these programs work. We know now that they are safe. And we know now that our real estate values will not be declining, but rather be going up. Thank you for your patience, thank you for your time, and thank you for your thoughtfulness.
Thanks, Arlen. Next is Mark Marshall, and then Rudy Jacques.
Hi, my name is Mark Marshall, um, I just wanna say that I, uh, I hope that a vote, again, I mean, I support the program. I think the spirit of this program is needed and, and is great, and, and as everybody has said, you know, the need is not challenged. Um, it's been said, the location, the location. Um, I think that, and I hope that, uh, however this goes, that a vote of, of nay, which is what I propose our support, uh, is not considered a, a, a representation of the board's view or want unwillingness to want to try and address this problem here in Arlington Heights. But in, in real estate, what is the three sections? Location, location, location. Uh, this gentleman mentioned the success of these other places in the city, around Arlington Heights. It could be because of their location, their location. The traffic situation here, you mentioned you're walking down Belmont. There is, you know, Newton's Third Law, that for every reaction, or every reaction, there's an equal reaction. The traffic will be a problem. We already have people that cut across from Central through Meyer, down the, Lincoln, all the way to Belmont Council Trail. They will navigate past it, we will need another light, unlike what, the similar to the one that's at White Oak in Arlington Heights now. Whether it's this development or any other, these will all be issues that have to be addressed. But it feels like we're trying to rush this a little bit too quickly. Um, why squip, fit a square peg into a round hole if it's not the right thing? It, a little more time, a little more studies, a little bit more, all these things that everybody have said, there's a lot of emotions around it. But I just feel like, um, I'm not, if I was in your positions, completely in a hundred percent sold. Thank you for my.
Thanks, Mark. And next is Rudy Jacques, and then Josh Shoot.
So Rudy went home to take care of our daughter.
Okay.
Uh, if you mind, Wendy Kelly.
Sure, go ahead.
Hi, Wendy Kelly, two twenty-one East Foster Street. Um, I moved to, 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 uh, to twenty-one East Foster Street in twenty-eleven. Um, when I moved there, the Linden Place, if that's the right word, uh, was there, where there is a lot of units and, uh, affordable housing is there. Um, I've gone through the change of the, um, the, uh, memory care facility and, um, I just bring it up because I'm not afraid of change, change is good. Um, I appreciate, um, once I got into this and kind of really understood it last week when I came to the meeting, I started digging in and doing a little research and getting into your website myself. So I appreciate what you all do, because there's a lot of information there for you all to digest. So thank you for, for, uh, looking at this and being good stewards of, uh, the city and making fair decisions for all. Um, as I was digging around, of course, there's the Linden, uh, development. We all know what's going on with International Plaza, and then there's this development that's coming up right here. So my big concern is the perfect storm that's happening all around me in my neighborhood. Um, I, I do have some exceptions to what the building itself is, but my bigger problem is, um, I started looking into what goes on with lots of people in a concentrated place in different types of developments, and you know, what's the different, uh, people who can be in affordable housing? Yes, there are people in affordable housing that through no circumstance of their own require assistance, and that's fabulous. But there are also people who make life decisions that put them in a place where they need to have affordable housing. That is a concern to me as well. If I look at the perfect storm of all these things around my neighborhood, there is no doubt that the influx of people is going to cause traffic, uh, school issues. There will be, there's no sidewalks in my neighborhood, you probably know that, who spent time there, you know, there's no sidewalks there. People walk around, I think it's nice, but lots more people are gonna be walking around, and that is a concern to me. Um, I also am concerned about, no matter what you do, if you look at the statistics on, um, on crime, you put that many more people in my neighborhood, crime is gonna go up, that's just the way it is. So in all of this, I look at my house, the other thing is, you've got these projects. You can draw an oval of about three-quarters of a mile, and I think every person here lives in that three-quarters of a mile circle that is now surrounded on three sides by large developments with affordable housing. That is a concern to me. So, all of that said, um, when something doesn't make sense to me, I kinda go back to the basics and believe it or not, I'm a core values, mission statement kind of a gal. I think I got your mission statement right, you have lots of mission statements here at the Village of Arlington Heights for all the different places. But the, correct me if this is not wrong, to maintain a quality of life that our residents and businesses deserve, is that correct?
I'm not sure which one that is, but that sounds appropriate, that sounds.
So I said, I, I did a good search, and I was trying, but there were lots of them, I'm sorry, I'm almost done, this is my last point. Um, I'm gonna say it again, because it's to maintain, to maintain. We are here and I would like to maintain a quality of life for myself and my family in the place that I chose to raise my family, which I've been very happy with. The last line, uh, and have great confidence in its future and its ongoing betterment. I do hope that you will make the right decision, I do have concern that this is the point of no return for our neighborhood, and the lights of our candles will all go out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Josh Shoot, and then, uh, James Kokosoulis.
Uh, good evening. Um, so, again, I, I don't think anybody here on either side is bad. I think, like, a lot of the people said, a vote against the development is not against helping people. It's not fear-based, it's not compassionate. Not everybody that lives in Arlington Heights has always lived in Arlington Heights. We have either lived in a big apartment complex ourselves, we live near something like this. Our family member was gonna move into one of these, et cetera. So, everything looks good on paper, like when it's being presented. We all know, we've all bought stuff from salesmen. And then when it actually comes into fruition, it's not exactly what they sold. So, and like the, the person that was just up here, with all these big developments coming up, you're gonna have a lot, a lot of people, a lot of apartments. Uh, we actually lived on Gobert, we had problems with the neighbors, and that's just a regular apartment building. But, in a nutshell, we all have the same concerns, and we wanna ask the board to vote no.
All right, thanks, Josh. Next is James, and then, uh, Peter Gaia.
Good evening. So I heard, uh, it was mentioned today that the concern is the location. Um, not so much if it's a good project or not, or the merits to the project. So, based, based, I, I live at one thirty-one East Emerson, I'm like one house away from this. And would I be able to give this to you guys? I have, I have a location, this is your, your map right here, and I put where our house is located.
We know where you're at. You're one thirty-one, right?
Right, one thirty-one. So I wanted to, to give these either to your attorney.
Give it to our clerk, please.
So I was told by Mr. Hubbard, that, uh, Sam Hubbard, that, uh, another location that you guys built, similar to this, uh, housing, apartment housing, it was, uh, one twenty West Boger Drive? Is that true?
Right.
What's that? Yep, Bog- Boger Drive, that's, that's what I was told. Um, so I went there and I took a couple pictures, that's what I wanted to present to you. And the nearest house to that facility, which is a similar facility, was three blocks away. And it was approximately one thousand two hundred feet away. So the nearest house to this facility is just a few feet away, you know. Our yard borders the retention pond. You know, our neighbor is just a few feet away. So I looked at this, this facility, and I s- I saw no houses there. I see this one that's proposed to be built, and there, there are houses everywhere, so. And as mentioned before, the houses are facing, facing us. So I was kinda thinking like, that's a second story. And we're like over there, you know, like, probably in the other room. And there's gonna be a third story facing us. And, and people that are living there, we don't know who they are, but they can see us when we're in our yard, when we're in our house. And they also may have mental disabilities. You know, which is not a problem, you know, to help people with mental disabilities. But when you, when you do an application for a job, and you wanna be a teacher, and you say you have a mental disability, you don't get hired. You know, so that's a problem, because we're not sure what their mental disability is. And they're looking down at us, you know, while we're at home, inside the house, and so forth. So the, the location is just too close. So I'm comparing one thousand two hundred feet with the previous location versus just five or ten feet with this location. So I'm not sure if you have any other buildings in Arlington Heights that you've approved, but the one I was told to go see was three blocks away. And.
You're gonna have to finish your comments, please.
Yeah, but, and I just wanted to say, I'm a little disappointed that the board was, uh, was discussing their concerns if they like this or if they don't like it, before listening to the residents.
All right, thanks, James. And next is Peter, and then Wendy, uh, we already got Wendy. So next would be Andreas Papadakis.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and the Board of Trustees, I, uh, represent my, the interests of my mother, who lives in Parkview Court, she's been there for twenty-five years. Um, and before that, she was in Mount Prospect. Um, no one here, none of, none of the residents here, um, want to withhold help from, to the disabled or to veterans. The, the problem is that we, we question the definition of disability, and here, the ADA is using, um, the, the, the definition that's being used is that, um, anyone with a mental or physical impairment, um, which substantially affects their life, or any persons who are perceived to have such an impairment. Perceived by whom? Um, so, i- i- in my, um, in my education, in my medical school training, um, there's documentation for psychiatric illness and medical illness, and it has a, uh, I C D billing code, and it could be documented. The ADA definition is a very lax, very broad definition of disability, so there's really no assurance to us that we are serving the disabled. Even in that case, in the P S H Integrated Units, sixty percent of residents are neither veterans nor disabled. So then the concern there becomes, um, and those people, so they're, they're neither disabled nor veterans, but that's what's being represented by full circle, uh, that they serve those, those, those audiences, um, or those, those populations. Um, and the thing is, is, um, this is not, uh, low-income housing, it's potentially no-income housing. As Miss O- O'Connor Brooks, uh, stated in a planning, uh, I believe it was a planning, planning meeting, uh, Planning Commission meeting on, in September, uh, when she was asked by the commissioner, if a tenant, uh, the tenant must provide thirty percent of their income to rental. And then he asked, and if there's no income, then, and Miss O'Connor Brooks, uh, replied, then they don't have to pay any rent, they will provide one hundred percent rental assistance. So not low income, but no, potentially no income. I'm not saying everyone's going to receive one hundred percent rental assistance, but they could. Um, the studies on affordable housing, those are mixed units, that is not, those are not studies on subsidized housing with public funds. So affordable housing, it's a, again, very broad definition, and every study, uh, may define it differently, and a study out of Stanford shows that, um, with subsidized housing, it does affect property values in higher-income neighborhoods. It will reduce property values, and it also decreases racial segregation. It does improve property values, um, in a low-income neighborhood, so it does have sort of a regression towards the mean, um, effect. So, and, and then finally, in, in the tenant draft selection criteria, there is, uh, no exclusion for criminal convictions that are either did harm to another person or pro- or property, or occurred, uh, resulted in property damage or physical violence. They may exclude someone that has that record within ten years, but they are not required to. Uh, as, as, uh, Mayor mentioned, there are some requirements where they must. But criminal conviction within ten years is not one of them, they, they have the discretion to approve or disapprove those tenants. And that's a concern for my, my, my parents who are elderly and the other, um, neighbors nearby.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Next is Andreas, and then Gabe Badness.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Hayes and, uh, and trustees for having us and myself speaking. Uh, I just wanted to make, reiterate what, uh, some of the residents are saying. I'm, I'm in the Shury Ridge neighborhood, which, which is adjacent to the development that's coming in. Uh, we were not notified at all, uh, just like some other residents within, they said a thousand feet. Uh, other than that, some other ones that were a hundred feet away were notified as well. Other than that, I wanted to reiterate that we're not against the disabled or handicap. I have handicapped and, and mentally disabled people that live in my family, that are part of my family, so that is not the case. The case is that this was zoned for R five. R five currently, with the market that we're in right now, you would be able to build a, a, a unit or units there that would make considerable amount of tax benefit for the, for the village, other than the forty thousand dollars that this is gonna, uh, bring to the village. So, all I just wanna just say is that, as far as, uh, revenues go, this is obviously not a revenue-based decision, you guys are making it because you wanna help the, the handicap and such, and we're in favor of that. But again, to reiterate, this is not the proper location for this development. The proper location would be somewhere a little bit south, where there's other areas that are being. Where there's other areas that are being reconstructed, worked on, such and such. That would be able to facilitate this and not be in a residential area that will diminish the property values definitely. If it's not your house, it's my house, our neighbors that live there will ultimately bear. The consequences of that decision, either positive or negative, mo- most likely it will be negative unfortunately. That's all, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. Next is Gabe Badness and then Angel Youssef.
Hi, Gabe. Uh, I'm Gabe Bodnar, um, so I live at three one three East Haven Street, so I was in the cul-de-sac on the map. Um, I'm here with my wife and my uh eight-month-old daughter who has been screaming in the background, so sorry about that. Um, but we're here uh not in support of this project. Um, I think I've heard a lot that me and my neighbors are afraid of these residents that would be moving in and. I, I don't think that's really a fair assessment, I think from everyone I've spoken to, we're frustrated, we weren't notified about this. None of us heard anything about this, this was something that we found out from a proactive neighbor a week ago. Who was going around passing out flyers. So this was going to get built what feels like behind our back, and listening to. The uh building that was built before this, it was full uh crosspoint, I think, and how they interacted with their neighbors. Or their soon-to-be neighbors, what a world of a difference from what we're dealing with right now. Where we're coming in and we're having to go and, and literally scramble at the last second to figure out what's going on and why any of this is going on. There, there was a sign that was posted out there, if I would have read that sign while I was driving my car on Arlington Heights Road, I would have gotten into a car accident. And anyone else would have gotten into a car accident because the text on that is so small, it is impossible to read, that'd be illegal to put on a highway. So it's, it's not fair to think that due notice was given to any of the residents in the surrounding commu- uh community about that. Uh, on a slightly separate note, you guys mentioned that red flag ordinance, I'd really strongly suggest as a resident of Arlington Heights to make that like a standard thing. Especially in this case, we're getting res- you're talking about rezoning it, and we would have potentially not even found out about it because. They only went a thousand feet and they're only required to go two hundred and fifty feet, like that feels like a big miss that we need to fix moving forward. Um, I'd also like to call out to uh some of the points that were made, especially around impact on housing prices. Again, what was mentioned was that there was, I think it was like an eleven percent increase over five years. In the last year, housing prices in Arlington Heights went up six percent, that's one year. It's gone way over eleven percent in five years, so if anything, those houses are growing slower than what Arlington, Arlington Heights housing prices are. Also, the average median price that they're talking about is substantially lower than any average median price for this surrounding neighborhood. So that is not an apples-to-apples comparison, that is a misleading fact if anything. Those statistics are not gonna carry over to where this neighborhood is and what the housing prices are in that neighborhood. Um, I'd also, hold on, where's my notes? Had a good one. It's on a roll, now I ruined it for myself. Uh, I think the, the only other piece too that I really wanna make sure that I can get a, a bit of clarity on, uh. Well, two things, one, they mentioned the trees and putting tree, eight-foot trees in the back to help block. Eight-foot trees not really gonna block anything, they're talking about how it's gonna grow in, how long does it take a tree to grow, to reach its full size? So is it gonna be years before that tree is tall enough where it's actually blocking things out, so you can't go and look into my neighbors' properties? That feels like a misleading stat once again, um, also, I, I work in marketing. Talking about appealing to uh veterans and yet less than ten percent in most cases of the people in your properties are veterans is. Misleading marketing, that's not really veterans that are going into those properties. The, the last point that I had just as a question uh for clarity is. Um, what are the requirements when someone is being screened, because I think it's been somewhat mentioned that. Uh, residents uh need to get a background check, but it sounds like it's not fully enforced. Uh, of what that background check is outside of like a credit check as well, so what, what's the deal with the background checks on that? Like to get a little bit more clarity.
Okay, thanks Gabe. Can we address the background checks real quick?
Yeah, we'll abide by the Just Housing Ordinance, which was adopted by Cook County in twenty twenty, and the net result is that. Uh, we will look back for, as it says in our tenant selection plan, uh, any criminal record. Uh, felony record from the last three years, uh, will be grounds for uh not acceptance. And then anything prior to three years, uh, maybe, and all of that is also required under the Just Housing Ordinance. That we of course approach all of these on a case-by-case basis, especially when serving households with disabilities.
Okay, thank you, and next Angel. Are you still here? Angel Youssef, Yusef? Not here, we'll go, move on to Janice Ferris and then Christina Crucius.
Trying to stay awake here too, um, yeah, I'm just sort of uh, um. I'm a little ashamed about uh some people here kind of stoking fear against the disabled community and equating it with a criminal element. Um, I'd also like to address the, the idea of um, people might be able to see me through their windows or from their windows. I live in Scarsdale, my next door neighbor on his second floor, he has a security camera. Looking at my second floor bedroom window, okay, it's pervy and it's gross and it's creepy. I can't tear his house down, oops, sorry, but I can close the shade, I mean, that's a solution, but I mean, there's problems and we deal with it. But I feel that this is a safe town. Um, this idea that, that there's crime and, and uh this whole fear of crime and raising. I just wanna read something to put in perspective, this was an event that happened. Uh, kind of just after we moved here, um, this is April eighteenth, two thousand and ten. This is near where the Mariano's is now. The lower half of a man's body was found in a bag in an alley outside a northwest suburban shopping center Friday night. The body was found after someone called in a foul odor coming from the trash at twenty-one North Dryden Place in Arlington Heights around four thirty P M. When police arrived, they saw a human foot sticking out of a plastic dumped bag next to a dumpster and immediately sealed off the area. Long story short, there was a severed torso like from the pelvis down. Thrown into a dumpster, no one went into a panic thinking, oh my god, I might be the next person. Cut in half and put in a dumpster, or granny might be cut in half and put in the dumpster, or the kids might be cut in half and thrown in the dumpster, in fact, it's never happened again. So when I think about crime in this town, it's all looking good, it's all, it's, we've never, that was the rock bottom. And we've never come back there and um. This is a safe town, um, we can't just be so crazy that um we want to expand and. Build and have other people live here, um. That, I'm, I'm, I'm just ashamed of some people's attitude tonight and I really am in support of this development.
Okay, thanks Janice, next is Christina Crucius, and then the last card I have is David DeVito.
Thank you Mayor Hayes, um, my name is Christina Crucius, I live at two oh four North Patton. And I've uh lived here for all twenty-nine years of my life. I'm in support of this project and for the record, um, my mom and brother who could not be here are also in support of, are in full support. I also know many from my faith community, First United Methodist Church, um, who are in support as well. I think this is a well-thought-out project and much needed. I'm impressed with the thoroughness of the presentations, attention to detail, and the response to concerns. It saddens me that the reaction to living near people with disabilities is one of fear, or more specifically, not in my backyard. I know so many wonderful people with disabilities who have a lot to contribute and would be excellent neighbors. I work with students with disabilities every day, some, someday they will become adults who will need places to live. A place like this could allow them to live in the community relatively independently while still having supports available. I also know the community has been really supportive of Jerry's Cafe, this is a place some of the employees may be eligible to live. I also have a number of people with disabilities in my family, and additionally, I have invisible disabilities myself. Including mental health-related disabilities, I promise I'm not a scary person. I know everyone says they support people with disabilities, but does that mean anything if concrete actions are not taken to support the disability community? Let's act on our beliefs and take advantage of this opportunity in front of us now. I'm excited about the possibilities of this project and I hope you will vote yes, thank you.
Thanks Christina, and last is David DeVito. David.
I feel honored that I get to close um uh the session here tonight, uh, so I appreciate everyone's attention this evening, I know we're going late. And I'm only keeping you longer, um, twenty-year resident of the south side of Arlington Heights. Uh, eight years on the zoning board, so I've been an active member of this community. I just wish that we can take a moment and maybe hit pause. There are things that we have not been a part of that have um changed, altered. The, the area of that south side corridor. We started this project, it sounded like, in May. That other project that was talked about earlier this, this evening was a full year, that it's been in discussion, so we're six months in. Let's take the time to actually go through and get the community buy-in. I don't think there's anybody in the room that wouldn't want to provide more services to the people of need. But to do it at the expense of a specific area, to do it at the expense. Uh, and, and I say that because if you look at the south side, we have a high density of motels. We have the recreational marijuana facility down there. It's supposed to be the corridor as of the twenty eighteen, right, so that's supposed to be the, the gateway to uh. But a lot of those projects have even stalled, right, we haven't seen as much of the development over the years, so. Let's take the time to make sure that we think about this one properly, there's no, there is a need, we understand that. But we don't have to rush into it and make a hasty decision. That map that showed that property, it looks like ten pounds of product in a five-pound bag. I mean, there are other vacant properties, there are other buildings that can be repurposed that could facilitate this in a. More reasonable manner, so I just ask that we, as a community, take the time. Let's work, let's build some bridges across the yeas and nays, so we can actually come to a, a proper. Project for this.
Okay, thanks David, alright, I don't have any other blue cards, if there's anyone else in the audience that wants to address the board on this issue. Come forward. Just give us your name if you would.
It's late and everybody's tired, so I'll be really quick, I'm Eric, I live in the area, I consider myself a very pragmatic thinker. I moved from the Lily White Coutino area, Pa- Pioneer Park, bought an expensive home, half acre. Just to give the board just a little idea of what goes on tonight, two new ideas. Where we live is a very diversified area, you probably noticed it in pronouncing names today. The street I live in, fifty percent of the people weren't born in this country. This project I never heard about, tonight I came with an open mind, I learned a lot. Um, but there's a lot of people in the neighborhood feel something was jammed down their throat. And I think you can, you'd be probably unique in this subdivision, but it's very diversified. Second thing, just to pass on from my man, humanitarians say I, we walk this neighborhood. Uh, when I bought there seventeen years ago after living twenty years elsewhere. Um, south of our area is a special community, special property. So when I moved there, I felt as a human being, a good San Samaritan, I knew that was there. And I went there with open hearts as well as moving into a diversified area. Again, I think just consider the area that's here is maybe unique, but it's a very diversified area. And I think people feel something is being jammed at them one more time.
Eric, we just need your last name if you would.
Uh, Mueller.
Okay, you got it, okay.
Thank you.
And it's not that I, I can't pronounce it, it's I just can't read the writing, so I, I, I did the best I could. And I apologize if I messed anything up, anyone else in the audience? Alright, I see no one else in the audience, so I'm gonna go back to the board. Mister Ecklitz.
I, I was just gonna make one comment before regardless of anything else the board does. Um, for the folks in the audience, we do have an email list set up for this project, and we've got. I believe twenty-some families are already signed up for it. Um, if you go to the village's website, V A H dot com, go to the planning department, you can see the projects page. There's every single uh meeting minute for this project, some description of it. All the information that's ever been produced, discussed on this project is all in one place. I will put this page on the front page of the village website, V A H com, so you don't have to hunt for it. On that page you also can sign up to receive email notifications anytime there's a meeting or anytime there's an update. If you don't wanna go through all that, email us at communications at V A H dot com. And email that person, say you wanna be signed up for the full circle uh email blast and you'll be getting all the information. I just wanted to make sure that was out there before we forgot.
Okay, uh trustee Grassi.
First off, I just wanted to thank everybody who spoke, who wrote emails. This is um something that's affected many people in our community, and I just want you to know that we on the board and the staff have heard you. And I really do wanna thank you for sharing your, your concerns, your thoughts, your comments. As in the previous um development we discussed, we found by what we were doing. That maybe there were some ways that we could change, and we have directed the staff to maybe start looking at some um red flag sort of. Uh, responses to zoning possibly. And I guess I just wanted to mention that this might be an opportunity for us to consider. While the state law says public notice is to be two hundred and fifty feet from the, the development and other things. This is something that I would be willing to see if the board would uh be willing to have the staff direct. To see if maybe we could increase that, I know full circle did a thousand feet, they were required to do two hundred and fifty, but it seems what I'm hearing. Overwhelming is that whatever we're doing isn't giving people the public notice that they're needing. So I wanna first say that I would be willing at a later date to see if the, the board is willing to, to consider something like that. I wanted to put that out there because that is one thing I am hearing over and over, and maybe that's something we can consider as a, as a board. Um, the other thing then I would be willing to do, our staff has recommended this motion, I don't know where everybody is. I am going to make a motion because I think it's worthy of seeing where everybody is, if there's a second, when somebody makes a motion, it's not that. It's saying we're for it or against it, it's saying we believe this is worthy of conversation. If somebody seconds it, that says I agree that this is worthy of conversation, and we can see if there's a super majority. On, on the board, so uh with that in place, I would make a motion to concur with the staff development committee. And recommend approval of petition P C twenty-three dash zero zero seven. And the following requested actions, which are items one through four on what we see here. Uh, subject to the fifteen conditions that are listed.
Alright, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Donnington, further discussion on the motion on the floor. Alright, well we have a motion on a floor, uh, on the floor, which includes variations, so technically I can't vote on this.
Yeah, mayor, at the risk of getting very deep into the legal weeds, this is not the final vote. This is really, a- as, as we've noted with the Eastman Project, this is really to direct the drafting of ordinance that would be. To, to formalize the motion the trustee Grassi put forward, I think probably as a practical matter, maybe let's see where we are. This vote is not subject to that rule, but we'll know from this vote where this is going. And, and I'm noting that this does include all of the relief, which includes the variations, which are the only ones that would be subject to a six out of eight rule. So I think maybe the thing to do is take a roll call uh of the eight trustees, I think maybe take, take your vote as well, mayor. Uh, you always vote last, as I know you know, and then we can, can engage what that means, um, this is just a, really this is a directive. For staff in our office to go forward if the votes are there.
Right, okay, uh, let me just say before we vote, uh, I under, I appreciate David DeVito's comments about perhaps. Uh, taking a step back and, and uh, and seeing if there's some solution other than what's being proposed here. And the only solution I think that's gonna be acceptable to the residents is another location. And so I, I think this developer is entitled to a yea or nay this evening, especially given the lateness of the hour. We've all been here for a long time, they're entitled to a yea or nay. And so uh, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to come up with a solution that's gonna modify this proposal, that's gonna satisfy the residents. Other than moving to a different location, so I don't, I don't see any purpose in delaying this vote. And so I uh would like to go ahead and take the vote and so roll call.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Donnington? Yes. Trustee Bertucci?
No.
Trustee Tenalia?
No.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
No.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Lebeds?
Yes.
President Hayes?
And I would be a yes. So where does that leave us?
Three nays and.
So so pr- practically, prac- practically, practically, and again, I I I I'm sensitive to the to not getting too stuck on legal issues here. If if this vote were to hold if round a drafting ordinance two weeks from now, the votes would not be there for the variations. The votes would be there for all of the other relief.
Makes no sense.
Right, un- un- understood, understood. And and so I wanted to wanted to point that out before we do anything further. Um, certainly we can follow th- th- that vote. I mean, that vote was essentially to tell us to draft it, but we recognize that that you know, again, if nothing changes, then we the variations will fail. Now, there are other elements of the relief that could go forward without the variations. Um, but as we know, the application before you is for a development that includes and requires the three variations that are shown on the screen. So it's really the will of the board at this point, how you would like to go forward, how would you like us and staff to go forward from this point.
Mr. Ecklau, give us that solution.
A couple of thought, you know, I've, that's a high bar this at this hour, Mayor. Um, what I was gonna say is there's a couple of different options. I think that, you know, number one, if for example, a couple of trustees had mentioned, you know, examination of the flipping of the orientation. If sufficient number of trustees felt that that was their reason for withholding a positive vote, they could direct staff to work with the applicant um to uh work on an alternative, and then that could come before the board again to see if that was sufficient for board support. Another option could be to um direct the applicant to revise their plan to eliminate the variations. Um, where uh to do a version of their plan where the vari- variations wouldn't be required, or some combination thereof. Um, I think those are a couple of very uh possible options as well, if unless the board wanted to, you know, let the no stand.
Uh, Trusty Tenalia?
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Um, I I would like it to be known that my negative vote was solely on the fact that I am not so sure that this hasn't been vetted out properly. And I want to approve this project. It just needs to be worked on a little bit further, in my opinion, to convince that it's accurate, correct, and ready to move forward. That's that's all it is for me. So whether that's the parking lot, the fire lane, uh, it's 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 just some small details like that that I think could be fixed.
How about the other no votes? Uh, what what are your thoughts? Go ahead, Trusty Bertucci.
I I would agree with uh Trusty Tenalia also. I I think this is in some ways similar to Eastman where um, we have some resident concerns. I have concerns about the orientation of the building. And I have some concerns about, you know, the even whether or not three, two floors would work better than three floors, but more importantly, the orientation, some of the other things that are going on, so um, that's, this is, has nothing to do with the, you know, the nature of the building or any fare or anything like that, so.
Okay, Trusty Shirley?
And I'd just say that I think the building needs to be flipped, but I also think I wouldn't vote for anything over two stories. I think that the the whole issue of looking in people's backyards is huge to me. I don't think that's proper.
And and if I might add one.
Go ahead.
It 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 truly is different than Hart's place. Because of what one of the speakers pointed out very very clearly, it's 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 in a residential neighborhood all the way around, so I'm inclined to be a little bit more careful in this case about the height, orientation, activity, accessibility, all those things, and I and and while I wanted to go forward, I'm just not sure that it's ready as it sits right now.
Well, I think that that gives us that consensus to try to move uh go back to staff and try to see if we can come up with a solution that would be amenable.
So wouldn't we need us a motion to table it then? Otherwise, the the motion is for the, well.
Yeah, yeah, I I think I think you can, Mayor, and I I would I would suggest just just to continue the item to to a a future date, and with the understanding that staff and 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 our offices need it, we'll be working with the applicant to try to navigate the concerns that that the board has raised.
Uh, yeah, what I was gonna say, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Pastman, I don't believe, given that there's some work to do, um, I don't believe we can necessarily set a date certain, but again, I would encourage everyone, join our email list. Follow us on social media. There will be information out in advance of any future meetings. That's the best way to stay to kind of uh stay in touch. But I think that way we can make sure we have enough time to to work on this appropriately.
I concur, I concur that suggestion.
Okay, is there a motion for that effect?
I I would be willing to try, but I had a quick question if I may first.
Okay, sure.
Um, so would would another motion to approve it without the the um the variations and and then table it just for for the con- conversation work, or is that something different?
I I I would, I would, I would steer, first I'd steer away from the word tabling that has that just puts my antenna.
Okay.
Um, I I'd be hesitant to suggest that only because we don't have plans that would satisfy this proposed development without the three variations. There have to be it it in many ways, it almost gets us to the same place, and it falls, I think, closer to what Manager Ecklau suggested. It may be that in the ti- you know, if the board continues this, that i- i- in its analysis of of the proposal and the board's comments, the applicant may well come up with a plan that eliminates one or more of the variations. And or flip the building and or address the height and or address any of the other concerns that have been raised here. So I think we might be putting the cart before the horse by putting something more directive uh on something less than the plan now, maybe allow the applicant and staff to work that through and see if there's something that then collectively we can come back with to the board and and say this, you know, we think this might address your concerns, and you'll let us know.
So so could I move to um direct the staff to just to talk more with the developer about the concerns mentioned here at the meeting as well as communicate continued communication with the residents affected in the neighborhood?
Yes, we understand that that means we'll be coming back at a later date with.
To come back at a later date.
Yes, I think that's a, I, Mayor, and Trusty Grassi, I think that's an appropriate motion.
Mayor, can I ask you another question real quick?
Who was that? Trusty Schwimbeck?
Thank you. If if there's, Randy, if there's modifications that are gonna be suggested and and changed, whether it's flipping the building or doing something with the fire lanes, do they have to go back to the uh Design Commission and the Planning Commission?
N- no, they can, it can stay at the board level typically. Uh, that's been the case.
Okay, right, thank you.
Okay, um, did you formally make that motion?
I I tried, but I can, let me do it again. I I move to direct staff to further discuss the concerns mentioned tonight by the board with the developer as well as continue conversations and communication with the affected residents in that neighborhood to be discussed at a future date.
To be determined.
To be determined.
Okay.
Understand.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trusty Grassi, second by Trusty Baldino. Who had a question?
Sorry, I just had a follow up question, and I know it's late. Um, from my understanding, from what you explained, since we got a majority vote tonight, the rezoning would be approved. Is that correct?
No, nothing, nothing's actually been approved. I appreciate the question if I may, Mayor. Um, the 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 prior motion that 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 did garner a six to three vote was was, as I mentioned right before, it was functionally a direction to draft the documents. Um, as a practical matter, um, as we discussed, um, those, the 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 sum of those documents would not be approved unless, you know, one or more members of the board change their mind. And I'm not gonna presuppose that they will or will not. Um, and and so we'll, as we always do when there's a motion like that, um we'll work with staff and we'll work with the board on on creating the appropriate documents. Um, but I I think it's it's fair to say that um those documents would not be brought forth prior to assuming Trusty Grassi's motion that was just made is approved, uh, and no ordinance would be drafted prior to further discussion by the board. There's no ordinance would be brought forward for for a vote until that point, so.
Okay, uh, we have motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, that I think concludes our business this evening. Uh, for what it's worth, this is not a record. Uh, there was a meeting that went to about one thirty. I don't know if Charles was here for that.
Uh, I think I was.
Yeah, uh, we were just discussing staffing. So, uh, but thank you for for all of your participation and patience and perseverance. So, uh, report to the village manager, anything?
Nothing this evening.
And anything from the board under petitions and communication?
Vote to adjourn.
Motion by Trusty Baldino, second by Trusty Lebedz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.